I'll now reconvene the special meeting for the purposes of our budget. And with that, I'll turn it back over to Ms. Sinclair. Oh, and let me turn you on. I'll turn it on. There we go.
Thank you, your worship members of council. So, we left off at this slide here, number 32. So, I'm going to take us through to the end, and then we have received some input since the last session, so I have another format to take us over to, to look at that. And then hopefully, we can have some discussion about some of the capital projects that were flagged, and then how we're feeling about where we're at with respect to the public session. So, January 2nd, this is just a refresher, that this was, this top section is where we were January 2nd with the 4.12, the 2.72 for programs, and then these other categories showing what they are here. On February 3rd, we had-
Karen, just one brief introduction. Counselor Richter has just texted that she's on her way back from Metro Parks, and will be here soon.
And then we got to 3.86 and 1.27, just the two categories changed from that point on. The engineering went back and did some work on the programs and brought it down to 1.27. The rest of the categories are staying the same. So, that's where we left off with staff. And then in last week's council presentation, we went through the memo proposal that we'd received from Counselor Woodward. And so, this, this, these few slides, we should be able to go through fairly quickly. They're just a refresher of the staff's position, where we left off with staff at the 4.12 compared to the 3.86. So, really, that was just some small items that we discovered through transferring the property taxes that we had in the, in the base. We transferred it over to one times, and we got it from 4.12 down to 3.86. This is what happened with the programs. I think we looked at this a little bit last week. So, what was originally 2.72% at 3.6 million has now been spread further across the next five years. So, the 3.64 has split into 1.7 and 1.9 over the first two years, with a little bit going to the last three years. So, that gives you a little bit of an idea as to what the tax impact will be of that smoothing.
Just a quick question on that last slide. I haven't done the math, but if you add all this, add those columns up, does it come out to the same?
It's very close.
Very close.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
And then the infrastructure, this was what was originally submitted by staff on the top part, the 1.8 million at 1.35%. And then the bottom part was the asset maintenance, which was the, sort of the reestablishing the capital infrastructure renewal and replacement reserve transfer of 500,000 per year. So, this would be the first trying to build it back up again. We used it as a reminder to offset the debt that came on the books from the large land assembly this year. And then the road paving, a request of 500,000 was requested. And protective services, this is four officers, starting October 1st, the 175, which will be annualized to the tune of about $500,000 in the following year. And the senior bylaw officer, that's the full annual amount of a senior bylaw officer, hired January 1st. And then all of these, these are positions and programs that were requested by staff, totaling 0.55%. So, that brings us to the, pretty much, the end of the staff's present numbers. This is, I had some requests for some tax, tax rate increases. So, the green bars show communities that either have casinos or gaming centers. Doesn't distinguish, I apologize for that. It's casinos and gaming centers. And it shows us here, the blue, the blue ones don't have them. And I should note that Delta's casino is ready to open shortly, though. I did read about that. And then we have, we're the orange one here. So, that is our 3.85% from last year. So, these are 2019 property tax increases. And then I reached out to try and get a sense of the 2020. And as, as one might imagine, a lot of municipalities are going through the process that we're going through right now. So, they were unwilling to be too forthcoming to say what they're locking it down at, but this is where, where they're all at. And most of these were received from publicly, publicated, or publications, newspapers and such. So, I don't feel there's any risk in showing these numbers, because I, I got most of them through the public forum, and then confirmed them with the departments. They're still in process, a lot of them, but this is where people are at for 2020. And so-
Counsel Long has a question.
Thank you. I don't know if the next slide might, might show it, because I guess the question I would have is, if you take the supposed average house, can we have an idea of what a tax rate would be for that house in the different municipalities? Is that something that's-
It is coming up, yeah.
Yeah, because the percentages are one thing, but it, you know, if you're already-
Right.
Yeah, you know what I mean.
It's actually not the tax rate that's coming up, it's the, the absolute dollar amount?
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
And that would be comparative in other communities?
It's listing all the communities.
Fabulous, thank you.
So, here's, here's the first example. So, this is the estimated impact on a representative house over 2019 from the municipal statistics website of the ministry. They calculated a house at 1,015,301 for the township of Langley in 2019. So, we use that number because it's published. And then this chart below here shows all of the Metro Vancouver and Fraser Valley Regional District, and shows their general municipal taxes. So, you can see in this green column here, this is the general municipal taxes only. The 2126, which is a little bit different than 2059, is because of the library levy of $67. So, this levy, this general municipal, from the ministry's perspective, they consider it all general municipal, so libraries included in there. But in our numbers, when we deal with our percentage increase, we don't include the library.
I've got a question, Counsel Ferguson. But first, I just want to ask something, and then, so when you look at, say, Langley, a million-dollar house, $2,100 in average tax for an average house, and you look at West Vancouver, three and a third million-dollar house, they pay $4,800 for that tax. But when you, there probably aren't any houses up there worth a million, they're a million dollars. But if you put it all to a million dollars, you know, so someone who has a small condo at a million dollars in West Vancouver-
Right.
Their taxes would be, for the million, less than ours, I guess, per million. So, when you, but it's, I guess it's hard to balance all that out, yeah.
So, dividing it, trying to get it down to our-
Yeah, just-
Our average price of a million, you've got like 3.3 times.
Yeah.
So, you'd have to divide that by 3.3.
It's just a-
It's interesting, yeah.
Interesting comment when you look at these numbers, how they actually work out. So, Counsel Ferguson?
Yeah, that's a good point. That wasn't my point, but that is a good point. If you have a lesser value or a greater value, you're going to have different numbers in those categories. Mine is just the same question I've been harboring over. You look at the 2019 tax, property tax increases that went through, you know, and what we did, and it's still a challenge. I mean, the reality is, people, I can't, I still, I've never been able to understand a place like Burnaby, they have the most reserves probably in the whole country, and they have a casino and three transit lines going through it. And their taxes are even higher than we're proposing. I just kind of wondered, I mean, I'd taken an awful lot of research for you to kind of know why, but the reality, when I talk to counselors from, from Burnaby, they say, well, they have to keep up with infrastructure, and there are other things they keep talking about, but they're, they're not going to hold the line and go to reserves or things like that for, so they take it to the taxpayers. Thank you.
Yeah, just on, on the next slide, I was just, again, just of interest to note, in some of these communities, and when I look at something like Abbotsford, which is a community roughly this, you know, similar population as, as the township, and their property values are quite a bit less, about, you know, 25% less in property value, and yet their tax rate is about 10% higher, the amount of tax on it. So, it's, it's interesting that our, you know, when we look at our tax, overall tax dollar we pay, we are still quite low. So, I think sometimes we get hung up as a council on the percent of increase of 2% or 3%, when really, our tax dollars are actually very low in the township of Langley compared to most communities. And if we were even, as you say, compared to the representative house, we'd actually be significantly even lower than this. So, I, you know, I think we just get hung up on percentages, and that's the, that's the thing that gets pushed out in the media, and we hear percentages, but really, we're actually paying significantly less than any other comparable community.
Thanks. Okay, move on.
So, this is that information in a graph format to show where we, where we land, tax burden on a representative house. So, it's just the same information, looking at it on a graph, and highlighting the casino and gaming centers. Then on the utility side, we have the water sewer and user pay, water, sorry, user pay, sewer user pay and solid waste. And 2019, in this first column, with the recommended changes in the middle, 4.91 for water, 1.09 for sewer, and nothing for solid waste this year. And the, the bulk of the 4.91 for water is the building up the base for the Jericho Reservoir Phase 2, which is coming in 2023. So, that, once that happens, then we'll have a, a healthy base in water, and it could be, depending on what's on the radar for capital projects, it could be moved over towards capital, or it could be used to hold the, hold the future rates down. So, those are our utilities.
And they're based a lot on Metro Vancouver charges?
Pardon me?
Metro Vancouver charges.
Yeah, a lot, a lot of it is, and water and sewer, especially the, the purchases of the water and the liquid waste fee that we pay.
And I don't want to take any credit for being the chair of the Zero Waste Committee, in that there's 0% change, just the same.
It's all over, previous committees-
Oh, previous committees, Counsel Long was on it, yeah.
And so, this is the utility, so we are a little, on the high side for the utilities. Part, part of it's because of having to build the items like the Jericho into the base for the user pay, but that's where we're at with the user fees. And a chart to show it pictorially looks like this. This is bringing it all together. So, this is using a 2.98%, we've been talking about that the most, so we use that in this example, 2.98% property tax, water, sanitary sewer and solid waste. So, overall, it would look like a 2.72 increase overall. And that, that takes into consideration a big assumption, and that is that this taxpayer that we're looking at here has all three utilities. They may not. And this is that same chart, I'll give it to you in the, in the graph format. So, that's where we stand, kind of smack in the middle, when you combine them together, municipal taxes and utilities. When you add on the other taxes, the other government agencies, it looks like that. So, a tax notice in the township, looks like that.
So, that'd be the school taxes-
School, Metro Vancouver, yeah.
Transit.
BCA Transit, yeah. Transit.
What's the sense of how many properties have all the utilities? Do you have a sense of-
Oh, I do, I do not have a sense of that. I don't know.
That's okay.
Anybody have a sense of that role, and anybody else? No, I'll have to get that information.
No, it's not. Thanks. Counsel Long?
And what about metro taxes? Because you've got, you've got two different regional districts in here, so is, is it equivalent? I know that the hospital tax, tax was switched for the transit tax, but is it the same amount?
So, this shows here, if you wanted to look at-
Oh, the regional district, okay.
Yeah, you could look at Abbotsford and, on a, on a house, on a single house, where's Abbotsford on this one? So, there the Fraser, this shows the Fraser Valley Regional District down here. So, for the regional district, there's 63, and we are 43.
Well, isn't that something?
Yeah, that's a surprise.
Is the hospital tax buried in the regional district, or is that a separate one?
I'm wondering if it's possibly-
Oh, there is hospital, see, oh no, it's separate. Yeah, they pay 96, they add, but we don't have, GBRD or Metro Vancouver doesn't have the hospital tax, Fraser Valley Regional does, but we have the Transit tax, which they don't.
Right.
Where's that? Is that on here, the Transit tax?
Transit is, where is that one? Oh, that one is actually the column that says hospital, I believe that. Oh, no, that doesn't look like it, because that's zero.
Avis other, what's BCA?
It must be in regional, it must be lumped in with regional. That must be Transit and Metro Vancouver.
Okay.
Well, we'll get a bargain.
Something unique about Abbotsford, too, is that they actually have their own water, they're managing the water and sewer utilities outside of the Fraser Valley Regional District. All right. And that's that one. And so, that's where we're at with that. So, that's the resolution that would be in front of you. I have put together something, we've had some additional information that we've received beyond this presentation. And so, this, this chart that you see in front of you, hopefully, it's clear, this has now had another memo added to it. So, in the green in the middle, that was Counselor Whitmarsh's suggestion. In the middle column there, Counselor Woodward's is on the left in the brown, and then the one on the right-hand side is what I call, I'm calling a model, and that is something that we can work on live here, if we so dare. So, to take a look at what we might, what we might change, and where we might want to land up and see the results. The original January 20th is right here with the 4.12 and the 2.72, the rest are the same, as we looked at before. Move to 3.86 and 1.27. We have the contributions to capital that were requested, the road paving and transfer to capital reserve, the police officers, and then this list of, of positions. So, I'm going to shift those away, because we spent a lot of time on those, and move to looking at these three. And Counselor Whitmarsh, I've worked at portraying your example here. So, you had, the differences would be to Counselor Woodward's proposal, you had 3 million here. I think that was the only difference in the top part.
Not in front of us?
This isn't in front of you, no.
No, it's not.
This is a live document that we're, that we're working with.
We'll work with, yeah. So, we'll just look online, I'll look on the screen.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, the differences, yeah, point out the differences, because one thought I have is that, you know, if counsel can focus on the one that Ms. Sinclair has put together, looking at the other two, and I think Ms. Sinclair spent some time with staff, trying to assimilate the comments that were made at the last meeting, taking all of the proposals put in by members of council, that, and coming up with one. And it would be my hope that maybe we could focus on, on the one on the right. I mean, look at the differences, but eventually go with one on the right, and if there's some amendments, we'll work on the one on the right to make amendments.
Yeah, the one on the right is meant to capture your amendments.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not as is, it's meant to capture your amendments.
Exactly, and it's gotten pretty close, and so, we'll go through, yeah, going through the changes helps.
Sure. In this first section, the, the major change is the, the 3 million as opposed to the 2,750. So, you can see Counselor Whitmarsh has the 3 million, and I've just put that 2,750, it's totally subject change. I won't even comment on the model right now, because it's just there for, to be changed. That's the only difference there. The programs are the same, the section here are kept the same. On the infrastructure side, Counselor Whitmarsh has a little bit more in the contributions to capital than Counselor Woodward's plan, and he's kept the last two items as reductions. And also, just continuing on the theme of infrastructure and asset maintenance, there's a little bit more on the road paving and transfer to capital infrastructure reserve there. So, those are the differences. And then there's the RCMP. And Counselor Woodward's, he's got a $750,000 envelope here, one senior bylaw officer, and two bylaw officers, starting April 1st for these last two. And on the, Counselor Whitmarsh, he has seven in year one, so this is starting October 1st, seven officers, and then the same on the bylaw side. And, yeah, that's that. And the rest, the rest is the same.
And so, the staff, you've cut down the bylaw, see? Is it the one that you put together, the blue?
Yes, we did, we did a one-on-one, trying to get a middle, a middle ground.
Drop, drop one, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
And, and I left, we left the officers at, at 10, October 1st, and then this is just to try and get, it gets a $650,000 envelope. So, we're transferring 200,000 to the reserve, and then we use the reserve to smooth it out.
Okay, we've got a question, Counsel Woodward.
Sure.
Counsel Woodward?
Yeah, I just wanted to, I appreciate seeing it visually like that, it quite helps. And then some of the staff inputs to get to the blue one on the right are quite helpful. Would it be fair to summarize that Counselor Whitmarsh's suggestions are essentially two suggestions to draw down more from the Road DCC program, to offset the operating tax increase, decrease the number of RCMP officers, and, and put that into roads and infrastructure reserve? Is that fair?
Yeah, so-
Versus what you've done here, which is a little bit more tweaking?
Yeah, so the RCMP, instead of 10 in year one, it's seven in year one and seven in year three. So, it's actually-
Three or year two?
Year three.
I think I saw, did it not say year two?
I think it was 707000.
2022, okay, that's a good distinction. So, the, the annualization will be different in 2021 for seven versus the 10, because I was building in 715 to the base budget?
Right.
I don't need to harp on too much on the differences at the moment, but I just want to clarify, we're really talking about taking more from Road DCC and reducing the number of RCMP officers and a little bit of that, but you've added some of that annualization back into the base by removing the bylaw. Would that be fair? Go back to your blue memory. Because I think it might be faster to just go straight to the blue, Mr. Mayor, and then rather than try to, so I'm just trying to understand what the blue means before we necessarily get into, maybe considering that.
Yeah, and that's what I was trying to allude to, is that the, the blue is what we'll focus on. It's, I just wanted to see what the differences, what the changes were, and then I think we can go back.
So, the, the two bylaw officers that I was looking at have, have been reduced, and you're putting some of that into that reserve contribution to help annualize the seven officers?
Yeah, that's, that's a way of looking at it, yeah.
Yeah, one way of looking at it, and then you go back up a little bit further. So, there were some additional contributions to infrastructure. So, I think that there was some confusion around my memo, which I want to clarify, that I found a net of 475, and with Counselor Whitmarsh looked for an additional 325, and you've added up to 900. So, what was the process to get from, from the 800 to the 900?
I just, I just took a middle ground here, from nothing to, to 400 or 500, what the staff were asking for, and just kind of tried to strike a middle ground. It wasn't, wasn't relative to either of the previous two. So, this is just a starting point, trying to be neutral.
And one thing I want to mention is, the one thing I really appreciated about Counselor Whitmarsh's adjustments is that it's great to have it in writing like that, but it also accepted the basic premise of my original memo, and it's trying to tweak it a little bit here and change some of the priorities. So, it makes sense, I think, to, if we accept the premise of the yellow and the green together, that we could then move straight to the blue, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate that, thank you.
Thanks, thanks for that. Counsel Richter?
Yeah, well, I'm, sorry, I'm just not following how, I mean, I understand how Counselor Whitmarsh's went up, because he wanted to put money back into those, those reserve funds, but I don't understand how we're getting from the 800 to the 900 either, when the numbers that are there are less than the numbers that he's got.
Oh, because I'm not reducing in this last version, I haven't put an amount in to reduce the, the 400 and the 200 that are rolling backwards, the contribution to capital, on lines 30 and 31, right here. Both of these show reduction, yeah, that's where.
Which were-
You're leaving the, the contribution, the 600 in there, okay.
Which was climate change and IT, correct?
Correct, that's correct.
And then with regards to the protective services, so I know Counselor Woodward wanted 10, and Counselor Whitmarsh wanted 7, so what are you proposing there?
I've just put, I put in, I've got 10 there, yeah.
That's 10?
Yeah, it's, it's 10, October 1st, the same as Counselor Woodward's. And I just have a 650 envelope, you can see the total down here at the bottom, is 650, and Counselor Woodward's grand total is 750, and that assumes that there'll be a, a small component that goes to the reserve every year, and then we pull out of the reserve when we need to use the reserve to balance it out.
Okay, so, you're reducing the amount going into the reserve-
Right.
But you're keeping the bylaw officers in.
Yeah, it's reduced from three to two, and not like a two, two-
One senior and two-
Base bylaw, like, what's the, what's the correct term? And Mr. Back-
From one senior to two bylaw officers.
That's right.
The senior has been deleted.
Yeah.
And I think, just to briefly interject, and one of the rationales for leaving the RCMP as it was, is, was, or as it were, in some discussions with superintendent, the superintendent power, he has been thinking of the comments council have made, and feels it would be more appropriate if he's going to focus on the areas council suggested, to have that initial, I guess, lift in the number of officers that he thinks would make the most sizable impact. Now, to then make the numbers balance, we've looked at the longer term, and rather than going, I think, three across the board, Karen, maybe you want to bring up the police to population ratio?
Before you leave that slide, can I go back to it? Because I'm seeing a senior's bylaw officer position in each one of those colored columns.
Yeah, it is there.
So, but why, we're not going to get rid of the senior and just put two junior in?
It's not, we totally, that's why we're here, for sure. We totally can do that, this is just a starting point.
But you've left the senior in?
It's, I could, I could have left it out, I could take it out.
Maybe you could ask Mr. Backen to maybe explain the bylaw positions, and certainly council can make a decision, but I'd like to hear from staff what the rationale is on that.
Two points to it, then. Karen, just as, as it shows up there, it is actually two officers, you have it as one bylaw and one senior. So, if it was to actually simply be the two officers, it would be 68, 250 in both slots, correct?
So, sorry, this, this is two, the 136.5 is two, starting April 1st, you're correct. This last one is one, starting April 1st.
So, one way of doing it would have been to leave the 136.5 in the box that you have, and have the other one to zero.
Yeah.
I'm just pointing out that the distinction is about $10,500.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, it still goes back to the question, why do we need a senior bylaws officer?
No, correct. I think what Karen is saying is that it could be altered to be the, both ways, to be the 136.5, the numbers are virtually the same. The distinction is something that's a bit of a work in progress. The, the numbers would indicate that at some point, there may be the need to have that senior bylaw officer again, which is a union position. We have one manager, we have one senior now, and there are six, so we'd be going to eight. What this is effectively doing then, as we discussed, would be to be deferring the additional senior bylaw officer, until we can work it through a little bit. We are at numbers that would require probably a better level of understanding and comprehension in the near future. The bylaw officers tend to act more in the enforcement role, whereas the senior bylaw officers tend to act more in the mediator role. They issue, tend to issue more warnings or deal with the files. And looking at the complement that now exists, it would be tending to be a bit more enforcement-oriented, but the, the contingency could continue to grow with the two, and we could assess that as we go forward. I think that's where we had-
Yeah, another comment on the senior bylaw officer is just that we've, we're a 24/7 operation, and so, it's, it's not just the number of direct reports, but it's the managing of the, the long, the long hours as well, going around the clock in all seven days. So, that's part of, part of what that senior bylaw officer is for.
To elaborate, then, what you're talking about is, at the present time, then, because they're going 24 hours, seven days a week, as we're trying to do so, there would be a shift that may not have the senior bylaw officer in play, but we could try to work that, given the, the times when there's overlap between the other two, so that there, there may be some, some challenges, but those are what can be worked upon.
So, I have a question. In this budget for this year, and it's only $10,500, which is only, you know, shouldn't say only, but it, in a percentage, it's not going to make a big dent, but are we really looking at two bylaw officers and no senior, and that, at this point, or does this have to be left in there? Can we just switch it to the, to the two, and then three?
Correct.
So, in future years, they may have to make some adjustments as far as the senior area.
So, to show how it works, then, Karen, let's make the switch now, there, and take that, there. So, that will affect it going forward in the bottom line. Now, if we could go to the RCMP for a moment, yeah.
I'll just wait for it, it's out. Okay.
I wanted to talk about bylaw.
Yeah, I'll get you on, I got, there. Okay. So, Counsel Richter, do you have any more questions, and then I'll move on to the-
Well, I guess if I'm reading this correctly, what I don't like is the 4.25%. I was quite impressed that both Counselor Woodward and Counselor Whitmarsh kept it under 4%. And the way it looks from, to me, from reading this chart, that we're going to add an extra percentage tax increase on the businesses?
No.
I, I think that's stretching it, isn't it?
I think there's more to it.
I, I could have, I'm feeling right now like I could have just zeroed out this column. I totally could have. And I, and then we could just fill it in.
Yeah. No, but you're fine.
I was just giving us, on some of the items that I figured probably wouldn't change, like some of these items, I thought, well, it'd be a good starting point. But I, I do want to impress that these aren't my recommendations. I'm just, I'm populating it or seeding it for us to then say, just like we did with the bylaw officer, let's not have a senior, let's have two junior, and then we make the change. So that, at this point in time, that 4.24 is quite meaningless, and it's just a, a number in progress.
Okay. And also, there's other work that was done on the differential between the residential and the business tax, that you, you showed us on Monday. And so the 4.24, as it shows right now, let's say that was the tax, is actually residential. This is the, this is the total average. But if we did a differential, that will come down for residential, is that correct?
Yeah, so here's, here's, again, trying to provide as much of an example as I can. Of course, we've, we've just changed it slightly now, so it won't work perfectly, but we didn't change it by more than 10,000, so it's going to be pretty close. So, with a 4.2%, 4%, what happens, you can see here, it goes from 5.63 and 8.3 to 5.65 and 8.5, and Counselor Whitmarsh's, to, it would be 6.52 and 6.2. So that, that's what, in order to keep the residential at 2.98?
So it's under 3, is what, okay. I just wanted to make sure that was clear. And we can still change it, but it?
Absolutely. This is just to show how it works.
Yeah, okay, that's, that's helpful. And, and that chart that you showed us on Monday showed the, showed the, you know, the biggest issue out here from the business community is, is the ratio between residential and the business.
Right, which is right here.
Number one, we don't want to be too high. We're not competitive with our neighbors. We want to keep jobs here. And the other side, we don't want to be too low, because business needs to, you know, they pay a higher share. So, so our ratios are still within tolerance of what we did in the last budget. Okay? Okay, thanks. And so, Councilor Richter?
That's fine.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Whitmarsh.
Well, I had a, wanted to have a further discussion around the RCMP members, but I think there's maybe a slide coming on that, so I can wait.
Okay, thanks. Councilor Long?
Yeah, well, this, this is concerning to me, because as much fun as this kind of looks like, how do we know what those numbers, like, here we are deciding whether we should have two senior, one senior, two juniors? I mean, really, are we, are we really qualified to make that decision?
So staff has?
And I understand that you're being very congenial with it, but I mean, why would we want to muck with that? Supposing you end up with a shift, while we phoned in, and there was nobody that could talk to us, because his council's mucked around with who does what and the shoe? And that's, that's the part that makes me nervous.
And that's why I asked, I deferred to Mr. Backen to explain that, if it's, because Mr. Backen is the one who's been working with the different departments of the two, and we had a discussion earlier, that's why I brought it up for Mr. Backen, is that the two bylaw officers are workable at this point, and so?
And it's such a small amount. So, I mean, you know, I'm not scared, it sounds like we're scared, because we're saying, oh, senior must be more money and less work or something. But actually, you know, I don't know if we would really be, we really should be making those kinds of decisions, sort of in, in each. I know?
No, no. It's, no, it's fair enough.
Well, I'm, I know that some on council feel that they have great, great expectations and, and experience perhaps in everybody's departments, but I don't.
So that's why I defer to Mr. Backen.
Because that's why we hire people to do the job.
So, staff's recommendation is here in the gray, so that's what, that's what staff have, have requested.
Yeah, so one, so actually?
Bishop, we have to slow down for a second.
Yeah, yeah.
Karen just started the process. Again, the gray are not recommendations. Again, they are cost drivers and revenues. We're trying to work towards some recommendations. The model is working towards the recommendations, and Karen's quite correct. We're not quite there yet. Now, many good comments were then made in terms of some of these issues. So, for example, part of the evolution has been to look at the cost drivers, to hear from members of council that said, maybe there's not such a need for bylaw officers, but perhaps there's a need for more contributions to capital. Perhaps we can use DCCs in a, in a new and innovative way. Perhaps we can actually look at changing the rates of taxation between businesses and residential. He's trying to put that together in terms of a mix that would actually represent all of council's input. And as we, as we start looking at that, I think if we can finish the overview, then we can actually go back and drill down, because there's some very appropriate comments, but they're just a little premature at this point, because they have an impact. For example, we've tried to maintain the residential rate from what we've heard, and we've tried to balance to those revenues. As was referenced in that area, that's meant a bit of an incremental increase on the business side. The other option is to reduce expenses in other locations, and that certainly could be done. But in doing so, our first place to look would likely be the contributions to capital, which some members of council have indicated is not the most prudent way to do, deal with the assets. And I wanted to leave that in the background for the moment, and come back to the issue of the RCMP, because even that has had some, some dialogue, in terms of what's the best thing to approach. And again, based on council's input, the thought process was, while one could defer the members over time, that would certainly help on a cost basis, what's going to have the most significant impact in terms of some of the issues that municipalities facing? And property crime was referenced as one. In that regard, on the RCMP, Karen has created this other chart that you can bring up here momentarily. Is it here? Bring that up, toggle over to it. And what the, the number that was proposed originally was the 10, 3, 3, and 3. Karen, maybe you would like to, after talking, if we've talked to the RCMP superintendent, we discussed the 7, 0, 7, whatever that may be, and we've tried to actually come up with a middle ground, which is the 10, is it 10, 2, 3, 2, 3?
Yeah.
And the driving factor there is hearing that the police-to-population ratio is best when it's under 900. We've come up with a, a way of augmenting it, so that there is a, an initial impact, and then it does begin to climb up a bit. Now, that could change over time, but we've tried to moderate that impact, and as well, from that process, use the same smoothing technique as using the reserve to do so, but use it a little bit less and, and, and move things along. So, Karen, did you want to take us through the 10, 2, 3, 2 model? And then we can, let go back to some questions.
Sure. So, or should I start with the 10, 3, 3, 3, which we've talked about a little bit? So this was in Counsel, Counselor Woodward's. We talked about this on Monday. Counselor Woodward had a, the idea of a $750,000 contribution, that's just, I've just inflated it by 2 and 1/2%, which is what we're told, that, to provide for the RCMP increases. So that, that, what that does is to add that 750 every year, provides a consistent 0.56 increase in each year's budget that we have, that we know is coming, that we know is going to be there, and it's predictable, and, and we, we know that that's, that, that's what's going to be there. In the meantime, we're hiring 10 officers. So this is 10 officers, starting October 1st. And then this second amount is the annualization of those 10. So this is the other nine months in the next year, at a slightly higher rate. And then adding three officers, starting October 1st, and then they're annualized. And that's how it works through the 10, 3, 3, and 3. And the key here being that the, the transfers and transfers from the reserve below, when you see red, that means we're drawing from the existing RCMP reserve. So, in and of itself, the $750,000 levy, we, we're not able to stay within, and we knew we wouldn't be able to stay within, but we hope that the amount that we were drawing from the RCMP reserve would be tenable and not massive. So, we see that that's happening. We're drawing from the reserve for those three years, and then it starts to get back on track again. And then we need to reassess where we're at. And the key to this, for, for superintendent power, is this line right here, which is his pop-to-cop ratio, that he wants to keep under 900. So you can see, this is where we're at right now, and his goal is that it be under 900. I believe he said the, the city of Langley is somewhere in the 600s. Yeah.
Sure.
And is the population factored in, too?
Yeah. Okay, Counselor Woodward?
Yeah, thanks. So I have, I'm in the queue for other questions, but I'll just stick to this.
Okay.
Because I think you, it's, it's correct that this is what we've been doing, but I think what's missing from this is that I actually, in the memo, mentioned that council in 21, 2021 budget and 2022 budget would consider the pace of those additional five, that we wouldn't pre-approve or commit to those within this. So that's an important distinction?
Yes, yes.
That gets deferred to the 21, 2021 budget, on how to deal with that additional request for five more.
Correct.
The next thing is, I want to highlight here, is that in the 20, in the column G, column G, right, so we are carrying forward that 750, because that's built into the base budget now.
We're adding 750 every year.
It's, okay, so we, but it's built in, 750, yeah, so you're right. So the 480 is built into the base budget, the reserve addition, that would be used to go to salaries in 2021. So then, the 1.4, the difference of the 712, what the memo actually, I think, tried to convey, and may not have been clear enough, is that in 2021, we would annualize an additional 3 or 350, and maybe use that reserve to pull out that 300, the difference. And in the following year, we could annualize an additional 3, 400. And then we're not, we're not drawing the reserve down 700 every year. That's not what I proposed, if that makes sense.
Yeah, and this isn't, I was going to say it isn't drawing the reserve down, but it is until we start to come back into the green.
But it's, but I don't see the red. If we're, if we're annualizing an additional 300 next year, and drawing down that $5 million reserve by 300, to make up the gap, and then we could annualize that 300 the following year, then those 10 officers would be built into the base budget, no more reliance upon the reserve. The reserve would smooth out that addition of those 10 into the base budget, without that 1.7 tax increase in a single year. Does that help explain it a little further?
Yes, I think I, I didn't, I just?
Because I think the red looks scary, that somehow we're going into the reserve, when actually we're annualizing it into the budget.
Well, this, this is the amount by which the reserve can't, the, so, so what this presumes is that, of the 750 envelope that was created in year one, the 311 is, is going into the reserve. And what this shows is that in the next year, the 311 is not enough to come back in and annualize the 10 officers for nine months. So it, we actually need, in addition to the 768 that would be added in the next year, we need an additional 712 from the reserve. So, so that's still working within the contributions that you've created. When we get to the, to the 2022 year, we're now, or sorry, actually, the reserve balance, I take that back. The reserve balance dipped a little bit below, just, just in the, in, this is hard to explain, but just in the context of just this, this is as if we were creating a brand-new reserve using the 311 to 80. Does that make sense? You, you had a, you had two pieces to your 750 in 2020. 438,000 was for the officers, October 1st, and then the 311 was a transfer to reserve. So in a brand-new reserve, that 311 is the balance that we now have in that reserve. Right?
So the way I look at it is a little bit differently, and I just, I hope council will allow me some latitude to try to explain. What I was trying to achieve was the, the 750 is built into this year's budget permanently. And so that's 750, whether, and then we have some cash put aside, but that 750 then would apply to the 1.7 next year. We would be looking to annualize an additional million, but we have 300 put aside. So then, if we, what's missing from here, I believe, just correct if I'm wrong, because if you go back up, the, the, rather than drawing down by 300, because the 300 we're putting aside this year, the 712, we could annualize and add that to the base budget next year, say 300, 350 of that, which would be 0.2, 0.3 of a percent. So, so you're not, what I, but I, maybe I'm missing it here. What I'm not seeing on this particular projection is that we annualize more of that 1.7 next year, to the point where we're not drawing from the reserve anymore. And of course, the reserve is being added to by the difference between authorized strength and, and delivered strength.
The reserve would, yeah.
It's going to, it's going to increase further, so then we can?
True.
We can add 10 now, and then use that reserve, but we, we continually add some portion of that additional 10 officers into the next two budgets or one budget, and we smooth out that tax increase. We're not, but we don't need to draw it down into 2023, 2024, because what the memo also said was that we would consider that additional five over 21 to 2022, based upon what the numbers look like, what other priorities are, what other competing projects there may be, but that we wouldn't necessarily be doing 3, 3, 3, and 3, or 3, 2, and 3, that we would do the 10, and then look at it in 2021 and 2022 as a council. So yours spreadsheet, I think, at least what I'm, what I'm seeing, is giving the impression that we're going to be drawing down that reserve, when actually we're just smoothing out the tax increase, and the reserve is actually increasing. Would that be fair?
No, I don't think so. Well, for, two, two things. I want to say that the, the 3, 3, and 3, and 3, right out of the gates, I want to say, that was just me assuming the next four years. So your, your 10 is in the first year. But the 700, the, the 438,000 that we add to the base in year one, that, that's going to be there ongoing.
Okay, so I can stop you there.
Yeah.
So the way I related to it is that we were adding 750?
Yes.
To the base budget in year one?
Right.
Not 400, if that makes sense.
Yeah, and my second statement was going to be that the, the balance of the 750 is the actual transfer to the reserve component. Maybe this is, does this help at all? This, this summary down here at the bottom? So you can see, this is a 750 that is going up by inflation, and we've got the 10 officers starting here, with the transfer to the reserve.
Yeah.
Then we have the annualization of those 10 officers, and the addition of a new three officers, starting October 1st.
I think that bottom line helps a lot. So I think I'll leave it there, and if council has any other further questions. But I want to leave with the impression that, that we're not drawing down. I'm not intending to fund 10 RCMP officers?
No, no.
From perennial withdrawals from the reserve.
No, and that, that's why I, I showed this the way I did, just to show when it dips into red, that means, so, in treating this as itself, its own self-contained funding mechanism, what I'm, what I'm saying here by these three red columns is, for those three years, we do have to dip into the bigger RCMP reserve temporarily, and then it starts to sort itself out again, back on this year.
Yeah, and I was fine with that in principle, because, you know, we're talking 2, 3, 400,000 on a?
Absolutely, yes.
That's growing every year anyway?
Totally.
Because of the difference. And I think that one of my concerns with Blair Whitmarsh, or Counselor Whitmarsh's submission, was that you removed that, that additional contingency for next year to annualize that, those additions. And I think you, maybe you found the right compromise, and so maybe we can debate that further when the time comes.
Sure.
Good, thanks.
Yeah. This is not the easiest thing in the world to explain, as you can see. So that's that one, and then Mark?
Mark. So, that's?
Sorry.
I'm on the speaker's list here.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
Counsel Ferguson?
Well, yeah, just a quick question to both Counselor Woodward and Counselor Whitmarsh. Do they both include that $15 million creative, they both, there's no change to those whatsoever?
Just in the amount that comes in the first year, a $250,000 increase.
You're talking the RCMP?
No, no. The, the, Rhodes DCCs.
Oh, the Rhodes? Your contribution to capital, Rhodes?
Yeah. Not, not the contribution to capital, the, the DCC revenue coming into the, to the budget.
And my second question was, both those, plus your, your, whatever it was on that screen, the, the model, you called it, and what about us going, and, and of course, we're contemplating the, the tax increase, we're contemplating other things as well, what about the other flagged items that we may, I would hopefully may, but may not, go to the public about?
As in capital, capital projects?
Yeah, well, that would go to the public open house?
Yes.
Somebody said was on Monday or something, and it wasn't Monday?
I have, I have some information on the capital rate here, that's coming up.
Okay, so that was one, you know, are we going to do this road, or that light, or 270?
Exactly, yeah.
Or, you know, yeah. Okay, those are the kind of things I meant. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Hey, Counselor Woodward, and I think at this point, questions up to this, any questions up to this slide?
Yeah, so I was going to move on, just saving some other questions, and maybe on some, some process. So if we, if we move, Mr. Mayor, if we go to some version of blue, there's still some aspects of blue that, that I want to try to amend or debate separately, and I'm just not sure what the process would be. So, for example, I had some additional questions around road paving. One of the reasons that, that road paving was adjusted in, in my memo, was that, and I think in the 4.12, correct me if I'm wrong, the, the road paving addition for this year was zero, right?
Uh, no, it was 500.
But in the 4.12?
No, it wasn't, it was never part of the 4.12. So again, this is coming back to the, the, here it is here. So the 4.12 was on January 20th. It was part of these operating items in the top, in the base budget.
Right, so the 4.12, if you go down to infrastructure, none of that 1.8 was included in the 4.12.
Correct, yes.
So the baseline that I was working from was the 4.12, where infrastructure additional contributions were zero, and in mind, they went up to, I found some other swapping and so on. The contributions to capital were net 475, but we still found, I mean, I found some other things to swap around and so on, but the net increase of 475. So this idea that it was zero, I think we need to correct. But also, one of the reasons I didn't specifically highlight paving was because I thought that there was an additional 900,000 in the base budget for paving this year between local roads at 400 and airport paving at 500. Those were permanent additions to the operating budget for paving. Now, am I incorrect in that?
I believe those were capital items. They were capital, yeah, those were capital projects.
Coming from the existing base, and then this would be increases to that existing base. So one of the-
A small distinction, road paving, and this is a tangible capital assets thing, road paving is actually an operating line item. So road paving never, never funds capital, never goes over to capital. So it's for pavement maintenance on the operating side. So the other items that you mentioned, the airport paving and so on, those are actual large paving projects where we're actually replacing or building a piece of paving, whereas these ones are like, you know, they're all the maintenance on existing paving. So it's a distinction that gets confusing because this road paving, this amount of 500 that was requested does not contribute to the capital budget at all.
Yeah, so I think that was a bit confusing for me trying to figure it all out in a week, right? That airport paving 500, local road paving 400, coming from operating, you know, thinking that there's a million dollars in these items that are being built into the budget. But I think that that may be something they need to clarify, maybe before we debate this particular adjustment for road paving, because I don't think it's clear. Because if you have roads, just, what do you call it here, program, what is it? Yeah, operating capital, operating contribution to capital roads, and then we have road paving. I believe that was, Mr. Backen, was that presented to us slightly differently last year, where it was combined together as opposed to two separate line items, infrastructure and asset maintenance?
They may have been in the communication. I think they were still distinct. And I think what we're trying to illuminate is that there is road repair and maintenance, I guess potholes is one example. And then there is actually larger projects where a mile of road may be resurfaced. When it's a larger resurfacing, it's going to be a capital item. When it's repair and maintenance, it's filling the potholes, whether it be with the cold mix or the hot mix, as the example would go. The challenge is, when does it flip from being a road maintenance item to a capital item? And that's really a bit of art, because it really depends upon the scope and scale of it. It's not so much meters or miles, it's really a matter of the cost of it. I think that's probably the defining factor, because the amount going toward the road operating is actually destined primarily for those repairs and maintenance.
If I maybe ask an operational question, is that really, you know, the reality on the ground? So if you have, you know, 500,000, just pick numbers, 500,000 for road paving, 500,000 for roads, and 500,000 for fixing lights, if you're road paving, you need more money for road paving, and you have money set aside for lights, you're still going to pave the road. You're going to take the money from the lights that don't even be repaired this year. Is there some way to simplify this that, because I think roads and paving is kind of confusing the issue a tad in terms of maintaining these roads. So rather than filling potholes, maybe the staff would determine that we're better off to rebuild a road and decrease maintenance costs. And that must be going on behind the scenes to some extent, right?
Yeah, can I add something? And Roland, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the roads manager, Brian Eady, I have talked to him from year to year, and it's a constant balancing act and a constant struggle for him to get the right amount of money in operating to take care of the things that have to do with paving that are operating, defined as operating, like pothole patching and things like that. He has an amount that, and that would be the road paving program, and it's a constant struggle for him to have the right amount of money in that versus the right amount of money over in the capital program to do the major roads capital that revolves around paving. And we have discussions during the year of, I have too much this year on the road paving because I'm not having as much work to do over here, and I need more money over here. That's a constant, he's constantly trying to figure out what is the right balance of money on both sides.
Okay, so I'm almost done. I feel twitching a little bit. So I think I'm trying to help. So what I'm trying to get to is, I wanted one more question, then I'm going to come back to process. The memo itself had a number of sort of intangible items which aren't captured in this increase. So, for example, some prior use specific projects and some other items which so far haven't been adjusted or proposed to be adjusted. So, for example, if we're, you know, funding traffic calming, or we're making sure Yorkson Community Park goes ahead, that that would be captured in the blue?
When we get to the capital section, yes.
Yes, okay, so that's great. I'm going to clarify that for council. And the next thing, so if we move forward with some version of this, Mr. Mayor, I still think that there'd be some amendments to the blue that I could propose for council's consideration to try to address this concern around a long-term contribution to capital increases, which I think are an important goal as well. But also, maybe look at some other alternatives to get that business tax increase down below that 6%, which was kind of the threshold that I was working under, and that would maintain that residential back down to the two. So I think that some of the concerns I have is seeing that business tax going above that six, you know, hitting that 7% range, and that's something that I'm starting to get a little uncomfortable with. So I would have some potential proposals on how to try to address some of these concerns that I've heard, but maintain those baselines. So I don't know what the process would be to propose those. I'll leave that with you.
Thanks. So that's where, and get some assistance from staff here. After the last meeting, I'd asked Ms. Sinclair to kind of combine everything, and I guess that's the blue, so that we'd have something to start with. And so there's a couple of ways we can do it. I guess the end goal of this meeting, if we look at the end, what are we trying to achieve here, is to have something that we can take to the public. Is that correct? So we're not approving a budget, we're coming up with something that we can take to the public, get their feedback. We still have an opportunity to change some of the numbers if we have to. This isn't the end goal of today's meeting, it's really to get something to the public. So I don't want to get too hung up on small amounts, you know, like let's get something together here. But I think this is our opportunity, as we discussed last meeting, is that we want to have something, we don't want to have two or three options to the public, we want to have one. And it might be safe to say that we're never going to get it perfect. And it's interesting, that discussion on the paving is that you have, staff are constantly, and it doesn't matter if it's roads, it's all throughout the corporation, with our budget, we approve buckets of money for certain items. During the year, something comes up, a road washes out, all of a sudden, that bucket of money is now depleted, and they have to take from another bucket, but still stay within the overall budget. They can't go above it. So staff are, you know, it's just like your own household budget. You can't come up precisely with the amount that you need to take you from January 1st to December 31st, but you come up with an overall, this is your income, this is what your expenses are. Sometimes decisions have to be made partways through, and with our big decisions, that comes to council for discussion, for approval to move money from one to the other. But I think a lot happens at the staff level, a small one. So, you know, maybe Mr. Backen can help. There's still a couple more speakers I want to get to yet, and these are just general questions, so we get a, so everybody gets an understanding of what we're talking about here. And then to move to our end goal of getting something to the public, one way would be, we can do it certainly by motions, and then council decides, we, you know, say, we move this, and then we look for amendments, and then we can debate each amendment, or it's always better if we have something we kind of all agree on in the first place. But Mr. Backen, just to give council, myself, you know, trying to navigate through this process, how do we get to the end game of today, which is to get something to the public, which isn't by all means the final product, but we hopefully, hopefully it's pretty close?
I think you've come very close, Your Worship. The objective is to have something that can go to the public, the council is considering. They're considering it with a view to seeing what feedback comes back from the public themselves. And because of the process, I think one could argue there's five or six models. We're suggesting that one is best, but certainly probably no more than three, but I think one would be the preferable process. And the suggestion, I think, would be that at some point, after we've answered the general questions, would be for a member of council to move, hopefully, one of the three models that's before you, to feel which one fits the best. And then, as you said, have amendments to that model, because each one has its own, I guess, flow chart that follows from that. And the model, as you represented, it very well suggests that from what we've heard from all sources, that's what kind of leads us to. But there may be some thresholds there, as we've learned today, that don't then work. So then we have to rework those thresholds. And the beauty of the spreadsheet is, we can make those changes as we are in this meeting, so we can come up with something, hopefully, that reflects what does meet all of the constraints that we're facing from the perspectives of each member of council.
Yeah, so I think that's the process. We'll go through these questions, and then we'll move it, and then we'll just go through, I mean, at the end of the day, it's council's decision, majority of council. It's the only way we're going to get through it, because there's nine of us, we all have nine different ideas. So maybe we'll get through the questions and concerns, and then we'll get possibly the blue one on the floor, and then go line by line, and just see if there's any amendments as we work our way down. So it might be in orderly fashion, and get to the bottom. If we find out at the end of the day, we've got a 25% tax increase, we know we've got more work to do. But hopefully, you know, we're just, it's the tweaking of it, I think. But again, keeping in mind that to get it perfect, you know, is, well, we never want to get to perfection, because then there's no room for improvement. So, okay, I'm going to go through the list here. Councillor Whitmarsh?
Yeah, I think the, there's some information that we need to get, and some questions we need to ask. And I think it would be helpful if we sort of took a section of this and just had all of our questions and presentations with staff on that section. So, for example, we just started on discussing RCMP. We got maybe a quarter of the way discussing the RCMP and the different options, and then we moved on to another topic. And so it just is a little frustrating. I just have lots of questions about RCMP, and we moved on to many topics. So it feels like it'd be nice, just, let's just get it all out on RCMP, and when we feel we've all asked our questions and we all understand, then we'll go on to the next topic. Then we can also then later come back and make amendments. But if we jump all over like crazy, we will be past 5:30 for sure.
Okay, no, that's fair enough. So do you have any specific questions about any specific area that you're-
I want to spend time on RCMP.
Okay, so we're going to go, okay, so we're going to go, general questions, and we're going to start drilling down to the specific ones. And I think that's, I think it's consistent with what I said, let's get the general questions out of the way, and then we'll start going from line by line all the way down, and be specific. So, Councillor Richter?
Yeah, well, Councillor Woodward, I think, just referenced that we're working with the blue model. I reject that idea. Did council decide that it's the blue model we're working here?
There's nothing on the floor yet. So there's no motion?
See, I think we should, we should clear the blue model and work into the blue model by going through what's been proposed in the other two models, and see if we can reach a compromise there. And just start at the top and work down.
I hear you. I think we'll do something similar to that, because it is really a, you know, there's numbers that Ms. Sinclair has put in there, but again, it is like a blank, we're not going to clear it. No, excuse me, I have the floor. We're not going to clear the numbers, we're going to go line by line, and so-
Well, the first one is fine, because I'll-
I know, excuse me, but that's what, we have to have a process, and so we'll go line by line. And then that, if we say, well, it's fine, just like you just said, the first one's fine, we'll leave it, and we'll go to the next one. If there's some changes, I don't want to take it all out all at once. So, general questions right now, and then we're going to go line by line. And I think that'll help clarify so that we can get down to the bottom by sometime today. So, Councillor Long?
Yeah, so I'm worried about this clearing the blue, because I thought the blue, and I appreciate everything that's being said, but the blue is staff's interpretation of a compromise, is it not? If it isn't, that's what I'm hoping it is, as a starting point.
As a starting point.
Otherwise, we're going to have to put nine columns up there, and that won't be much fun. And then I don't know, Your Worship, if it's wise to go from top to bottom, because everything affects everything. So I don't mind the idea of, let's pick our priorities, which was RCMP, I heard, and I know some of us are going to be talking about capital maintenance and that kind of thing. So-
We'll get to it. I think we start at the top and make our way down, we'll get to RCMP, we'll have that fulsome discussion. So if we can, at this point, I think, entertain a motion to take the blue forward, and then the motion, then, oh, you're looking puzzled because we need to-
Yeah, we haven't made the blue yet.
No, but the blue is-
Worship, I think you're going down the right path, but I'm not certain of the board how many questions there are, because you may wish to deal with the general questions, then the specifics, then choose the column model, and then processing.
So I think, so Councillor Long, I think you're the last of the general questions, and then we're just going to go down.
Yeah, so mine is going to be RCMP as a starting point, and then I can, we can make adjustments, I suppose, after that. But I don't want to have us go down the list and then end up with not enough money to do the RCMP.
I see what you mean, yeah.
And then the same with maintenance, capital maintenance.
Okay, okay. Councillor Woodward?
Yeah, I'm just going to try to help here. So I think, I think what I really want to get down to is a baseline. The questions will go in a circle, in my opinion, could go in a circle for quite a while. If we get a blue or a motion or some sort of column, I don't care even know if I, you know, whichever one, but blue seems to make sense, that we move the blue and then can just start taking amendments or questions on specific items. Because I'm a little concerned if we say, well, we're done with base increase, and then we make changes down below, you might want to revisit some of the base increase assumptions. So I think we should just maybe go, you know, just move the blue, which I will do if you want, Mr. Mayor, and start looking at potential debate items and amendments to the blue if people are upset about it.
I think that's fair. Get something on the table.
We've got to get going.
And then we can just move through line by line, and we can start at RCMP, I don't care, that's what-
So the issue with line by line is, if we make some changes down below, I would deserve the right to come back above.
Exactly, we have to. So I think if we can get it on the table, then let's go line by line. We won't make amendments, we'll just play with those numbers, you can hopefully save this one and copy a new, so we can always go back to it. But, and then just go line by line, and it may be, might be very quick. See what council has to say, and then at the end, we make one amendment to cover the changes.
I'd like to move the blue then, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, is there a second? Councillor Whitmarsh, second. So the blue is on the table. So let's just quickly go down, and if there's some major problems, then we're going to have to rejig this process. But this is a complex process, and, no, it's not going to vote, it's on the table as a motion. And now, what we're going to do is, I just want to take it slow, because this is important. So I'm going to clear the queue right now, just hang on. Hang on, Councillor Ferguson, stop pushing the button. I'm going to clear the queue, I'm going to start with line one. If anybody wants to speak to line one, push the button. And then I'm going to clear the queue, and I'm going to go through each one. So if some of these aren't such, as I think Councillor Richter mentioned, some might not be very contentious at all. So start with salary and wages, does anybody want to speak to salary and wages? Okay, Councillor Davis?
The salary and wages that is included leap year this year?
It includes 262 days.
And how many is it normally, 260?
261 is the most common, but it goes anywhere from 260 to 262.
Oh, it's in there, period, queue.
Thank you. Anybody else on that? Okay, so we can move to analyzations and deferments. Any questions on that? Clear the queue. Nice, seeing none. Go down to external debt. Any discussion on external debt? Seeing none? Okay, we'll just move it over just a touch. There we go. Okay.
And that one, I should say, goes with this one.
Okay, those two together. Okay, so we'll cover those two. Oh, okay, there's, anybody have any questions on those two? Seeing none. Road DCCs to fund connector land. Councillor Woodward, we're getting some action here. Councillor Woodward?
Yeah, so I think on this one, I wanted to highlight the difference between, I'm not sure I like that sort of orangey color. Maybe you could have given me a stronger sort of blue or-
No, no, we like orange.
Something like that. The green is so progressive, and I don't know why Councillor Whitmarsh got the green. So I think for me, I want to highlight the difference here, because I think this is going to be a debatable item. So for me, the 2.75, Ms. Sinclair, correct me if I'm wrong, but the goal of the memo was, and the way of withdrawing down that DCC program, was to begin a process of annualizing that debt servicing requirement into the operating budget. And that moving it back to the 3 million means that there's no annualization in this year's budget. Would that be a correct statement?
Well, the annualization would come in the next year, so-
This year's budget, I think. If the 3 million there would be minimal to zero annualization of that debt service requirement into this year's budget.
Based on looking at the $3 million debt servicing, yes, yes.
I think that was the core difference, that there was a desire to not postpone that, but even just start grinding that number down a little bit, even in the first year, even at that small 250, which doesn't seem like much, but that's 250 we'd have to make up in the future. So that was the goal. And then you left it at the 275, and what was your logic for that? Just to pick a number, essentially?
You got in first.
I got in first, oh, see. Don't say that, because next year we'll all be competing for the memo date.
I had no reason. I had your schedule, and I was seeing how it would work, and either number could work.
Okay, so I think that for me, that's the core information for council to consider if an amendment comes on this, that I believe that we can find room for it, and that we need to start annualizing that debt into the operating budget with the green proposal doesn't do. Thank you.
Thanks. Councillor Richter?
Yeah, no, I was just going to ask about the difference between the green and the orange, but I think I understand it now. I'm okay with the blue.
Okay. Thank you. Councillor Whitmarsh?
Yeah, I don't think that is the difference. I think they, it does annualize it in the same way. It just starts at 3 million instead of 2.75. It takes the same seven years to reduce it down to zero. So it's the same process, it just is a little bit more each year. Over seven years, it works out to about $30,000 to $40,000 a year difference in terms of annualizing it. So it's exactly the same concept, it just starts at 3 million instead of 2.75. Otherwise, there's really no difference to it. It was a way to offset some of the other expenses as we go further along, and to help with asset maintenance and infrastructure. So that's, otherwise, there's absolutely no difference.
Okay, so that exhausts on this one. So we've had some discussion, we have two different opinions. So one way, and council helped me, is we could take, we could add this as amendment, put the two point, if it changes, put the 2.75 over in P just to place mark, you know, as a place mark, you know, make sure it's in there. And if we do agree to go to three, then we change the number. We can always at the end come back. So is that something that council would like to see? We just have a vote on this so we can move through, and then if we do have to come back, we screw it up then. We can just do it by show of hands, I think. So, so if, so right now, if Councillor Whitmarsh wishes to make an amendment to three, then we'll vote on it, and then we'll-
Make an amendment?
Yeah, I think so, I think so. Yeah, so-
I'll make an amendment to move it to 3 million, following the annualization suggested in my memo.
Yeah, and is there a second? Councillor Coon seconds it. So I'm going to clear the queue. So we got, now we're on a motion, so if you want to push the button, again. Okay, okay. Councillor Woodward?
Yeah, I don't need to repeat what I've already said in the Q and A. I think that, yeah, of course, you can say it's still the same seven years, but, I mean, we could also take 3 million a year and then do, we take 3 million a year and then do 3 million, annualize 3 million in the year seven, it would be the same seven years. I think it's important that we start to chew down and put that operating, we committed to that debt for great reasons, and I think it's important to start moving that into the operating budget and not defer that. Thanks.
Thank you.
Your Worship, if we could just hear from Karen for a moment?
Sure.
Because I think both comments are very appropriate and very, very sound. The issue, though, I think, is more of a technical one. By taking that number up from the available proceeds, what does it look like in subsequent years? The amortization of that, how does it impact? I think the timeline goes from seven years to, is it five years? Or is it three years?
No, Councillor Whitmarsh has the same period of time. Yeah, it's just going down at a slightly different pace.
Okay, so what would the pace do then to our reserve, our projected reserve balances? That's really where I was going with it, in terms of, does one have a more detrimental effect that could affect other projects?
No, he's still working with the same 11.5.
Right, but each year, the projected balance then will be impacted. So, for example, the first year, the projected surplus or excessive funds in excess of this 2.75 would be $250,000. That's going to go towards it. It's being applied more quickly, that means that the balance is reduced. So what do we then have to our surplus and reserves then? Because we're going to have to take more out of them.
Yeah, I think I can help with that. So that, maybe I'm wrong, but my memo was 11.7, Mr. Back, 11.5, and this is 11.7. So it is drawing more from the road DCC, but it's a minor amount. I just want to clarify that. You said they were the same.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, so just want to clarify that and be helpful. But I think that that is a decision that we should make. Are we going to, are we going to add any of that into the operating budget this year, or are we going to draw more from the road DCC program? Thanks.
Okay, any other discussion on the amendment? No, we'll call an official vote. Okay, what do I label this, Ms.?
It's B1, sir.
B, number one, B1. Okay. So this is to vote on three, basically, there's an amendment, the amendment is to change the 2.75 to three, and that's what the amendment is. So if we agree with the change, then your vote in favor. If you don't, then your vote opposed. Okay. Does that call the question? Carrie's, Councillor Richter, Councillor Long, Councillor Woodward, opposed. So we'll put three in there. We'll hold that, because hopefully this doesn't change things too much at the end of the day. All right, so now we'll move on to, now, did we do transfer to capital infrastructure reserve? That was, that was tied into-
That's linked to-
Linked to external debt. Okay, so revenue from growth, any discussion on that? Councillor Davis?
Have we got that number pretty nailed down? Is there something that could change?
It's, whoops.
I guess it's kind of an estimated-
It's actually 2.15, I apologize for that. It's, right now, we only have the completed roll, which is not the final roll. The growth is looking quite healthy, but it does, it will go down in the revised roll. Because what happens with the completed roll, that is the one that is related to all the notices that go out in January to everybody, saying, here's what your assessed values are- here's what your assessed values are. And in the farming industry, a lot of people maybe haven't got their paperwork in yet. And so then they scramble to get their paperwork done, and come in the end of January, that number does soften a bit. Because the, the paperwork gets in for people who got the heads up that they didn't have their paperwork in. So that number will come down a bit, but I do feel like it's actually doable. Sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Why does the percentage change? Okay.
Yeah, it should be two point one five, as I noticed it over here.
Okay, so it's, so, so it's not a formula you're based on, it's just, okay, as long as that's correct.
There we go.
Okay, yeah, let's keep it on a formula base. Yeah, that's, that's good. Thanks. Great, Counsel Woodward?
Yes, so when you changed that to two to two point one five, did the one point one nine change? So I'm just curious, with the two changes now, the two point one five item being, being corrected, and the three million, where are we at now at the bottom?
Four point oh five.
Yeah, so we're, we're actually getting pretty close here. So if you can go back up for me, please. So I just wanted to clarify for that two point one five, all three are the same, and that, that you and I discussed that a little bit prior to me proposing it. And, and I, I sensed that I was quite, just a little bit on the line there, and that that would be a council decision at this point. Whether we'd be looking at maybe trying to find that point one or point five next year, if that turned out to be a little bit lower.
Correct.
And I felt that that was, that was worthy. So I just wanted to mention that. Thank you.
Counsel Ferguson?
Well, yeah, I just, I think you've made the changes that I've suggested, well, pardon me, that was suggested. But my only question is, if the two point one five is now across the board, is that number, two point eight seven five right across the board consistent? Or is that a number that you made the, the change at time when we go to taxes?
Oh, okay. I'm, I'm sorry, Counsel Ferguson, I thought, I thought there was a, an error. If you could repeat that, I apologize.
Okay, I think you made some changes, but the, I'm looking at that, you made the change to the two point one five for this revenue from growth, right? And you've made a change right across the board. Is that two point eight seven? That's two point, no, not two point, two million eight seven five right across the board. Is that gonna change, or that's consistent, no matter what you add as far as percentage goes?
That's, that's us estimating that growth, that growth will be two point one five percent in the township. And that I feel, it, it is an estimate, but I feel it's, it's a reasonable estimate.
Okay, I just wanted, because those numbers were changing there. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that clears that question. So we go to the next one. That is fees and charges. So I'm curious, the percentage, yeah, just the percentage has changed.
No, what?
Is there a formula?
Hang on a second.
Yeah, just, just do that. Yeah, keep the same, there we go.
This is, yeah.
I know it's, when you.
Because it's, it's based on the total here, so, because that's not changing, it's not changing.
Okay, good. Okay, Counsel Richter. So this is on fees and charges increase.
Fees and charge, I'm wondering, oh, like, it did get changed then, because I saw it was two.
It was an error. Okay, that was.
It was an error.
And so, and that, again, just, just, I don't think it'll be an issue, but just a caution. That, that number is based on a future bylaw. With fees and changes that council has to deliberate. So if, and as we discussed on Monday, if that bylaw failed to pass and we kept the same, then you're confident you can find that.
Right.
You'd make it, you'd make.
If it was much bigger, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be confident.
Okay.
So the other question I would have then, if we were to change, like if we were to put a differential fee in on the Alda Grove pool as an example, because seventy percent of the users are. Okay, the outdoor experience.
So that, that would be something that, I think that's part of it. And then I think we, it is hard for staff to predict what we'll do in the future bylaw, but I think that's a part of the discussion. So I think this is a pretty good number to go with. Is that fair to say?
Yeah, usually, when it comes to the fees and charges, we'll, we'll see the impact of, of when they come into play this year in two thousand twenty, and then we will increase budgets next year for, for what we see.
Okay, so we have.
It's a little bit of a lag.
Yeah, so there's a bit of adjustment. Okay. Okay, thank you. So I think that clears that one. So service con, service maintenance contracts. That stays fairly consistent across the board. Any questions on that? Seeing none, move on to other items. Oh, other items, that's, that's the one the accountants hate. So what's in other items?
It's, it's a popery of many, many, many items.
Smaller items, like paperclips. Okay. Move on to number fourteen, operating impact on capital development. Nothing there. RCMP contract, pretty much out of our hands now. And that's consistent across, and that, is that consistent with your recommendation?
Yes, that's, that hasn't changed.
Yeah, okay.
The ones that don't have, that just have a dash, they haven't changed.
Okay, fair enough. Climate action, operating component. And so that's at a hundred all the way across.
That one has been reduced from three oh five.
Three oh five. Counsel Woodward?
I just want to highlight this one, because I think when maybe Counsel Anderson arrives, we might have to revisit this, but I want to anticipate that. But also, I want to highlight for council here that we're looking sort of climate line item here, and a climate line item over there, and a climate line item over here. And when, when I sort of combined them all together, and you and I looked at that, it was over a million dollars in new funding for climate-related items. Would that be fair?
Correct, in both operating and capital.
In both operating and capital. And so the memo, which is in, captured in the blue, was to fund climate items, but also try to combine capital, infrastructure replacement items, such as, you know, Walnut Grove and a few other items, and then the electricity upgrades to the Pacific facility, which are climate-based items. And so I, I want to highlight that, and that there's still significant initial first-year funding for, for climate initiatives with that label.
Fair enough. And this morning, when I was meeting with Minister McKenna, who had been the minister for environment and climate change, now she's the Minister of Infrastructure, she says, you know, in the other ministry, it was all the high-level stuff and lots of arguments over it. But she liked where she is now, because you actually get to do things that make a difference, like building, or, you know, electric buses and, and electric transit and that sort of thing. So as Counsel Woodward said, there's a lot of actions that are happening that are on the ground, making the changes. So we're not losing out in the big pictures, kind of the point I want to make. And it was interesting hearing from her, going from one ministry to the other, saying, she likes it here because, in, in infrastructure, because she can actually make an impact and make those concrete changes. All right, Counsel Whitmarsh?
Yeah, just, yeah, on this one, just to follow up, what, what is it that we won't be doing by subtracting the two hundred and five? I just can't remember.
That's a great question. So what, what a lot of this money is for, because the reason it's in the operating is because it, it actually isn't for a, a concrete capital project. It's for preparing background work to, to do some grant applications on some capital, what could be capital projects in the future. So when you're, when you're working on studies and reviews of, of infrastructure for the purposes of that, you don't always know it's gonna end up being a capital project. So we have it on the operating side. So a lot of this has to do with preparing for grants, grant applications. I just have a, a write-up on it that I'm looking to try and find quickly. And it has, some of the work has started. What it will mean if it's reduced is that the department will just have to, they'll have to shuffle internally in their, in their budgets to continue on with the grant information. Okay. So grant funding for low-carbon electrification studies, so it's studies for buildings, climate education, public consultation for the development of the climate action strategy, a modeling part for part-three step code implementation, development of incentive programs, commencing a natural asset inventory, reviewing development guidelines and bylaws, smart metering for buildings, expansion of an EV charging station, and others, and other related studies. And associated funding is, is, associated with this funding is an opportunity to seek approximately a hundred and sixty thousand in grant funding. So it's, it's a lot of studies and reviews of the different aspects.
Right, okay, so it's hard to know exactly, I mean, they obviously can't do all those things and now do it for a hundred grand. So I guess it's just hard to know. It's getting maybe too much in the details on exactly what won't happen now as a result. But not all those things are gonna happen. I'm assuming with a, a sixty-seven percent reduction in budget.
Did you want to comment, Harper, or is that covered?
Yeah, I think just to further comment on that is that the majority of this funding is to be used to prepare for next year's capital budget submission. In order to do that, we need to undertake studies, really find out what's feasible, what the cost might be. And it's correct that, you know, with the reduction, we won't be able to carry out some of those activities that were mentioned back here.
Right, okay. All right, thank you. Counsel Woodward?
Yeah, I just want to add to that, because I think that's some, some good additional information. So if I, you know, again, I think I don't get into that level of detail, right? And I don't, I don't think maybe I should, or people want me to. But if we have a million dollars in new funding, it wasn't as easy as I would hope to just say, let's do six hundred, and then staff prioritize what's important within that envelope of a million dollars. That was very difficult to get to, was it not?
Mainly because of the crossover between operating and capital, yes.
But I think I could potentially, if we leave this alone, I could leave it with you and Mr. Backen and, and the management team to say, well, let's try to figure out that six hundred thousand in new climate funding, what's the most appropriate and prioritize things to do, while some of that money was re- diverted to facilities at, at electrical upgrades at the Pacific facility, and pool upgrades at the, at the Walnut Grove Community Aquatic Center and other aquatic facilities to get rid of chlorine, a little bit simplistic, maybe, which I valued as a climate project. And so I think that we could leave it with the staff to take that climate funding. And then, of course, also highlight for, for council's consideration that there is this climate reserve, which I believe is still relatively healthy. I'm trying to find the balance.
The curve.
It's here somewhere. It's in very small type. Where is it here again? See, you can't even find it. It's there somewhere, right? There it is. Third from the bottom, you know, that has almost six hundred thousand in it. So I think, you know, if there's a really, really important climate change item, or a grant application, or a study that we need to move forward, that, that they could look at drawing some of that down to get some of those done, and we could look at, at replenishing that a bit more next year. Thanks.
Thanks. Okay, that clears that one. We move on to one penalty. Oh, that's pretty much a decision made by council to go to two penalty dates. I don't think we can change that too much.
Your worship, we don't intend to change it, but Karen's done a bit of research on this in terms of what other communities are doing. Karen?
Yeah, it just, it was, so in the Lower Mainland, we were the last holdout with the one penalty date and the ten percent penalty. So if we make this change, we'll be across the Lower Mainland. I believe Mission is the last community, not part of Metro. But in the interior, it's going the other way. Kelowna has had a press release last week saying that they were one of the last holdouts of the two fives, and they're going to ten. They're going to one ten. So it's interesting how that pendulum swings back and forth, yeah.
Well, let me, the future council will switch it back again, because that's the way these things usually work. Counsel Davis?
We talked about this, and maybe just to refresh council, what, by going to two fives, how much is that? Was it almost a million dollars?
So our penalty revenue right now is about one point two million.
Yeah.
So what is gonna happen is if we have a five percent, our first, our first due date has a five percent penalty, is we'll be giving the community a heads up that they're, they haven't paid their taxes. So they'll get a five percent penalty, and then they'll presumably, hopefully, pay their taxes. I, I believe this, this initiative was done for the, for the public. So they'll pay their taxes, so that, that those who go in and do pay their taxes because of the heads up, that's what will put the downward pressure on the penalty revenue.
So it was around?
Three hundred. It was around, it was one point two is our revenue that we receive now, and I'm estimating it'll probably be reduced by about three hundred thousand.
So this is a real step for the taxpayer?
Yes.
I'm just wondering.
For the, for the tardy, for the tardy taxpayer.
Tardy taxpayer. That, that's a good distinction.
Not for the taxpayers who pay.
And experience has, has shown too, that you'll still, you'll still have people.
But we're, it's, we're going to lose that revenue.
Yes.
I'm sorry, maybe I said that wrong. We're gonna lose that revenue. So the, everybody in the township can look at that and say, well, we're actually, that's a step forward for the taxpayer. Am I saying that wrong?
Well, it, it is, it's how, how you look at it. On one hand, it could be that if you don't have the money on the second of July, you say, well, in a month, I'll have it, and I'll, I'll pay the extra five percent. That could actually counter, and we make money out of it, because they say, well, I don't want to pay ten percent, but maybe I'll wait a month or two and pay five. And then, well, what, how much time is there for the second one? Is it one month, or?
No, September.
It's September, so, so several months, so they can say, well, I'll wait two, three months, I'll pay the five percent. That could actually have, have an opposite effect.
Okay, I'm not, I'm not a pencil guy too, but so say if we made it three dates, and we get taxes in quarterly, does that do anything?
The, the one, the challenge with that, if I may, is that with each of those, is, is, it's like a mini tax rush.
Yeah.
So the second tax rush will be smaller than the July second one, for sure. It will be. But what you'd, what you'd have then is a, a big tax rush, and then two small tax rushes. So it, so the staffing component and the, and the notices going out and all of that will be additional cost.
Yeah, by us making two dates, we, that's, we're losing a lot of, where the township is, is, I don't know, losing it, but we just don't have it, and, and it's, it's staying out in the, it's staying out in the, out in the township.
Yeah, and hopefully, it will make not so painful, those scenarios where the taxpayer truly, you know, was in Palm Springs until the day after the due date, and came in at eight thirty the next morning, and, you know, truly, it will help.
If they're in Palm Springs, they'll.
Yeah, I shouldn't use Palm Springs, but camping.
They're working overtime, and they try and make ends meet, and they couldn't make it in on time.
That's right. Thank, thank you very much.
There still will be calls. There still will be calls.
There always will be. That's, that's no, no question. And, and it's, and it, it's happened to me where I've forgotten that I had to pay the penalty. People get caught up in it, but I didn't complain. That was a long time ago. All right, move on. I think we're good with that section. So programs and, so we got. Sure. Uh, just, just hold on, let me go. Counsel Woodward?
Suggestions that try to be, try to be helpful. Maybe, maybe we could skip to the RCMP, and then see how that might free up or decrease money for the, for those two categories?
I'm fine with that.
That seems like a relatively large decision we need to make.
Yeah, we got to a big chunk there, so, so we are, let's move, let's skip down to RCMP. Let's deal, deal with that one, and then we'll go back, okay? Clear the queue, we're back. So the debate here is, and, and anything's on the table, but right now, it shows ten new officers coming in in fall of this year. The green shows seven coming in in fall of this year. I had a chat with Mr. Backen early this morning on this one, which was way to go, and I think he's mentioned it. From the superintendent, having ten, he can deploy quicker all at once, it will, is, will assist him greater than having a few now and a few later. But this is up to council. So the only way we can deal with this is if there's an amendment. So Mr. Backen, do you have any comments? Now that we're back, just to refresh, I know you've had conversations with, with Superintendent Power.
Just very briefly, Your Worship, it was really from his last presentation and his interpretation of council's direction with some of the concerns they were experiencing with property crimes. He was envisioning trying to develop or deploy a, a process that would make a bigger impact. And his only comment really was that, well, ten will have a bigger impact than the seven coming out of the gate. And you can begin to imagine in terms of that's approximately one officer per shift. So it, it is, is something that council should be informed of as they go forward.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Long?
Yeah, so I mean, I think it's important that we get that from the, from the chief, because, I mean, we can make all kinds of decisions here, but he's the, the chap on the street. But the other factor, I think, is, was mentioned before. If we ask for ten, we may only get five, right? So if you ask for seven, you may only get three. So, I mean, that, that is always, in fact, we're counting on that to be contributing to this RCMP reserve. We're counting on not getting a full, full deployment. So I, I think it's better to, to shoot high, because he won't get the ten.
We will, we will get what we ask for eventually, but you're right, they will come in.
It'll, it'll be much later, so, so that bump would be even more diluted, Your Worship, if, if we knock it down to seven. But how come there's the difference then between the green and the blue on that two eleven?
Uh, just, there's no, no accompanying transfer to the RCMP reserve in the green version. It's just the, this is just a seven officers hired October first.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Whitmarsh?
Yeah, so as we were talking earlier on the, the different models, and, and I can certainly see merits on, on both. You know, the, the suggestion that I made in the seven was seven, starting this year in October, which is the three hundred and six thousand here, and then beginning in next year's budget to do, to put money aside every year, every year into a reserve fund, similar to, to Counsel Woodward's proposal of the seven fifty. So the amount put in each year was the same.
Yeah.
There's no change in that. It is annualizing it and putting it into, contributing to it. The seven for me was, was obviously less than ten, and it was designed to be something that was a little bit more affordable. And because we're going at seven, there wasn't the need, in, in my opinion, for this year to top it up into our reserve, because we would continue with seven fifty next year anyways. So that, that makes the two first models here exactly the same in terms of the seven fifty. The other, the other idea was that we would then be putting money into reserve and building up the reserve ahead of time to pay for the officers ahead of time, as opposed to getting them and then going into the red for a few years, and then coming out of it back into the green. We would be actually putting money into reserve of the seven fifty, needing to cover seven officers in the first year, not having any new ones in second year, and then in the third year, which is only actually gonna be fifteen months later because of the October start and then the January start. It would allow us to have fourteen officers, which the plan, other plan calls for fifteen. So the difference in officers in a two-year period is only one officer. And, and yet, it does allow us to start off with spending less money for this year and killing, building the same reserve. The other point I think that was different is, it, it does say on there that my, my model suggesting a zero, zero police after that, that's not actually what I suggested. It, it's just that I only worked through the first fourteen officers. I think at that point, we would put a plan in place of what it does require on an annual basis, so it. basis. So it could be two, 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 or two, three, two. None of that was considered. I was just looking at the first 14 officers as opposed to the first 15 and they would come in the same timeframe, but allow us to just, uh, slow it down in the year one.
Right.
And, and I'm not totally sure what, uh, you know, when we talk about a great impact and, um, the difference between seven and 10, when was the last time we hired seven officers in one year? I think that was probably quite a long time ago, maybe never. So to me, seven and 10 could be, uh, they're both impacts. Um, if we really want a big impact, maybe we need to do more than 10. But, uh, you know, whatever that number is, I'm, I can live with, but it was meant to try and manage the budget and, and not jump so fast, uh, but yet in the same time period having 14 versus 15.
Thank you. So I'm going to go through the speaker's list, um, once and then if there's an amendment, we'll entertain it after everyone's had a chance to speak to this. Council Ferguson, Davis, and Woodward. So Ferguson?
Yeah, okay, thank you. I, I did want to say that, um, I, I looked at the, you know, we originally were looking at four and that's changed. The staff has looked at, they've incorporated the 10 and the 333 system and I think we have to look at it again, uh, yearly. Uh, I looked at seven and then a couple of years later, another seven. So I'd rather go, uh, with it, with as proposed, a 10 now with a 333 and, uh, fund it that way. So that, that's what makes the most sense right now. Well, that way we're proceeding accordingly and we're making the, making the decision now. So that's my preference. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Council Davis?
No, I just simply wanted to talk about this pop, uh, cop ratio and, um, he wants to keep it under 900, but there was so many 865s, 860s.
He wants to keep it under 900.
But so what, what would that look like? Um, you know, we had 120,000 in the township and we have 160 policemen that comes out to, I forget what, that even come out to, but, um, I'm just wondering, is there room to work there? Uh, well, there's 120,000 people, divide that by.
There's the population there.
Oh, it is.
That's just, I guess.
Yeah, okay, but that's 906. Um, but what would that, what, uh, how many policemen?
These officers.
Like, uh, if he wants to keep it under 900, so let's keep it at 899. Uh, like, by putting 10 more policemen in there, it's going to bring that down even lower, which is good, but is it necessary? Um, just wait a second, hold on. I'm just gonna, do you see what I'm saying? A hundred, if there's 120,000 people, is that right? 100, I should never try to do math on a microphone. 120,000, divide that by 160 policemen, that is 750. How many policemen do we have?
We're not, we're not at that. Uh, the, it says on that line, authorized strength, line number 11. So the basis, we had 144.65, feel sorry for the point six five, but 144.65. And, uh, actual strength is 135.84. So the formula and the population, 131, so 906, does that come from authorized or actual?
Authorized.
Authorized. So we're not even at that. When you, if you, if you calculated the actual strength, we'd, we'd be higher than that. But there's always going to be some off, um, on sick leave or whatever.
Oh, it's unbelievable. The courses and the holidays and everything like that. And it's a 24-hour a day, seven, yeah, okay. No, I just wondered if there was, because, um, uh, what is it? Orange and green and blue. I, I, we're, maybe we should, uh, listen to the, uh, through Mr. Powers, but I should have listened to him a little more. But we're, we're pulling those numbers in and out and I, I'm only a policeman to my children. So I'm, I'm wondering if that's, if, if that's, if that's going to keep him, uh, if that's going to help out. But I mean, a comment like, well, more the better. He didn't, he didn't say that. He said, um, I want to keep it under 900. So I just wondered if there was room to work there.
I think the, um, one of the, uh, numbers that I've heard before is seven, in the 750 range. So you could probably say he would, I, I'm, I'm putting words in his mouth and I don't want to, but I think he would say between 750 and 900 would probably be the range he'd want to be in.
Yeah, yeah. I can remember when we put some, uh, when we put some more, when we put firemen on, oh, it was a big deal. And we only put on so many, right? But, okay, thank you.
Just a quick comment, this is because this here, a quick comment on the staffing. So, uh, it depends on where Superintendent Powers wants to deploy the 10 additional strength that, that would come on, on board. But if it went to patrol or general duties, um, I think they run two 12-hour shifts, so that's two per shift with those on day off, that's eight right there. Then you have, uh, some that are on courses and that sort of thing, so. And you may have ideas to deploy them into other areas such as traffic or general investigation and that kind of thing. So hard for us to, to manage the, the way it's, the way I deploys it, but if you just want to have two extra officers on the street for the entire township, that's eight right there, not counting those are off on courses and that sort of thing. Just a, just a comment on that. Council Woodward?
Yeah, just wanted to add, maybe there, I mean, I think Council Davis appreciated those comments. I think that, uh, you know, the, the meetings, uh, some of the comments that I heard and some of the information that I, that I learned was that, uh, the 10 will make a pretty solid impact rather than this drip, drip, drip scenario. And if you get seven, like you said, what kind of impact does that really have on the shift? And I think I would have gone for a larger number if I could have made the numbers work. And I thought 10 was kind of the, the compromise number to, to do a big catch-up and make a statement to the community that we're going to fund these, this need in the community, which I hear about second and third, all the time, top three crime roads and development. So I think that we really need to catch up with some of the, the growth that we've, uh, we've, uh, approved and committed to. And then sort of to maybe, you know, improve that communication with our superintendent to, to see how those resources are going to be used to address community concerns. So I'm going to ask council really to, to leave this where it is. And I think one of the reasons too is because of that additional, uh, 250 that's been, been approved by council from the DCC program this year, um, which Whitmar, Council Whitmarsh proposed and has gotten, has actually really helped with keeping the number at 10. Uh, in regards to where we are now, we can see where we are now, we're at 4.05, largely because of that amendment. Um, and I think that because of that amendment, we can really look at leaving it at the 10 and council can, can really make a bold statement in that regard. So when I first got the proposal, it, it felt like fewer officers for the same cost, um, because of the, the 300 and deferring the annualization of the full, the remainder into the next year's budget, which I calculated at trying to find point seven percent next year for seven versus a similar number to get the 10, uh, today. So as I said, it felt like, uh, fewer officers for the same cost. And so I would like to ask council to leave it where it is based upon, uh, the previous vote that went against me, uh, to, to draw more from the DCC program this year. Thanks.
Council Kunst?
Yeah, um, so if we, uh, don't get all 10 officers, but we're actually funding those 10 officers, what happens to that, that fund?
So that, that is, uh, that's called surplus, um, in the year and half of it goes into the RCMP reserve and then half of it falls into the, just the general reserve and it's, it becomes available to fund capital.
Okay.
It's been about 1.5 on both sides of that leisure, ledger over the last few years. It's been 1.5 that goes into the RCMP reserve and about 1.5 that goes into general surplus.
Okay, thank you.
And if the city of Surrey gets their police department, this will fill up real fast.
That's true, yeah.
Council Richter?
Yeah, well, just to follow up on that, um, why would we put it into general surplus to buy capital with? Why wouldn't we put the whole amount that's not being funded into the police reserve? Because we know we're going to have to fund it in the future.
Council could definitely do that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, split.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, so.
I wanted to separate by law discussion from RCMP, so if you could come back to the by law discussion separately?
Yeah, we're going to do RCMP. We're going to vote on this, so.
They're in the same category.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, I've got Council Long and then I think Council Whitmarsh wants to maybe make an amendment or not, I'm not sure, but Council Long, just a follow up question.
I want to go back to the, to the, so the surplus, I thought the surplus went into the capital, RCMP capital fund.
Half of it does, 50%.
The other half just goes into the general?
Yes.
Yeah, I don't know if I like that. I mean, why would, perhaps it would be good to put that into bylaws and to other, some other kind of protective services, you know, so there's a thought there. Um, the, the graph that you showed us or the, the, um, formula that, that talked about the, the cop to pop, yeah, can, can we not, so the actual strength is really the one that we should be worried about because we can, we can do it all we want and authorize and we're just creating surpluses and so forth because we can't get the officers, although uh, the, the mayor's going to grab a bunch of the guys from, or folks from Surrey. But could we put another line down there? So you've got pop to cop, uh, authorized, which is what the red line is, and can we not put a line below that's the actual strength? Because that's the one that we really want to see. That's the one, that, that's the, that's feet to the street, isn't it? And, and I think I'm trying to follow up on what Council Davis is saying. It, you know, where does that number hit us? Because if we, and now you're saying something, not that you're changing anything, but keeping it under 900 was critical, that's why you've got it in red. But you're also saying it should, uh, it should be maybe under 800, if you're saying that the, uh, if, if the, if the superintendent is saying 750 is more reasonable. Um, but anyway, I think by seeing that number would, would, would help me what the actual one is.
Maybe I can just talk a little bit about the, the pop to cop or cop to pop ratio. It really varies city to city. Now, the city of Vancouver, you'll see, um, a, a lower number there because of the nature of the city where a lot of people are coming into the city during the day and, and for work. Their population grows nighttime with all the nightlife, it grows, um, they have to have a different ratio, more calls for service. Township of Atlantic, the ratio could maybe a little bit closer to 900 rather than 750 because of the nature of the type of calls. So I think, uh, it's not just one factor and we can't com, you know, you know, so I'm just saying it, just to be cautious.
I hear, and that's good, but now look what's happening here. We, we thought we were way in the green, but the actual strength is not, is still going to be.
That's, that's right. So, so it's, it's a.
We may need to more than 10.
But it's a, it's a, we're heading in the right direction in a way when you add them. But it, it's always that, um, how many police officers to the population and it varies with the type of, uh.
It was a lot sweeter a minute ago, now it's kind of a sour spot, isn't it? Thanks.
In Mayberry, they only have two and, uh.
The actual technical calculation is this, is that one there.
Okay, so, um, Council Whitmarsh?
Yeah, so, um. I appreciate all the feedback. Uh, at this, at, at this juncture, I'm not going to make a, an amendment motion, but, um, as we go through the additional, uh, parts of the budget and there are some other areas of concern, I do think this is one area that we may need to come back to, to address, to address some other areas. So at this point, I'm, I'm happy to leave it at 10, um, recognizing we may come back.
Yeah, thank you. And also to remind, this is going out to the public. We'd come back, we can, we can hear from the public on, on their views on this too and then that'll, that'll help inform our decision-making too. All right.
Can I just make a quick comment?
Quick comment and then we'll move on.
This is going to be way different because of Surrey. Because it's, it's been historic that we've never had them because you have to get officers from all over the country.
And they'll be trained.
But is there going to, there is going to be a significant change, isn't there, with that many officers possibly on the loose?
Possibly, yeah. Depends what happens with that, but they, they'll have to be redeployed.
It may not even be that. I mean, might meet the cop to pop better, but we may not have so much in the reserve.
I, I should mention the reserve, that the half that does go to the general surplus has been part of what we rely upon to do capital, to get the capital program done. So that's.
And, yeah, on the, yeah, on that, comment on the reserves, uh, it is, uh, tax dollars, taxpayers' dollars that go in, they don't all get spent, so it is fair to put it to, um, capital in the next year because if we didn't, you're still going to have to get that dollar out of the taxpayer the next year. So it's just basically rather than, uh, you know, it's, it's a way of giving it back, but it, it, it has to go someplace. So these are taxpayer dollars that didn't get spent, so they go back. And, and council has a discretion on how they want to do it, but it does help the future year tax increases. Okay, that clears that off, so I think we're, we're good there. Let's go into the, so are we okay on the, on, so I just want to, does anybody have any discussion on 38, 39 transfer? I think we're okay with all that right now. Uh, we move on to the bylaws? Okay, so move on to bylaws. Council Woodward?
Yeah, so I'm going to, I'm going to reiterate some of that here, just in the effort of trying to compromise. I really wanted to add three bylaw officers. I, and I know, it's just a number that was, that seemed achievable and, and again, starting to, to increase bylaw enforcement capacity to consider some additional initiatives given some of the feedback we've been hearing this year around bylaw enforcement not being where some would like it to be and, and maybe trying to consider some other options beside 100% complaint-driven. Um, so I think this would be one, too, where I would reserve the right to maybe come back based upon some other initiatives. I would like to, to see that additional one that was removed in the blue, um, come back, but again, understanding that, that maybe council's happy with the two and just to see where we are closer to the end of the process. You can see that, that additional officer this year is point 06. So we're not, you know, we're not really looking, because it's annualized at 75% now. And I don't, can I, can I confirm to you that the 136 is also annualized at the 75%?
That's two officers, yeah.
Yeah, annualized, so that, this is again, some capacity that we could look at, at building this year. Um, but I'll leave it there for now. I won't propose that it come back at this point, but again, similar to Council Whitmarsh, would have preferred the three, but willing to live with the two. Thank you.
Thank you. Just, just a quick question on the process, uh, when we go for, when we go to the public. Uh, I know you would do a great job of explaining things, so when it comes to police officers, 10 police officers with cost and what do you think of it? Do you give options like, when it comes to bylaw officers, this is two, do you give options to the public if they want to see three or they want to see less or?
We usually just show them what is included.
Just show them what's included and they can, and they can make comments if they feel they should be more. Okay, great, thanks. Council Richter?
Yeah, um, I support the two bylaws.
Yeah, um, I support the two bylaws. I would like to see three, but I don't think we need a senior bylaw, so I'm okay with the two bylaws for now. Um, but I wanted to go back to the transfer to RCMP reserve and wondering why in the one scenario, it's three eleven two fifty and in the blue scenario, it's two eleven two fifty.
Yeah, good question.
Just, uh, looking at whether or not the seven fifty versus the six fifty could keep us in the, in the green, as it were, in the pop to cop ratio. And I think both of them.
There's an impact to the bottom line in the budget, so I think Ms. Sinclair's has taken, reduce it and she's comfortable that that still carries through, uh, and doesn't, uh, we don't run into trouble. Is that correct?
It does provide a bit of a hundred thousand dollar offset for some of the other areas that are coming in maybe higher than.
Okay, and if we wanted to have a motion on putting all of the, um, unfilled position money into that RCMP reserve, is now the point that we do it or do we do it afterwards and what's the impact of doing that?
Well, that won't change this. It's just what we do with the, at the end of the year, when the superintendent says, well, because of the, as we saw, the number difference, actual strength to authorize strength, we, we're paying to authorize strength, is that correct? Our budget.
Our budget is to authorize strength, yeah.
And at the end of the year, um, he, the actual strength is below, then that money has to come back into someplace. So it won't change this budget, it'll just change the reserve. And we have that discretion as council to change it at any time, but right now, the money is not disappearing, it's going into projects that also don't fit the, you know, in one way, don't fit RCMP, actual protective services, but we do a lot of projects that do road improvements, so we, we get money, uh, from TransLink, major road improvements and ICBC where we, we do some initiatives which provide, um, safety, uh, for drivers and reduce accidents, which in effect reduces our policing costs if we can do that. So, so in a way, it is used for it, but Mr. Backen, maybe you can elaborate a little bit more, because we, we do use that money prudently for, for initiatives.
You've described it while your worship. It started back many years ago when it was first set up. It was, uh, found to be that a number, a large amount of funds were flowing into it, therefore not being used for community purposes. So there was a policy changed by council in that era that then said, well, put fifty percent to other matters and fifty percent to the reserve. Thus left the reserve at where it is now, which is relatively well-funded. The impact of it would simply be that there would be less than the general surplus funds to do effectively capital projects, and those capital projects often do include road projects or, or crosswalks or, or lights or those sorts of things.
Thanks. Okay. Any other discussion on, on this, um, section? Okay, so we'll move up back to where we left off and we'll just keep chipping away at it. So programs and contract increases, parks, roads, stormwater facilities, uh, does anybody have any concerns, I think, on any of the four? We can have a discussion if there's any changes on the four, on any of those, pretty much across the board. Okay, so we move on to infrastructure and, uh, infrastructure again, uh, now it looks like it's, there are some variations there, uh, does, we can go, I'll just open it up for anything on infrastructure.
Can I see the full white column? We've got some notes.
Sure, let's just move over the white column.
I think it's just identifying what those were that were being removed.
Okay, are we, we're good. Okay, I don't see anything on that. Uh, 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 are we back on infrastructure? I've got Council Woodward, infrastructure?
I have questions before comments, so we wait for others to comment, but just wanna clarify, the unfunded climate, now I want, I wanna make it clear, because I think we are gonna have some, some disagreements here. So you went from the four seventy five to the eight hundred to nine hundred, so you went further than the proposed amendment by Council Whitmarsh.
That's correct, yeah, that's correct, because, because we didn't take out the four and the two.
I didn't take out the, the two, correct.
And, but left the others, uh, not quite as, uh, robust.
So you, so you just even, I'm trying to, I don't, I could, I don't have any time with this ahead of time, so the three hundred, three twenty five, two hundred and three fifty in the orange, did, did that equal out two twenty five times four?
I don't believe so.
Oh, that's higher.
Trying to find out where you came, how these numbers came to be.
Five fifty.
Yeah, I just, I was just, yeah.
Million seventy five.
Just, it was, it was more built off of these numbers than it was.
What I saw, Council Whitmarsh and I are really only about three hundred thousand apart, so, but now you, the blue with those other items coming back, we're now, we're now nine hundred versus four seventy five.
And you could totally pick one of, one of those two and, and I could.
And, and I understand that you're just trying to give us a baseline and, and get us moving, which I appreciate, but I'm just trying to understand the logic that I would be facing for why they got zeroed out.
Just because I'm here representing what was submitted and so I didn't want to, I didn't wanna unfund something that was submitted as within funding envelopes, but, but council has absolutely.
Because both Council Whitmarsh and I seem to be in agreement on that, those two line items. So if we put those, uh, back, I guess we would need an amendment for that and maybe that was what Council Richter was sort of alluding to.
Um, we, we could look at putting it back and just, just to see.
If both Council Whitmarsh and I are in agreement, we could do a friendly amendment to put them back and see what that looks like?
No such thing.
There's no such thing as a friendly amendment?
We'll do it by official votes, yeah, so, but I, I, because we're not, we have, we have a motion on the floor that shows this, so it has to be real amendment, just to keep things.
I'd like to make a real amendment that both Council Whitmarshes and I changes, which we agreed upon, are put back into the blue and then we have a look at what that looks like. Okay, those original cuts of four hundred and two hundred are put back into the blue. I'll move that amendment.
Yeah, I'm not gonna take it yet, because I have a speaker's list, we'll just get through, but if you wanna, just for laughs and giggles, put the numbers in, the nigg, the minus four hundred, minus two hundred, just see what it looks like, then I'm gonna, we'll take it out, we'll, I'm gonna get through the speaker's list, but it gives an idea of what, what we're talking about. So if you roll it down again, so it went from four, it's three point six, yeah, it drops it down, so, okay, so, so we won't do this amendment yet.
So now, if I have actually some more questions, because now I'm more confused, if you scroll back up, please.
Okay, yeah.
So, the original proposal, uh, because Council Whitmarsh was, was adding, I think his intent was to add more funding to infrastructure, um, but then the four hundred, three hundred, four hundred, three hundred went to, you know, that, which we were sort of trying to compromise on, I guess, in writing, all got changed to two twenty five with those other projects, which I proposed to unfund now back in. Um, now we're down to three hundred, which I don't believe either one of us wants. I mean, I was, so I think we do have some work here to do, Mr. Whitmarsh.
That's fine. Okay, so I'm gonna go through the speaker's list and then if there are any amendments, you can take that out again, just, I just wanted to see what the difference was and then we'll, we'll keep it. There we go. Council Whitmarsh?
Yeah, I guess my questions are around, um, the same thing and so I'm, I, um, you know, my, my attempt was to put a bit more back into infrastructure. I felt those are areas that we uh, have to be really careful on as we think forward in the future and that to reduce them is a real problem, so that was why I, I made those adjustments. But I'm wondering on the two twenty five and, and keeping the, the climate and, and tech into it, is that, uh, has there been conversations that have sort of happened with staff in the last two days that has sort of, um, come up with that, you know, the climate initiative or the IT is actually really important and we need these things in here and the other ones are a little bit less important and so we could sacrifice in those areas? Like, is that sort of based on those kind of conversations with, with staff or is that just sort of a, another scenario to look at?
I think the, the climate one was just, um, the, there, there have, I have received quite a few comments about the climate program and about, do we wanna cut that, do we wanna, uh, or keep, keep it where it is? So that's just hearing, hearing that, those comments and without the Council Arneson here, she, she'd probably speak to that better than I. And then the, um, info, info technology, that's just an area that's not a lar, it's not a very large contribution to capital, it's six hundred ninety three thousand dollars and it, um, it handles all the PC replacements and equipment to do with technology across the township and that manager hasn't asked for increases to that, as long as I've been here, I don't think, I don't think there's been an increase to that. So I just felt like.
Karen, as a correction, he has asked for increases, but we've held the line on those, so he's at a. To the, so the manager, I'll try that again. The manager is actually continually asked for in, more resources for the IT sector, uh, particularly the hardware and the licensing components. So as a consequence, um, they were going to come forward this year with it, but because of the challenges, they did not. So what this will do is effectively delay, um, perhaps beyond their critical, or their, their designated life, some of the servers and some of those things for an extra year. That would probably have the most significant impact in terms of, of the two topic, topics, climate change and this. The climate change is certainly important, but it's kind of a new service area or an extension. This is a reduction to our existing coordinates, which is causing, causing the concern of the IT.
Right, okay, so I think, I think that's helpful. I, you know, I'm, I'm certainly not, um, you know, the expert on any one of these categories and what the exact amount should be. So, you know, I, I think it would be helpful for us to have what number in each of those is, is, is really important from a staff perspective as we look forward into this next budget. How much should we increase each of those, uh, contributions to capital, each of those areas? Um, the two twenty five are sort of round numbers, obviously, they're, I mean, I'm sure not all staff recommend the exact same number. Um, and, and I can appreciate the IT, uh, fund, it's not a significant amount, so, you know, for my num, the numbers that I've suggested, I don't mind them adjusting slightly, but I, I, um, I, I do think that the, you know, somewhere in that seven or eight hundred range is probably where we need to be. I wouldn't go probably too much higher than that and so on, so. That's enough for now.
Okay, thanks. Council Richter?
Um, yeah, so going back to the, uh, unfunded climate thing, this sheet of paper that came out, when you add everything on that paper up, it comes to four point nine million that we're putting into climate initiatives this year. Um, if we take that four hundred thousand out, how does it affect the four point nine million?
So I don't believe all four point nine million is in the budget this year. It's, it's one million fifty five thousand across operating and capital. That's just meant to give, um, a picture of where we're going with climate change, it, sort of holistically, over the next, what is it, three to five years?
So why are we even printing this up if we're not putting four point nine million?
Um, Council, Council Arneson asked for a snapshot of the climate program and what it looked like in its entirety, so that was available, so we brought that in to the last meeting.
Okay, um, well, I can support removing that this year because I think there are other projects that are being funded. And, um, yeah, I kind of agree with both Council Woodward and Council Whitmarsh that this year being the year it is, this might be something we need to take off the plate. But the other question that I did have was the additional, um, things that have been asked for in terms of road safety, for example, um, two, uh, two fortieth and fifty sixth, Robertson and two forty eighth and, uh, um, two seventy second and twenty eighth. If we left those monies in, could we dedicate them or direct them towards those, uh, specific road safety improvements?
I think in the capital part of this presentation, um, that, that question would be answered, if, if I can defer to that capital section.
All right, well, I agree with putting it, taking it out then, the six hundred.
Council Long?
I think we're trying to get to this line thirty two. We need to find a compromise somewhere between the green and the, and the orange. So it'd be nice if we could all have a, a toy to play with here, but, uh, you had a couple of numbers that you put in there, Worship, so we could just keep fiddling with those numbers until we come up with something that might bring us down on the bottom line, maybe, you know, closer to four percent. So I had, I had some suggestions. Um, do you wanna, can we play with each scenario? So that would, I would make three fifty on, on line twenty six, two fifty on the next one.
Just for, just for illustration.
Three hundred on the next one and three twenty five on the next one. And then what do you need to put in here? Holy cow. So now you're gonna, you gotta, you've gotta come down, so you suggested four hundred, what if we go down, what, what would those two reductions need to be to get us down to where we need to be is the question, I guess.
Uh, it depends where you feel we need to be, so it, it could be a minus, do minus three hundred, minus one hundred, see what that looks like. It's four hundred thousand, it'll take it down to nine twenty five, so we're a little higher than what, um.
Yeah, look at that, there's a, there's a number that might be.
Okay, well.
Might be, that's way less than nine hundred, isn't it? But I'd like to take a picture of that, hang on a second.
Okay, we'll, and take a picture and then we'll undo it all and, uh, go back to. Yes, you will, yeah. So it's just, it's just, uh, it's for discussion, so, okay, um, Council Ferguson?
Yeah, I think, I think that moving some things around is a good idea between the, um, between the orange and the green again, is, is, you know, whether there's the, um, I think parks is always kind of making somewhat important, so I mean, I, I would like to see maybe the parks go up to maybe four hundred uh, in the middle there or whatever and the, um, store, now the stormwater, there was, there was the reason, the difference between the two hundred and four hundred, there was, was there some major project that we really wanted to deal with or was something that we could pass over, if I may, to another year? I'm looking at par, uh, stormwater twenty eight.
So, um, in the gray that I just popped open there, that's what staff had asked for.
Okay, so I would in the, in the green, I would make that, uh, that four hundred, uh, two twenty five. Did you get my first one?
Sorry, nope. Parks, uh.
Parks up.
Four hundred?
Yes. And that one up to, um, and that one down, the other one down from four hundred to two twenty five, that's, what did I say, the stormwater?
Down roads right now, stormwater is down from five hundred to two twenty five.
Yeah. And of course, the, the four hundred and the two hundred below, that means twenty three, thirty one and thirty and thirty one, remaining four hundred and two hundred. Oh man, I tell you, I came up with the same, oh, I think you must have missed one. Maybe we can make the, uh, roads three hundred the same as, I would never like to see my same.
That's, that's reasonable.
You wanna?
Where are we now? Okay, there you are.
Yeah, this is gonna be a tough one. Really is, you know, really wanna hear, well, if, if you're good with that, Council Ferguson, I'll move on, there's a speaker's list and we'll.
Okay.
If you're good with that, okay, you saw what it looked like, we can undo it all, go back to where it was, okay? Council Kuntz?
Okay, so I'm not gonna give you all the things that I want, because that would be a lot of fun, but a waste of time. Um, so can I just ask a question about roads and unfunded climate, if that's just a typo or what, what is, what is the, is it a climate road?
So that, that four hundred thousand dollar budget is, um, it's, it's a kind of a budget that will encompass many different areas of the township. But in the first year, when they had it in the budget, they had it in roads, because a lot of the initiatives were related to roads. Uh, it's very possible that in the second year, it could be facilities or, or something else or storm, but right now significantly it's roads.
Okay, thank you.
Council Davis?
Um, I'm, I'm concerned that we're moving numbers around and I know it's really easy to move mum, numbers around, uh, because this is, I guess this is the time to do it, but without knowing the, uh, ramifications of what we're doing can, is kind of bothering me, like, um, are we moving, are we moving numbers around, uh, between orange and green just because we wanna try to make blue better? Like, is it really what we should be doing? We've got a lot of staff, we've got some good ideas here, but, uh, and I guess we can't get over that right now. I guess I'm being a bit cheeky, but I'm worried by us saying, well, let's take a look, okay, go down to the bottom, wow, there we go, okay. What does that, what's that going to mean?
So that's, that's a great question and what, what it will mean, when we get down to the capital section, um, I've got some formulas that show based on some of these changes that we're making to these areas that do impact capital, it'll show how much is available to fund some of the issues that have come up as questions. Some of the items that Council, uh, Richter listed that she wants to know about, that I suggested, can we defer that to the capital discussion? So we will see the direct impact of that when we get to that capital section.
I guess is if we're gonna move the numbers, we need to kind of look a little deeper and say, well, what will that actually look like?
And we can pop back up, like, if we get down there and we're short a hundred thousand dollars on something that's really important, we could pop back up here and add it and then.
Okay, thank you.
The fluidity of it.
Worship, hearing what Council Davis said, perhaps just a, a clarification, I guess, is, might, may be helpful. Uh, in those two categories, the, um, the ones where we're taking the four hundred and the two hundred away, we're trying to make the distinction between either, uh, the extension or creation of new programs, which in a tight budget year maybe wish to be deferred, to a reduction, I guess, in our existing capacity, much like pavement, where we plan on growing and, and then trying to actually maintain those expenditure levels. The IT one certainly can be accommodated, but I think it's, as was requested, perhaps best to understand it more fully in terms of what that implies. Mr. Sheetmaker's here, so perhaps we could take a moment and just have him give an outline of what it is, so it's an informed decision, because that might be helpful. Because I think there is something in these numbers and we certainly have to reserve something for our prior year surplus for some of the capital projects were mentioned, but I think we wanna make sure we understand all the components, Mr. Sheetmaker.
Thank you for that and that was, before he speaks, that was my question is, how do these numbers, if we change these numbers from what, and we go back to the gray, what, what was original from the staff, how does that impact our future? And I'm really concerned.
Yeah.
By taking these down, um, sure, we're gonna save some tax at the bottom, but we're, we're gonna end up paying for it later. And I'm really concerned that if we, if we, um, take away, uh, operating to capital, that we're gonna end up in a worse position in future years and, and some council will have to make those decisions to top it up, so. I'm a little concerned, but maybe, and that's, I, I think the discussion from, it's a Sheetmaker will help in, in what effect it is to take two hundred thousand dollars out of that area.
Okay, great, thank you, your worship. Um, yeah, I've, I've had some, some discussions with staff about what the impact of this would be, um, and there's a number of, of, uh, immediate impacts, uh, couple of which are, we would, we would immediately put on pause a couple of ongoing projects, uh, one in particular, um, our records management project, which is, which is important from a, from a document, well, from a document management perspective, right, and making sure that we're, uh, we're retaining documents and disposing of documents and we're able to find documents that we have, uh, within our environment. Um, the second piece is, is more of a discussion around risk, uh, you know, in the context of asset management, uh, the longer we have some of these assets in, in use, if we're not replacing them at an appropriate time, there's, there's a higher, higher probability of risk and, 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 and should, should some of those assets fail, then they actually impact staff's ability to deliver services. Um, that could be a front counter person because their, you know, their PC isn't working or, or obviously something much more systemic like, uh, you know, email system goes down or, uh, website, uh, doesn't work, those, those sorts of things, right? So, um, we, uh, as Mr. Backen had noted, uh, the IT department, I think, is already fairly aggressive um, with, uh, with our management of our assets and that, you know, there's recommended, uh, replacement schedules for PCs, for servers, for network switches, uh, security controls and, and items such as that. Um, you know, we typically try to extend those as long as we feel comfortable doing that, um, you know, sort of balancing that, uh, that risk as far as, uh, you know, uh, making that, that expenditure to replace it versus, you know, uh, versus failure. Um, so, you know, um, yeah, it's, like I said, we can, we can, we can certainly, uh, look at the, the two hundred thousand dollar reduction, but that just means that we're kind of stretching some of those assets a little bit, um, farther than we're, we're likely comfortable doing, so.
I don't wanna lose my mind.
No, no, just, yeah, quick question for Mr.
Yeah, 'cause I was, of course, the, the one that, that cut it, so I gotta try to, try to understand it a bit more. Um, and of course, all I have are capital sheets, right? I don't have a deeper understanding, so I think it's helpful prior to a decision, but I, I wanna highlight, so, um, I was actually quite, quite, I thought I was thoughtful in that there, the funding request is six ninety three, so you still have the five hundred additional funding to work with. Is that, is that accurate?
But again, uh, this is a contribution to capital, so, so, uh, it's a fixed amount that we always sort of, uh, leverage and we plan around having every year. So this isn't new funding, this is the same funding envelope that we've had for the last decade essentially. Um, so, so by reducing that, I mean, it's, it's, it kind of messes up some of our replacement schedules and, and things like that, so.
Yeah, because it's a reduction, uh, what's, because in the budget, uh, when you, when they show nothing there, that's existing, what's already in the budget to come in, you know, there's already a set amount from previous years that's going in. By reducing it, uh, we're not putting in this year and you're kind of counting on that to do some of the work we need to do. It's, it's not, okay.
And so I did label it staff determined, so I didn't wanna try to dig in there and figure out which projects were high priority, but yes, no, I did make the assumption that, that some of those assets could be, could be stretched and if council, uh, well, I see they're out of the blue anyway, so maybe there'll be no amendment coming to, uh, to restore that original cut, but thank you.
Sure, yeah, you're, you're, you're next anyway, but I, I had my question, so thank you for that, because that helps. Um, I'm really concerned about, um, damaging or, you know, council in the future is gonna have these really tough decisions, because now we're gonna spend more, because, or through the year, things are gonna crash and we have to deal with it. Also, uh, Mr. Backen, when it gets to roads, facilities, stormwater, parks, that's a huge reduction, um, two twenty five across the board from what, what was requested by staff and is that. Yeah, if we can go back to the gray column, I mean, we're looking at the orange and, and the green, but really it's, it's the gray and is requested by staff and it's consistent with prior years, uh, when we had these, these amounts in there. Uh, and sure, we can maybe drop a little here and there, but some of them are like, like roads is, is in half and we've been consistently putting in five hundred thousand dollars in that. And we have a huge network of roads here that need, need work, so maybe you can comment on the impact by us as council and certainly we can do it, dropping it so much. I mean, sometimes we have to bite the bullet and add the point six seven percent to, you know, increase it another point six seven, just to maintain our assets or otherwise we'll be in trouble later, so. Can you comment on that?
So Karen, just to confirm, those are in. So Karen, just to confirm, those are increases or additions to the existing envelopes, correct?
Yeah, um...
So, so just to comment on that, do you happen to know what the existing envelope is for, say, roads?
You know, and if staff is comfortable with this, I am too, but I'm just...
There's a point, your worship, you see, 'cause I think I understand some of the confusion, uh, we can use this as the one example, uh, if we can be, just give us a moment, uh, 'cause they do vary, what, what we're doing is we're reducing our rate of increases, I guess, is what I mean, that's what I'm trying to say. So that does have an impact on it, and that, that's something that's been done before. Whereas with the IT, there is no base amount, it's zero, and goes to six and a quarter every year, uh, sorry, to six, the, the two hundred, uh, what was the number for IT, sorry?
Six ninety-three annually.
So six ninety-three annually, so it goes, resets to zero every year, there's not a base we're adding to, it's actually a flat amount to spend across the organization. Uh, that's for all purposes, so that, that's a bit of a distinction, but back to the roads then.
Yeah, the roads is two point three million dollars is what's in the base, and it's part of what we talked about, is eight point nine million as being that base contribution to capital, so the road portion of that is two point three.
Okay, so we're just reducing the increase this year, um, and so it just draws out the point, like, you said, roads wanna get to a certain level, was it eight, eight million or something?
Uh, um, where are we here?
And so they wanna, you know, we wanna get to that level, and we're slowly building that up.
Eight million, yeah, eight million.
Yeah, eight million, so we're not quite there yet, this just reduces that, but it still adds something to it, so it's not gonna impact, uh, as much this year's operating or capital budget for roads.
Right, and, and I wanted to say too, the reason these have come down, all six of these have come down to two twenty-five, was just to, um, just to make it not, uh, because I wasn't showing the minus four and the minus two, so I just kinda spread it out across there, I know, not, not perfectly, but that was the goal there, was just to, uh, leave the six ninety-three intact, and, and then the four hundred can be debated, it can all be debated, um, but that was, that was why that came down, was just to try and not pull those reductions, 'cause those, those two reductions are a reduction of the eight point nine, so they're reductions of money that staff has already allocated to projects, whereas these other items are, are, um, reductions of increases that have not yet been a portion to projects.
That helps, that helps, so, 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 um, what we see here, something's been vetted through staff, through Mr. Backen, and it's something that we can, that's workable, I, I am concerned about taking away from, um, the, uh, the might, you know, the four hundred and the two hundred, and leaving that. The way it, it shows, I'm comfortable with, but...
Your worship, just to clarify, again, the, certainly concerned about climate change, that's not the point, but the four hundred is effectively new things.
Okay, well, it's new, okay.
So it's new, um, it, it, now, it's, it's been referenced, there's a million dollars originally projected, so, but that's a bit different, because that's creating a new category. Here, we're taking from an existing category and reducing, and as a perspective then, and this is a very bad example, but I have to use it, six hundred thousand dollars is effectively six hundred one thousand dollar computers, in that example. Uh, for an organization our size, we certainly wouldn't be doing that, there's much more to it, but it puts in a bit of perspective, 'cause of the IT cost per employee for the things we're doing versus, uh, filing emails, communications, all of those things, 'cause they all fit into that category.
Okay, so what you're saying is the IT fund is important to leave that, the way it is at zero, but we can play a little bit with it.
Just a distinction, that it's actually a reduction from an existing program, not the addition or creation of a new program.
That's right, whereas the climate one is a creation of a new program, so, so, okay, that helps to understand, thank you. Okay, so, uh, Cons, we're gonna start, since the people that wanna speak a second time, Cons Woodward.
Yeah, so I think I wanna clarify.
Woodward, Whitmarsh, Richter, Kuntz.
And I would like to try to, to get to an amendment, to try to get us to a point, but before I start, can you go down and show us where we are with the nine hundred versus the four seventy-five and the eight hundred? So we're not trying to compromise between the four seventy-five and the eight hundred anymore, we're trying to find the nine hundred, so, can you show me the business tax versus the residential tax built into that four oh five?
I will probably have to do that on the fly, uh, there's the four oh five.
'Cause I think the way I had it in my spreadsheet, it, every time we modified, the residential would automatically adjust the commercial.
Okay.
Um, but I, I think, 'cause I think if we were at, 'cause I'm trying to understand where we're at, maybe you can just tell me where we're at.
Well, we're at four, four point five overall, so, just speaking in a, a little bit of general terms, um, to not take up time doing, doing the calculations, which I, which I can do, but we're at four point five overall compared to the three point nine seven, so I feel quite confident, um, it's close to the number that you came up with, Cons.
Close to where we were, the two point nine eight.
I feel like it would be pretty close to the numbers that you have here.
And the reason I'm sort of, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm raising this is because I, I'm trying to figure out how you've made up the difference, and I think I've found it. That business, in my spreadsheet, I didn't wanna go over six percent for the mill rate adjustment, and now we're at six and a half, versus where I proposed, where we were, we were trying to keep that business tax below six.
Right.
So, there's some other, there's something in the blue now that I have to try to find, and I don't have time to find it, to try to fa- find out where the business tax went from five percent to six and a half, six percent to six and a half percent.
So this calculation here was based on, um, uh, when, so this is, this is referencing up here, so this calculation was based on when the top part was four point two five. So you, we can throw this out right now, it's not relevant right now, um, but what I would say is, the four point oh five is so close to the three point nine seven, that I feel like this calculation, which is relevant to, to the green, or the calculation here, which is relevant to the orange, we're so close to that, that we could make that work.
Uh, so that six point five two is not calculated, is something wrong with it, or?
Um, it, it's, it's not calculated automatically the way yours was.
Okay, so we can go back up then, so overall, 'cause I think the overall in the orange was three point nine six, something like that.
Very close.
We're very close to where we were, so you can make that adjustment later, because I, I just wanna raise for, you can obviously come to it near the end, but I don't wanna go to public consultation with anything over six percent for business, I just sort of clear on that, maybe council will disagree.
Yeah.
So now, back to where we were? Uh, the nine hundred, yeah. So if we can get that down to the, the, Consor Whitmarsh's eight hundred, would that put us at just under four overall, roughly? So that would be the goal, trying to see what the goal is, and then work back. So the way we've gotten there is we have reduced, so both Consor Whitmarsh and I were trying to put money to, I'm just speaking for myself, and what I interpreted from where you were going was what exactly that was, trying to get more money into roads, facilities, stormwater, and parks, at the expense of the reduction in the IT budget and the cancellation of this transportation climate thing. That be fair, summary?
Yeah.
Okay, so now we know where we are, so now, we could look at leaving the IT budget intact, and I'll get to that in a second, but then we could look at either putting the minus four hundred back, or some portion of that minus back, and then putting more money into other categories, which I believe both Consor Whitmarsh and I were trying to get to, so that would be one option, to look for an amendment.
So, so, let's, let's just, uh, take a look at it.
I'm going somewhere with this, though.
Yeah, okay, I thought we changed the numbers.
Sorry, I'm just trying to go somewhere with this, so we could try to get more money into roads, facilities, storm and parks, and then really get down to debating this climate item, which is a four hundred thousand dollar item. But on the IT thing, I mean, I was sincerely looking at that as, you know, we hear it all the time, cut, 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 right? And we actually don't seem to do a lot of that, and I think we've seen what happens when somebody tries to cut a budget, so I'll take that as a learning exercise. On the transportation item, one of the reasons that I, that I highlighted that, if we can pull up the capital sheet for that, Mr. Mayor, if you're going somewhere with this. Okay, it's at the top, labeled climate, um, it's the capital sheet for the annual climate action strategy implementation fund. So that is a four hundred thousand dollar increase in contribution to capital, specific, this will be permanently added to the operating budget and permanently funded every year?
Well, what's happening is, um, staff is using four hundred thousand dollars of the existing base budget of eight point nine million.
Yeah.
So they're using, they're using that to fund this, this project for four hundred thousand dollars.
And so one of the reasons it drew my attention, and I'll just, we can just debate this and treat, I think we're pretty close here, is, uh, I didn't, I didn't, not dislike it, but I was, it was tweaked by required to commence some projects. Action strategy will provide strategic direction, targets, and actions for adapting to future climate change impacts, and reducing energy consumption and greenhouse gas emissions. So what I did is I did cut this, proposed to cut this, and then directed the money towards some of those capital projects, which I identified had some climate implications. Uh, so I wanted to highlight that for council, if there's some more clarity that we can get to this, because from my sort of point of view, it sounds like some guy in a suit in a Vancouver office drafting some strategy, um, versus fixing something, or changing, or, or funding a capital project that we can see and touch that has climate implications, if that's where I was coming from with that. Um, because it just says some projects related to climate mitigation, I don't know what that is, what's the value of that? And I think that was some of my concern around just climate targets, with no understanding of how we're gonna achieve them, and what the cost is gonna be. So if that explains where I was coming from, is there any value to funding half of it?
I, I think there would be, I'll defer to Harb on that one, um, did you wanna talk to it at all?
What is it? I don't even know what it is, I'm still trying to figure out what it is.
So, this was actually, so we prepared this, this was, uh, a few months ago, and we put forward a fund that we knew, when the climate action strategy comes back to council, that there's gonna be a significant investment required. Over, over the past number of years, the township has done a lot of work in terms of undertaking assessments of our buildings and our infrastructure, and where we need to be more energy efficient, and that was the other fund that we alluded to, which was the Climate Action Renewal Reserve Fund, which we've been tapping into, but the backlog of work that needs to get done there is more significant than four hundred thousand. However, I have seen a proposal that other projects are being funded, like the zoo facility upgrade of the electrical service downstairs, which are important. So I think reducing this wouldn't adversely impact the work that we're doing on climate action. However, the, the operating ask, I would say, is more important, because we can undertake studies and come back forward with more comprehensive plan for council consideration.
Okay, so then, uh, 'cause I think it's important to highlight that for council, that inside the blue, uh, maybe you could review that, or mention that again, that inside the blue is that Walnut Grove aquatic upgrade, and the electrical facility upgrades to move more charging stations within this facility. Was there anything else that I've forgotten that was included in the blue, sort of moving some of this money to tangible climate projects? I wonder, maybe you can review that for council again, Ms. Sinclair.
Yeah, let me get to...
So I think, I mean, I don't know if you wanna look at an amendment right now, but we could look at restore, uh, restoring maybe fifty percent of that cut, uh, and seeing what that looks like, and then some of the additional leftover money in that, in that eight hundred or nine hundred could be added to the other categories.
Yeah, so, so, um, if we, if we did, I'm trying to understand.
We could get some more clarity on something like this next year.
If we took the number thirty, and, yeah, and leave that, leave IT the way, the way it is, the zero, minus two hundred allows another two hundred thousand dollars, and we can, we can then add some back, basically, we can add fifty thousand dollars back in each category, and strengthen some of the, uh...
See the gray?
Yeah, 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 there you go, yeah, so, I'm just trying to capture what we said, so, I, I don't have a problem with the nine hundred thousand, I, I think, you know, we, we, we looked, we found some money in other way, other places, but putting the two hundred back, so, uh, adding, make it easy, make two seventy-five in each of those other ones, or back to nine hundred, so. That increases some of that capital, is that, Mr. Backen, something that, I'm, I'm just concerned we're, we're robbing Peter to pay Paul, and we're gonna have troubles next year, and a year after, and a year after that, so, and, and, um... Yeah. So no, the two hundred, no, we're leaving the IT alone. Uh, this is a scenario, it's, it's not to be the final one, leave it alone because of the, the, yeah, the concerns that Mr. Sheetmaker had, had, uh, laid out, slightly different than the roads on front of climate, where, um, that's a new fund, whereas we're taking, actually, if we do minus two hundred in the IT, we're taking away from IT, we're reducing what they already have, that's, that's the way I understand it, but by taking away two hundred in the climate, we're still adding to it, but we're not taking away from what they have already planned on.
So can I, can I ask one more thing, maybe I'll move the official amendment, and we can see where council debates on it, um, because I would like to get down to Consor Whitmarsh's number of eight hundred, and I'm not too concerned about which category it goes into, and then we're looking at, in a tough budget year, an additional contribution to capital of that nine hundred, which, or eight hundred, which would be permanently in the base budget, is that correct? Yeah, so if we, if you could just put the number at eight hundred for a moment, just by, just however you do it.
And it goes two fifty each, two fifty each.
I'll just put a temporary number here.
Okay.
If you wanna.
'Cause I just wanna see what the number at the bottom is, with that Consor Whitmarsh number of eight hundred.
Yeah.
So now we're back, we're down below the four, right? We're back to where we were in the orange, I think, right?
The orange or the green could work now.
So I think that that is still my ultimate goal, is to get back to the original number in the orange, and we've moved numbers around, based upon input from council and Consor Whitmarsh's suggestions, so if we could, if I could make an amendment to, uh...
Let's see what we're gonna be, so that, take, get rid of that, and now, um, take a look at each one of the, so roads, so we have a hundred thousand to play with, uh, basically.
So just go back to the two fifty as proposed, and or we can play with the categories.
Fifty to each, to see what that looks like, and if there's... Two, two fifty to, to the four, each of the four, is that low?
What you had before, so you had previously.
Two fifty, yeah.
So I would like to move that version of blue for that category, Mr. Mayor, if you're...
No, no, IT. We're not taking money, see, what's happening here, uh, Cons Ferguson, is if we reduce IT, we're taking money away that IT already has in the budget. If we reduce from the, the, the climate, number thirty, we're still, we're actually putting something in, um, you know, or, no, we're, sorry, we're, we're reducing...
Worship, the brackets represent a reduction.
That's right.
The whole number represents an increase.
Yeah.
Uh, a dash represents no change.
Taking less out of what's...
No change, decrease or increase.
Yeah, yeah.
I believe, I'd like to move that version of blue.
Move that amendment, is there a second by Consor Kuntz? So, so on that amendment, I'm gonna start the speaker's list, so who would like to speak to that, or, uh, Consor Whitmarsh?
Yeah, um, you know, I think lots of good things here, I, I, you know, I mean, I guess for me, if, if, if staff looks at the two fifty numbers and, and feels like those numbers meet, can, can work in there, or, I mean, I'm happy for staff to play around with those numbers too. If one area can be a little higher, and one area a little lower, that doesn't matter to me. Um, I guess the bottom line here is it's eight hundred, I would have been fine with the nine hundred, but, uh, eight hundred, nine hundred, it's neither way really matters.
Thank you, Cons Richard.
I think the bottom line there should be six to seven hundred, and, uh, what I was gonna propose is to have, uh, go back to what, uh, Consor Long had suggested, add in the two, uh, reductions, and then put the, put an additional hundred thousand into asset maintenance under road paving. So, but I didn't get around to seeing how that model works, so, I'm not gonna support this, I think that bottom number should be no more than seven hundred. Preferably six.
Cons Ferguson.
Yeah, I, uh, I, I prefer, I could live with nine hundred as well, but I think this is a good, uh, step in the right direction. We've made a lot of changes, and I think that, uh, it's prepara- we're preparing for the future, and the contributions have always been important, so I think I can live with this, thank you.
Any further discussion? See, now I'll call the question, so call it B one, okay, so this is on that amendment, B one.
It'll, it'll do it for me.
Yep. Carrie's the Consor Richard post, all right. So now, uh, road paving, so I think we've basically covered that one off, road paving, asset management, unless there's something, can I just clear the queue? No, we haven't, okay, go back up a little bit, uh, there's, yeah, asset ma- asset maintenance, any discussion on that, that looks, that's...
Can we see the gray again?
Yeah. Co- Consor Whitmarsh, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, um...
A million and a half, it's a half, yeah.
So, to me, I, I mean, paving to me is an important one, and we talked about, you know, we've been, uh, a number of years ago decided to put five hundred thousand a year aside. Um, our budget for that is, we're at a very, um, about half of what we should be for our community. So that's why I suggested four hundred, and so I'm just wondering, on the transfer to capital infrastructure reserve, uh, maybe just some feedback from staff on, on that number, and, and keeping it at two twenty-five, it feels to me like the paving number should be higher. Um, I had suggested four hundred and three hundred, I'm wondering if we were to do something like four hundred and one fifty or something, or to keep the paving number high. We have significant number of roads, we have more potholes this year than we ever did, and there's more than potholes, I recognize, but that's one of the things that people recognize, see and talk about, and, um, I'm just wondering if, just some comments about transfer to capital infrastructure reserve and, and, and those budget areas, and whether the two twenty-five that you had there, or two fifty is gonna, or two twenty-five is gonna be nearly adequate?
I think that's supposed to go to two, was it two fifty you wanted in the transfer to capital, or one fifty?
Um, well, I'm, I, I'm kinda working, I wanted to keep four hundred in the road paving, so I guess whatever we felt we needed to have in the transfer to capital, that's why I'd like to get some feedback from staff on what to do with that number, it's right, one fifty right now, I'd probably prefer two fifty, but I'd like to have some feedback.
Okay, Ms. Sinclair.
So this was a, a program that was started in about, in about two thousand and fourteen, I believe, and it was, uh, similar to the paving in that we were, uh, to put, uh, half a million dollars each year in it, to build it up to, I believe the total was four million dollars was the goal. And, um, it has had years where it's been three seventy-five, not quite five hundred, tough years like this. Um, but this is the one that we took down by the whole two point two million dollars to fund the debt this year. So we've, we've ruled it, we're rolling it right down, and then we're literally starting again from scratch on this one, so...
At zero now?
Yeah, it's effectively at zero, yeah.
Okay, well, that's a concern.
Okay, thanks, so we'll just go through the speakers, and we'll make any amendments, Cons Ferguson, and then Woodward.
Yeah, again, uh, a big believer in, uh, and I actually, I was, I was prepared to live with what staff had, you had, is it two twenty-five, two twenty-five?
Yeah.
Yeah, I was prepared to live with those numbers, I think it's, Consor Woodward's certainly done the right thing, has put in three twenty-five. I'd like to put a bit more there, but I could certainly live with those numbers, uh, I think that's, uh, those are important.
Thank you, Cons Woodward.
Let's see if I can find it here, head it somewhere here. Yeah, here it is. So can you, just maybe you have it there with you, the transportation capital summary? Do you have that in front of you?
Yeah.
Okay, you have that in front of you, sorry?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So I wanted to ask about this airport paving number, 500,000 for airport paving. So one of the reasons that I left this out a little bit was because I, maybe I, again, maybe with the IT thing, I didn't quite understand what was occurring there in regards to, we're spending 500,000 this year on airport paving. So if we could, and that's, maybe you could just, so I don't make the same mistake, you can clarify whether that's new money or existing money.
Because it's coming out of the, it's the operating contribution to capital.
Because if the annual climate action strategy implementation fund is in the same column, this is all new money here, right?
No, it's...
This is why I'm confused, right?
Yeah. So if you, the operating contribution to capital, all we've, we've used what we had in 2019 to fund projects. So what you see, you might have recalled, I mentioned that the amount, the total was 2.3 million. So if you look down to the, just after page number 257, you'll see that that column is 2.3 million. So that's, that's the transportation department using up their base amount. That's a part of the $8.9 million base operating contribution to capital. So they've allocated it to these projects.
Okay. So I just wanted to ask then, if we were to, yeah, so we can't move this money to a contribution to capital.
No, it is being funded from the contribution capital.
Correct, okay. So that doesn't, so we would have to make it a one-time contribution to capital and then make it up next year?
Yeah.
So that's how I would look at it. So for example, on airport funding, where I was going with this, is, I asked about this originally, so airport funding, airport paving, why is that not coming from, why is that not on the airport sheet?
My understanding of that, and I can ask Mr. Zweig to expand, but I believe the air, what's called airside is the, is like runways and all the paving that's inside the airport, and the airport takes care of that. I believe this has all to do with what we call groundside, which is outside or outside of the airport infrastructure.
Okay, so that, that's what we heard?
Is that correct, Council Zweig? Or Council Zweig?
Well, I don't think he wants to be a council. Some of us don't want to be councils.
The internal roads to the airport.
Okay, so that's, that's great, but that's confusing, that's, I don't want to belabor this, because I think maybe we could work something out here with the airport reserve in a second, to get this number up and keep the tax increase where it is. The capital sheet, though, says resurface and regrade the asphalt surfaces at the airport, blah, 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 that are impacting lease lots. So that sounds like something on the airport and impacting somebody who's leasing a space, impacting lease lots due to reoccurring flooding. This project is not funding the higher amount of operating maintenance funding required to maintain airport road services. It doesn't say roads near the airport or at the airport or in front of the airport, it says maintain airport road services, so...
The internal, the internal roads where the cars are driving, delivering, the trucks, the other airport where the planes are taxiing and taking off on?
Yeah.
It's a distinction. So where the planes can drive and where the cars can drive, so...
Yeah, that's the distinction, yeah.
So it would be, so I don't want to, a little bit, yeah, so, would it be inappropriate to partially fund this from the airport reserve and then transfer some of this funding as a one-time contribution to paving in the blue to get that number up for this year?
I would say that the airport reserve is, being that they operate as a self-contained, self-funded unit, to the degree that they can sometimes, it's not possible they have costs that are beyond that. But it, it is, in my opinion, is a bit risky because if, depending on what's happening at the airport, that's their, that's their surplus, that's their retained earnings that they draw from and add to on a yearly basis. And I think for an operation that size, it's not huge.
So that's just a layperson's mistake? So when I cross over that bridge, and I'm not really on the airport, I'm on a road that's, you know, that's our, yeah, so I think I've understood that. But then I'm, because then I look at the airport capital sheet, and it says we've got 481 funded from prior year surplus. Which surplus would that be coming from?
Yeah, so that's the, what I mentioned about the airport can't always afford the types of capital work that, works that they need to get done. And usually when they can't afford it, because their reserve is not big in the scheme of these kinds of projects, then that's when prior year surplus is recommended.
So it would not be self-funding, self-sustaining?
The operation part is the part that's, when I talk about self-funding, yeah.
But when their stuff wears out, taxpayers step in and contribute to fix it. Is that fair?
I think that's, they have a small amount for repaving, patching, but yes, I think that would be a fair statement.
Okay, so would it not be okay to sort of suggest that some of this stuff, this 481, come from their reserve, and then maybe we could use some of this prior year surplus for a one-time contribution to paving that we could look at making sustainable and permanent next year? Why is not some of this 481 coming out of their reserve, which has $437,000 in it?
It's just, it's their retained earnings, that reserve, it's their operating retained earnings, so they rely on it for when they have up years and down years from the operations, the reserve you're looking at, the airport reserve.
So that's more of an operating reserve rather than a capital reserve?
Yes, yeah.
So when they, when they come to us, it's us, sorry, it's not them, but...
Yeah, correct.
When they, in a budgeting situation, they want runway resurfacing for 60,000, taxpayers are coming up with that.
Correct, the prior year surplus, yeah.
Okay, so while the intent of the airport reserve is operating, we could, we could sort of do what I just suggested, that would be allowed.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I'm not sure I want to propose, I may want to hear from others, but I think we can, we can look at that in terms of increasing some of that paving budget this year, but I'm not sure what other people think about playing with that reserve. I'm still learning a bit more about the airport and trying to infer how it's operating, but, you know, tentatively a little uncomfortable with taxpayers, residential taxpayers contributing to capital improvements at the airport. Thanks.
Council Richter?
Yeah, just to pick up on that, because I wondered about that, too. Didn't we sell some property and put half the proceeds into their reserve? What I'm wondering about is, as Councilor Woodward has suggested, maybe not draw it down by 480, well, they've only got 437, but draw it down by 300 and put the additional 300 into paving here, which would be 525 on paving, or put enough into paving to bring it up to, what did they want? They wanted 500, yeah.
Okay.
Well, just on the airport, so this paving is not runway paving, this is the roads around the airport, the municipal roads, actually. They're municipal roads. And the other thing is, what, that's an employment center, right? So we're not, are we going to get rid of the airport? I don't think so. The airport is a great asset to the community. And then, of course, there's the taxes that the airport pays, that must be...
They pay taxes?
The leaseholders do.
Yeah.
It's not taxes, is it?
There's a revenue generated from the people who lease at the airport through taxation.
Yes, municipal property, which is typically exempt, but as soon as you have an occupier from a lease, it becomes taxable.
Second, so they're paying a lease, which goes towards the operating budget of the airport, plus they pay taxes to the municipality.
Yeah, correct. And the last time I checked, which was a couple of years ago, it was about $200,000 in property taxes that they contributed.
Employment, I mean, it'd be difficult to factor that, but it's huge. Right, that's, that's...
Thanks.
That's employment to our citizens.
I just would offer one other piece of information, just so in the spirit of having all the information, with all that's going on at the airport right now, there is some uncertainty with, as to how things will shake out with a new building and where the airport will reside in there, and there's a few unknowns. I wouldn't want to draw it down too much, for sure.
Thank you.
Maybe Mr. Zweig could just comment on the distinction of the road, airside versus non-airside and the needs, because I think that is something that we'll be revisiting, unfortunately, in future years due to things like runway replacement, but this issue, Mr. Zweig.
Thank you, through your worship. So the, as the mayor described, Mayor Frosk described, where the cars drive on, we consider the groundside, where the airplanes taxi on, we consider the airside. The reason why the road paving is in the transportation capital, because it's a full reconstruction, so it's not just a grind and pave, as we call it, it's a full reconstruction, which is a capital adventure, so that's why it's in the capital.
Thank you. Okay, Council Whitmarsh, you're up next.
Am I on?
Yeah.
Sorry, oh, thank you. Yeah, I'm uncomfortable with messing around with the airport reserve like that. I think there's some other places to make some adjustments. We've, you know, we've, we said we could come back and look at things, but I would suggest that we, in here, and maybe I'd make a suggestion that we put the paving at 400 and whatever we think is an appropriate number for infrastructure reserve, maybe it's 200, make that number 600,000. And then, you know, it's going to have some effect, but we'll be able to come back based on feedback from the public as to where we might want to make adjustments when we approve the budget. But I think the 400, to me, in the paving is critical, and I don't think we should mess around with the airport reserves.
Okay, so, Council Davis hasn't spoken yet. Council Davis?
Quick question. The airport is quite, is a good revenue generator. How much do we make from the airport?
I don't have that information right in front of me.
Okay, I guess...
It pays for itself. It's not, it's not a, it's not a net revenue generator wherein it contributes to the township, but it does, it does, so far pays for itself.
It makes money.
Other than the large capital items that it does.
Yeah, okay, but this airside paving and the runway surfacing, that's in, that's in, you better, that's in transfer to capital infrastructure reserve? No, it's not in paving. Where are we, 34?
Uh...
Yeah.
Are you on page five?
Oh, me, no, I'm, yeah, I'm on page five. But where it's...
I think we're discussing this road paving line.
Yes, so it's paving, but is this, is page five, is this in that budget?
No, it's page 231. Check page 231.
231, okay, okay, down here. So there's 500.
Yeah.
But if you look at the particulars, where they're paving, it's, there's even, they haven't done some of the work, and it doesn't seem like, it doesn't seem like the numbers add up. Well, they all add up to what you got there, but anyhow, it's an airport. I don't want to land an old plane, you know, I don't know if we, if we, it says critical. I don't know if we want to start taking a runway away, because pretty soon pilots will be thinking, well, landing Langley, the old cow pasture, that sort of a thing, or potholes, and it's a safety issue. So, you know what, my comments, I'm not quite there yet, but I'm, just some of my comments.
Thank you. Council Woodward?
Yeah, so I'll just clarify. I mean, I don't think I was proposing that we make the airport unsafe. I think that...
No, 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 I didn't mean that.
Okay, so that's clear. So they, I think that, you know, I just, I need to learn more about the airports, so I'll maybe undertake that a little bit this year, but I find it, you know, it just, it makes money except for all the capital renewal costs.
It funds itself from an operating perspective.
Right, yeah, okay. So it makes money except for all the capital renewal costs. And I think I just need to learn a bit more about that, and over the long run here, what we're going to do about that. So I think in regards to the, we are choosing to spend 500,000 on airport paving, we have increases to infrastructure that are permanent, we have increases to road paving and transfer to capital infrastructure reserve that are permanent. We started out at those not existing in zero, in the 4.12. I think this is becoming very close to a good consensus budget. And I think that if we, you know, we really start going above that 4%, it starts to become problematic for me, so I think that we have to make hard decisions. I think we've made some. We've chosen to essentially fund IT, for example, over road paving. I think we've made these decisions, and we're increasing the contributions to capital. So in terms of coming amendments, I think we really need to stick to what the taxpayers and the residents expect us to do, which is to make decisions and keep below a reasonable amount. An overall 4% with a mill rate adjustment, I think, is something that I can live, and the 2.98 or 2.97 for residential, is a really good budget accomplishing all of these objectives. And I think a few hundred grand here and there might not seem like much, but it really starts to push the number upward where a lot of us are going to start to get very uncomfortable. Thank you.
Thanks, and we'll deal with that through, you know, if there are amendments, through motions and votes, and hopefully it all works out. Council Ferguson?
Yeah, and I, you know, we have police, we have fire, and we have airports, and these are all things that we try to understand. I, to Councilor Davis's comments, I know that I was up in Mayor Beale's Cessna one day, and we were circling around the airport, getting ready to head off to one of the Gulf Islands, and I think, I think one of the engines started acting up, and we just, we just almost ended up landing on one of the farmer's fields. But that's separate, distinct, I think the, I think I'd like to keep this in the particular budget. I think it's important, airports are important, and I think we have done one heck of a lot of good, I think that tower, I think they're finally operating now, I think, the new tower?
Oh, yes.
Not quite, but it won't be long. And we've done a lot in that airport over the last 10 or so years, and I think it's something we should be proud of and continue to fund it accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Richter?
Yeah, and just to go back to Councilor Davis's comments, I don't think that it's about making it unsafe, it's about where the money's coming from to do this, and they do have a reserve fund, and I think that they should be taking money out of their reserve fund to pay for those improvements, or some money out of it. It shouldn't be all out of the general taxpayer's pocket. So I'd like to propose that, well, I'll put a motion on, that we take 175,000 out of prior year's surplus in the airport, fund that 175 out of the airport reserve at the airport, and transfer that 175 to the road paving, which will take it up to 400. So that's my motion.
It's moved and seconded. I'd like to maybe just pause and wait for Council Kuntz to come back, and when we're doing this motion.
Why don't we take a little five-minute break? It's almost three hours.
Sure, sounds good. So we'll take a little bit of a recess, five minutes, and then carry on, but the motion's on the floor, so it's basically...
You can accept that, because isn't that, that's not from the airport side, it's from...
Yeah, well, the motion's on the floor, so we can vote on it. But let's, is it okay to take a break in the middle of a motion when it's on the floor? Or do you want to? Yeah, okay.
[inaudible]
Oh, sorry, there was a second, it was Council Woodward, I didn't mention it, thank you. All right, let's just take five. Be back at 4:25.
Every five years, the departments rotate through a more thorough base budget review?
We do, yeah, we do a department review, which includes program and budget.
Okay.
So what's after this, it sounds like...
We're going to go down. Okay, I'm going to bring this back, and so there's a motion on the floor. If I could ask Madam Clerk to read the motion, I'm going to start amendment one, so it was moved by Council Richter, seconded by Council Woodward, and if you could read the motion or the amendment to the budget.
The motion reads that $175,000 taken out of prior year's surplus at the airport to be transferred to road paving.
Thank you.
That the 175 be replaced out of the airport reserve.
That's what it is.
There's only one fund.
Ms. Becken.
I think the intent may be that the airport was, that $175,000 be taken out of the airport reserved and applied, be applied to road paving? No. Okay.
Cameras and fencing, it could be used for any of those. They've got 481,000 in, in projects that are critical. They're funding them all out of prior years, except for the airside paving, but they could be funding it out of airport reserve, except that they need some, to have some working capital. We want the paving to be up at 400 bucks, so if we say, okay, of the 481 that, that they're taking from prior years were surplus out of the whole township budget, we remove 175 of that, we substitute 175 out of the airport reserve to replace that 175 from prior year's surplus, which will then bring their reserve down to 306,000, which is still a comfortable working margin, and then we transfer the freed-up 175,000 from prior year's reserve over to the, where is it, the road paving fund. So that'll bring it up to, how come we're at 350?
So, just for the benefit of staff, then, so what we're going to do is, we're going to reduce the airport's use of prior year's surplus by $175,000 and apply that to the road paving, but permit the airport to take $175,000 from its airport reserve and apply that to its outstanding projects.
Yes.
Counsel Long?
So we'll need to know how much is in those reserves. What page are we supposed to be looking at that's got all this detail? Again, please.
Page five.
Five in the capital. So, yeah, so what is the balance in the reserve after that's all done? I'll go find it here.
Page five doesn't talk about the reserve on mine, anyway.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other discussion? Counsel Whitmarsh?
Yeah, I, as I said before, I just, I'm not going to support taking almost half of that and taking it out of airport to move into road paving. I don't think that's right, so I won't support it.
Counsel Ferguson?
I just want to be absolutely clear, is this something that we can do or not do? I mean, is it doable or not doable? I mean, we've got a number of things, that's the question.
So what would happen if we freed up some prior year's surplus here? We could do road paving worth $175,000, but because this is one, because prior year's surplus is one-time funding, it would just be good for one year. So we could beef up the road paving program in 2020 with $175,000 worth of prior year's surplus funding, but that wouldn't increase the base budget for road paving. It would give them an additional amount for 2020.
So although the idea is admirable, it's something that's very, very, very difficult to do.
It's just, it's mixing one-time sources with what we're trying to establish here on the screen is a base budget that would be ongoing.
So I appreciate what Counsel Richter has done, and just also hearing what you're saying, it's very, very difficult to do.
It, it can be done. It would just be a one-year, it would be a one-year solution, and then we, it would get us through 2020. We still wouldn't, it wouldn't be part, become part of the base.
Thank you. Counsel Woodward?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I think I could go either way on this one. I think for me, it's just that 500,000 in airport paving, which, you know, we could partially fund that from the airport reserve, and this is an indirect way to accomplish the same objective, is to, is to recover some of that prior surplus dedication for some, some one-time items, for sure. But I think generally I'll support this with the intent of trying to get some additional money into road paving this year that doesn't increase the property tax. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, I'll call a question on this amendment. And it fails with Counsel Ferguson, Counsel Whitmarsh, Counsel Kuntz, Madam Fros, Counsel Long opposed. All right, so we're back at, back at this, as, as was presented, is the 225 and 225, so. So I'm going to clear this queue. Counsel Whitmarsh?
Yeah, recognizing that we still have some other things to go through, I'd like to make an amendment here on this section to put the paving to 400 and, or sorry, 350 at the paving and the transfer to capital infrastructure reserve at 250.
Okay. Is there a secondary?
Yeah, and I'd like to see the bottom.
Counsel, yeah, yeah. Counsel Long second, so I'll open up amendment one, 4.09, so it's just...
There's still more room to go?
A little bit. Okay, so discussion, yeah, it's seconded by Counsel Long, so Counsel Whitmarsh, do you wish to speak to it, or I'll open it up?
No, I think it's pretty clear.
Okay, we can get to Counsel Woodward?
Yeah, can you show me again, because I guess the, just the, what the impact of this is? So pushes the overall to 4.09? From where, again?
Before we made that change, it was, it was 3.98.
Okay, so it's up.
Still don't quite know the distinction, so the overall, the residential was, because we're working on the overall number at 3.98, but do you remember what the two breakdowns were going to be from the 3.98? We don't have that as we're working through this, right?
So the 3.98 is right there, these, I updated these on the break, so this, what you see here is the 3.98. So it didn't change the ratio at all. It had, it took it to 5.68 and 5.88.
Left, we left the residential 2.98, so if we go along with Counsel Whitmarsh's amendment, that's going to push the, that's going to push the two mill rate adjustments to 5.68 or five, and 5.88 from where they were?
From where, yeah, from where they are right now, so...
From where they are right.
Yeah. I mean, another option is to make the residential 2.99 and see what that does.
So, okay, I'm trying to, I'll tell you what I'm trying to find out. I'm trying to find out that if I vote in favor of this amendment, what the tax rates are going to be. Well, yeah, I don't, I don't think we want to change that, no.
Just, yeah, she's just looking at it.
But to clarify for Karen, I don't think you want to change the residential from 2.98 to 2.99, leave that at 2.98. That's consensus. The issue, I think, is at the 4.09, as you said at the break, you've shown what the impact was at the, at a different rate, at the 5.68 and 5.88 was at the 3.98, I think? So what would the impact be then on 4.09? Counsel Woodward's asking what's that going to look like, because I think there's a concern that that may push them above the threshold that would then indicate they couldn't be supported.
Getting, we're getting close there.
Yeah, I'm not going to, I'm not going to quibble like we're at Walmart here, and there's some difference between 5.98 and 6, but I think that, I think for me, it's kind of hard to start supporting these, not knowing if there's three more after this, to try to push the tax rate even higher. So I don't know if the mover can clarify if this is one of many, or to try to keep increasing taxes, or if there's some, you know, there's just a couple more to try to, to try to keep it within these thresholds that I think my original memo identified. Thanks.
Well, we'll, we'll work on this one, and then...
How to support it if I don't know?
It's either you support it or you don't, it's pretty simple.
But there could be five more, I might support it, but then if there's five more, can I come back and reconsider this one, then?
Anything can be, yeah, so it...
Well, I can't, only you can, though, that's the problem.
No, no. So let's, let's go back, so we're at 4.09, 6.7, 6.17. So this is what's on the floor, so if, if council supports this, then that's the number, and we can play with others, but if council doesn't support this, then, you know, it's...
So I could come back with amendments reducing the 800 down to 775? This could go in a circle forever, Mr. Mayor, I'm trying to help, be helpful, I'm trying to be helpful, saying that if, if there's more coming, or maybe we could try to identify what the thresholds we're comfortable with, rather than, you know...
Let's, we'll, let's work on this amendment, and we'll, we'll go through it and see what the changes are. You don't have to support this amendment, but if this amendment is supported, then it does change the, the bottom, and if we want to change something else that continues to increase, I don't know how else to do this, we have to do this in motions. So Counsel Richter?
Yeah, I'd like to amend this to 300 for paving and 200 for transfer to capital infrastructure, and what does that do to our bottom line?
Looking at it in 4.02.
Doesn't burn enough.
Okay, so that's an amendment to the amendment, is there, do you wish to make that amendment to the amendment? I'll look for a secondary.
Sure, I'll make that amendment to the amendment.
Counsel, okay, so a new speaking list on that?
Can we, so how does that, is that bottom one changing, then?
Um, I have to go.
How do you know what to put in?
I was with numbers a lot.
She's just putting the numbers, no, yeah, she's putting numbers in to come, to come up with.
By 5.98 and see where you go.
Yeah, and what does, what does 2.99 look like? Let's just take a look at that. I mean, it's...
Going up there.
Wanted to check, I just wanted to see what that looked like. Yeah.
Yeah. You could play around with those to make, have a little bit, have a better relationship.
Yeah, but it gives us an idea, okay. So we have an amendment to the amendment, and is any discussion on that? Let's just go back up to it, to take a look at what that looks like, and that's reduced it from 350 and 250, so it took 100 out, is that correct?
Can you see the grade, please?
That was 500, yeah, 55, yeah. So this has reduced it by 1550. Okay, so Counsel Whitmarsh, on the amendment to the amendment.
Yeah, I mean, we're playing around with tens of thousands of dollars, but I, I'd like, I, I won't support it, I'm going to stick with, I'd like to stick with what we had. I think we said from the beginning there was other areas we could go back and revisit. We're not setting the budget today, we're not voting on the budget today, so I think it's, I'd rather keep it at the 350 and 250, that's a reduction from what I originally proposed, it's a reduction of what we had in road paving, we've talked about 400, it's down to 350. I just think we're just nitpicking, I think we should keep it at the 350, 250.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to call a question on the amendment to the amendment. And it carries with Counsel Whitmarsh, Counsel Kuntz, Madam Fros opposed. Okay, so we've got that one, and now we're back to the amendment as amended, right? So any further discussion, Counsel Long, did you wish to talk to the amendment?
No, I'm okay.
Okay, I'm going to call a question on the amendment as amended. It carries unanimously. All right, where are we now, Ms. Sinclair, we're down to other adjustments now. Looks like that's, just slide up a bit, sorry, go back, go back, go back.
Oops, sorry.
Yeah, so we hadn't discussed other adjustments, it looks like it's, it's same across the board, but I wanted to just pause here, does anybody have anything to, to add to this or discuss? Okay, seeing, seeing none, now we'll move down to, okay, now, just, we're, we're, we dealt with the budget on top. Are we complete with that, or do we have to deal with the capital before we vote on it as amended?
Um...
So shall we, because we've...
Yeah, you're good with the operating now, if you wanted to pause here?
So, that's right, so we've gone through the operating, and we've amended it, several amendments, so now we could vote on it unless there's any other amendments everybody wants to make. If not, I'm going to call a question on the, okay, I've had, I've had it just a second. Here we go, Counsel Richter.
Yeah, okay, but this is the operating stuff, this has not got the capital in it, does it?
Ms. Sinclair, maybe you can, we can pause a little bit.
Yeah, no, so what we've done is, we've, we've worked through the operating, and now the next section is to, to look at the capital, and we have some funding available from the one times, which is what this yellow is showing. We talked at the last council meeting, we talked about 3.5 being a reasonable target for prior year's surplus, so we have some room to apply to some capital projects that I have listed below, and so that's, that's the next step is to, is to work on the capital. And I've got the capital divided into three sections. The first section is capital projects that were flagged in the, but, in the last budget process that are shown on the bottom here in the red and green, red being not funded, green being funded, but they were flagged for information. This middle column was an additional section from Counsel Woodward's memo. He, he did fund some of the items that were flagged by council, and he's also recommending funding for some additional items here, and then, and so that's his 2.491 from his memo. And in, Counsel Whitmarsh has the money left over from one times, that brings it up to the 3.5 million, and the, some of the capital items that we, that we just talked about above right here. So he's got the 836 for prior years, a 1.4 contribution to capital, 300,000 contribution to the reserve, 150 and 650. 150 is if we take the same reserves that Counsel Woodward identified and use them here, and then the Yorkson Creek Bridge is, is not happening this year, it'll be happening next year. So we have that funding to apply to these projects, and then on the model, we have these items, so we have, where are we here, sorry, to catch my breath here a second. So these are the items that have, I was playing around with funding.
Okay, so...
Yeah, I, yeah.
The question that I really want to ask is, if we change any of the items in this blue column and add in more, are we going to affect that 4.02?
No.
No, we're, no, we're in the capital realm now.
So what, what we've...
4.02 is not changing, that's the overall tax rate.
Right.
But it's 2.99 for residential and 5-point whatever for...
It'll be close. So, so basically what's happened is in the, the top piece, what we've just gone through, done the operating, contributions to capital, so now the bottom is the capital, and, and that number, I mean, I suppose council could then start adding things, then we have to go back up top and add more money, and so, so we are set with, with what's left in the bottom, in the yellow is what's left over for us to...
Okay, but going back up to that box that we look like we're voting on, what happens if we put it back to 2.98?
Yeah, that's where it was.
Yeah, that's where it was, because the other two were happy at 2.98, I'm happy at 2.9.
If we do that, then the five, the light industry and business will go, will bump out, just over six.
They both go over six. Okay, so that keeps them under six.
That's all I was trying to, so we haven't, we're not voting on the 299 or the 588, we're just voting on, on the, on the gross, on the, the top, the gross increase. If, if staff need direction, specific direction on 2.98 or whatever, or if they just, or if the direction is to keep it under three and under six, then that's what they're doing here. Meanwhile, we have to still approve, or approve to, we're not voting on the budget, we're just approving what's going to go forward to the public. So that motion is, is on the floor, which, as amended, that needs to be voted on, so...
No, it's nothing been amended. Do we have a budget, do we have a motion to approve this?
No, so where we're at now, there's a motion on the floor that has had several amendments, so it's a motion as amended, it has not been voted on, the next step's to vote on it, so, and then that will, if, if we agree that that should go forward to the public, what's left over is to decide, as a separate motion, if we need a motion, the 2.99, 2.98, whatever we want to do there, and then the capital, so we'll do it in those steps. Right now, we need to deal with the motion that's on the floor before we move on to another motion, so on the motion that's on the floor, Counsel Woodward, then Whitmarsh?
I just want to clarify, so I, I am perfectly, I mean, I think that's the intent, below three and keep the business below six, but I don't know if we technically, if we vote for the blue that you have it now, we're just going to adopt that, or do you want to amend that specifically?
I, I think we need to do it in stages here, so it's, the blue we've just discussed, so if we wanted, if council feels they need to give direction to staff, then, then we can, on the ratios, or the resident...
That's, I mean, direction's great, but I would, I would like it to be a motion.
Yeah, no, that's what I mean, direct, I meant direction through a motion, so...
Okay.
So, Counsel...
So I'll move 2.99, less than six on business?
No, no, we're not there yet. We, we've got to deal with, with the 4.02, that's what we're dealing with right now.
Okay, so I'm just...
Sorry, I thought you were done. We have to deal with the blue, 4.02 is a separate motion, then we'll decide on the ratio.
Okay, so what I'm asking, though, is that the 2.99 was just changed, it wasn't voted on?
No, it was just, just an illustration, that's all.
We put it back, or...
Yeah, we can, we haven't got there yet. We're still dealing with the 4.02. We'll, we will have a good discussion on the middle part, the property tax.
Okay, so the 4.02 is great, but I'm, I'm still stuck on the, the mill rate adjustments delivering that 2.9...
We haven't decided that yet, so we'll, we'll do with the 4.02, then we'll come back down.
Okay, I'll try, I'll start over, I'll try again.
I'm lost here.
The initial blue that was shown to us, that we've been working on all afternoon, had the 2.98 in it, and now it's 2.99.
That was an, that was for illustration, so if you want to change it to 2.98, that will increase the 580, we can take a look at it now, I have no problem, this is, we want to make sure everybody's clear on what they're voting on, but it was, it was looking at a way to, to illustrate, so now you have, so you need to increase something a little bit, it still stays under, it'll still stay under six and under three, I think we're...
Oh, I like that.
There we go.
Yeah, so it, yeah, well, it, it does stay, I'm just saying we're splitting hairs here. We do need to move a motion, or get that one, then we can decide if we want to, I mean, I'm, I'm fine with 299 or 298, I don't see a difference there. But right now, we need, we have a motion on the floor, so...
We have a motion on the vote.
So let's vote on the 4.02, that we've discussed, so I'm going to call the question.
Or this is to send it out?
Okay, so Counsel Woodward, you're not understanding what we're doing.
Yeah, so I, I understand the 4.02, but I also want to make it clear that what, the mill rate adjustments that we're also voting on, which has been changing without votes.
No, that's another motion, we're not voting on that, we're voting on the 4.02. Yeah, sorry, I'll, I'll explain, so we're just going to vote on the 4.02. Okay, so I'm calling a question, yeah. It's on the 4.02, then we'll...[1763.73] It's on the four point oh two, then we'll- Yes, we are.
That's the motion.
That's the motion, that's the motion, is that right? Okay, I'll call the question.
Are we got no more ability to change it after this?
Yes, we do, we, we are only, what we've spent three and a half or four hours on is to come up with something that Counsel is comfortable with to take to the public. Let the public have their input, it'll come back to us, we still have an opportunity to make changes. This is just to get something to the public, and if we're gonna split hairs, it's gonna be really tough to get anything out there, so I'm not, I know, you, you don't have many left there to split, so. I'm being cheeky, as you say. All right, I've called the question. It carries unanimously. Now we can go down to the property tax calculations and if, and I'm certainly willing to entertain a motion.
I'll move it the way it is.
Two nine nine and two, and, okay, moved and seconded, moved by Counsel Long, seconded by Counsel Woodward. Discussion on that, Counsel Whitmarsh?
Yeah, so this is more challenging, I, I like the two point nine eight, who doesn't? But I, you know, I'm, I'm uncomfortable with the raising the light industry and business rates to almost six percent higher. I appreciate the presentation we had last day in which it showed kind of negligible differences this year. But that's based on the change in property values, and so that changes how that goes. If we had a different year where the property assessments or property values were different and, and changed in a different way, then this five point nine five percent could be quite significant in terms of a business increase. I'm also concerned about whether this becomes our pattern, where we start to think, oh, this is a great way, we'll just go after business or go after industry. And, and we, you know, this is where we create jobs in our community, it's where we develop, create the economy and enhance the economy in our community. And the vast, it, it might be fine for maybe a large business to pay some of these things, but the vast majority of our businesses are small businesses. One single owner, few, a few employees, et cetera. So a six percent tax increase is quite significant to them and, you know, for us to do this. So I am concerned, I certainly appreciate the two point nine eight, but I'm not sure where the magic is in two point nine eight. For example, what if it was three point one? What if it was three point one five? And what would that do in changing the percentage for the business community, I don't know. I'm just not sure what the magic is, other than we can say we kept it below three, but we could also say we kept it below three point two. We kept it below three point one five, there's just nothing magical about it. And I'm not sure, I guess that's what we're deciding today, is what is magical, what number should it be at? And are we, you know, is everyone comfortable with increasing business and light industry tax by six percent or just under six percent? I don't know what's magical about those things, so, so I'm, I'm struggling a little bit with it, but, I mean, I love the two point nine eight, I think we've worked hard, but I do struggle with the significant increase to business.
Thank you. Just a question to staff then, this also goes out to the public, so we can get feedback and this isn't set in stone, we still have to make these decisions. What we're voting on now is something to go to the public.
Yeah.
It, it is not set in stone, so if we get feedback, and, and your chart that you showed on Monday showed the ratios in comparison to last year and also to other communities, so.
Yeah, we typically haven't highlighted the rates in, in the open house, but I think this, this change would make it that we should.
And, and just to follow up on Counsel Whitmarsh, this, every year, because we, let's say this goes through two nine eight and five nine five. That doesn't mean that next year it's two nine eight and five nine five, is it?
Right.
We still have, it's, it's a new, it's a new discussion, that's all I want to know. So all we're doing is coming up with something that we can send to the public, okay? So let's, don't want to get too bogged down that we're making hard and fast decisions, that'll come later. Okay, thank you. Counsel Woodward.
Yeah, I wanted to reiterate some similar sentiment, I, I don't want to raise taxes on anybody at any amount, but that's not a realistic objective. And I think with, you and I spent some time talking about the fact that if we have lots of economic development in one specific property class, that that property class's mill rate share would, would in real world dollars might be flat or decreasing, would that be fair? So I think that that's the, that's the core assumption in the proposal after many, many years of economic development in that property class category, that, you know, real world taxation for a lot of businesses has been decreasing while residents have been increasing. And I think it's time to, to do a small adjustment, and the, the real world dollars are very, very small because they already have a very small percentage of that overall pie chart that you've shown us for a couple of years now, would that be fair too? So, no, I don't see this as a magic bullet every year, no more than debt was last year when we, when we funded the McLeod Athletic Park expansions with some, with some debt that's got a manageable debt service. I don't think this is some magic bullet every year, I think it's a, it's a great idea and a great compromise to take to the public and take to our business community. And hopefully, Mr. Back, and I'll just direct the question to you, hopefully we can, you know, work a little bit on presenting this to the business community in a way that might highlight that, given the economic development in this category, that there's a lot more of that, of that class of property to share that tax burden. We'd be able to show that information to the, to the business community?
That's correct, we can actually, as part of our communications, try to put it in some sort of context, it shows the history and the real dollar change in terms of post-inflation and all those sorts of things.
Yeah, so I'm gonna reiterate as well that I, I think it's time to get the budget to the public and, and get some feedback on this. And just because it's going to the public and it's being proposed, it's certainly not, doesn't mean that we're all happy with the tax increase on the business, but with the understanding that the, the real world taxation is, is flat or declining, thanks.
Counsel Ferguson?
Well, yeah, I, I, I think it's important to keep the communications strategy, and it's always important to make sure that we are as transparent and as, as much information as possible. I know that during these public information sessions, open houses for the public, the staff have always made themselves available. And we appreciate all the work that they do and I only wish more people came out to ask the questions. My statement is regarding the, the light industry and business and other, and that is that we have to make sure that we're comparing ourselves with others in our same areas, our same population base. And I understand Surrey and Coquitlam and others are certainly preparing, preparing to raise their rates as well, is that not corrective, am I through the chair? So that's why it's important, on one hand, we don't want to raise the tax, the other hand, we have to stay competitive because other jurisdictions are finding ways to fund their services, we need to do the same, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Long?
I think the key is the rate ratio, now, you probably should have another decimal point perhaps, right? Because you barely see any differences here between three point two three and three point two three. But I mean, we want to make sure that those are, are in line with other communities, and how does that work with the previous year? Because that's, that's what's really changing, right? Can we see what the previous year was? The ratio, so the ratios is changed with this adjustment, correct?
Yes, it changed, the ratios change every year. I don't think I have the tax ratio from last year.
Anyway, it's a very small change in the ratio.
Thank you. Counsel Kuntz?
Yeah, so with all the new fees and different things that businesses have had to absorb over the last few years with, you know, different governments coming in and, are we, I, I just feel like we might be underestimating the, the, the impact of this. Maybe not for this year, but, you know, you mentioned something, well, maybe won't be for next year, but what would be the number, like, you know, I, I don't, the, the difference from last year to this year on, on a business, yeah, I'm just, I'm just, I guess, a little concerned about the fact that, you know, there's cities all, all over the lower mainland, you know, maybe bigger, bigger cities that their businesses are, you know, basically closing shop because they're, they're paying higher rates of taxes, like, how far away are we, you know, from doing that? Because I know that right now it's, it's a reasonable tax rate, but, you know, at what, at what point are we, are we now going to be that city that has to help out our businesses and then just transfer it back over to the residential? Because I know it's happening in Calgary and Edmonton and even in Vancouver, so.
Right. What we would do is, and for the open house, is we would present some real world, possibly mask the names and just have some real world scenarios of actual businesses and light industry in the township and play it out over twenty twenty and twenty one with a, with a hypothetical situation of what could happen in twenty twenty one if it changes, just to get, to get a sense for people of, of what that could mean. It is just one more thing, I, I know that, I think what you're referring to in Vancouver is the highest and best use assess, the B C assessment, putting highest, highest and best use values on, on small mom and pop shops in Vancouver, and they're having to pay exorbitant taxes. And possibly that the business community will, will see, will equate this to just some more. I, I'm hopeful that it's going to be negligible enough on, on each property that it, it won't raise the ire, but that's, that's a risk, I guess.
Thank you. Counsel Whitmarsh?
Yeah, this is, is this, this is the first time that we have done this, where we've had a differential rate for business and industry in-
Yes.
First time. So I'm wondering if, as we move this towards the public, just if we can do some extra kinds of promotion or awareness to business community that this is, that we're, that we're bringing this forward. I'm not sure how much of the business community regularly come out to give input to our, each year to our budget. And being that this is new and that the rates are quite significantly different for them and residential, I'm wondering if we can make sure we do some extra kinds of promotions and letting the business community know, flyers, things on our webpage to encourage the business community to, to provide some input.
Right, you will have somebody that has a house that will be happy to be getting two point nine eight possibly, and then also owns a business that will be sort of looking at both sides of the same coin, potentially.
Right, yeah, okay, I just want to make sure the business people are aware and it just doesn't slip by and then they find out later that, read it in the newspaper that it, that we've gone ahead, I think that they need to be notified in, well in advance.
We'll definitely highlight it at the open house, for sure.
Thanks.
Counsel Richter?
Well, I think hand in hand with that is, you may make it very prominent that there's ten new R C M P officers coming on and they serve both business and residential on property crimes. So I think the businesses are getting something that they want here and, and it doesn't come cheap, ten police officers.
Thank you. Counsel Davis?
Yep, I, I think that, do we do enough, or we, we do everything, we're legally, by, legally allowed to, or, we get, we get it out there. Is there anything we can do more to get more people come up the open house? Because if, I don't know, I, I guess, I guess there's no sense in fighting a problem, but-
I think, I think probably some of the best information that, I, I've noticed that Matthew Claxton, I barely get back to my desk and boom, there's an article. So I think that, that they have been doing a very good, timely job of definitely getting this out, out to the public and-
Because there is some things, like Counsel Richter said, there is some things in there that we really need to boldly highlight so that they can say, well, look, let's, yeah, blah, 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 blah.
I mean, the other option is talking to the newspaper and specifically, if they haven't picked this up, specifically talking to them about this.
Get her done.
All right, thank you, I see no further discussion, so I'll call the question, and what do I label this, B two? B one still, okay, B one. That's one very boring bingo game. All right, I know what it's called. It carries unanimously, all right.
Can we roll back up, I want to do a screenshot of what it is we've done here, because we don't have this particular-
Can this be sent out?
Yeah, I can send it out, I can freeze it and send it out.
She'll send it out to us when we're all done. All right, moving on now, just to, just to see where we are, it's five oh five, I think we'd kind of, just like to go to five thirty. There's, I know some people have to leave, so how, no, I know, I'm just saying, it'd be nice if we could, excuse me, we're not on the floor, trying to get some information from the staff and to get a sense of what we have to do next and how long this will take and so that Counsel is aware of where we're at, but I know there's some that have to go to meetings, so I just, you know, it'd be nice if we could be done by five thirty, but I don't know if it's possible, so.
Possible.
Okay.
I'm, I'm the eternal optimist, though.
You are.
On this sheet here, this, these items at the bottom are items that were flagged in previous council meetings. So some of them are colored green and that's because they're already funded, so they were flagged either for information or for reconsideration. So those items, funding is not an issue for the green items.
That's in the bottom, okay.
This bottom part, yeah. The items that are in red are the items that are a funding issue.
Okay.
And in Counsel Woodward's plan, he has, he has approached some of these items. But I could sort of lead you through step by step how to get to the part where we could identify which ones of these are priorities for funding, if that would help.
That, that'll be helpful to hear that from staff.
So these are the, the three scenarios of prior year surplus that we, that we talked about in the, in the operating budget. So, and in, there was at one point in the conversation where we talked about three point five being the upper, upper limit of prior year surplus that we'd want to go this year, in trying to rain that down and, and get some more money back to the working capital. So with a, a limit of three point five, we have under Counsel Woodward's, and he's applied some of this already to projects, so you'll see when we get down, down below that it's applied, one point three million, and then in these two versions, there's eight hundred and thirty six thousand. And part of the reason is because Counsel Woodward's plan takes, takes a couple items out that my plan and the staff plan, it's not my plan, this plan on the far right, the model, doesn't take out, and Counsel Woodward's didn't have a capital one, so I just made it the same as the, as mine. So then when we go down below, you can see I've got the capital projects in three different categories. So the first category is capital projects flagged for funding, which is these items. And then we have, the largest one of which is this one point two million for intersection improvements at fifty sixth and two fortieth. Then we have the capital items funded by Counsel Woodward, and he also acknowledged a couple of these items in his funding of the top category. But in addition, he funded these additional items, Yorkson Community Park, Willoughby Community Hall Parking Lot, Ultraviolet Systems, G P C Landscape Upgrade, Civic Facility Electrical Upgrades that Harv mentioned, and Road Construction at two sixty fourth, eightieth, two eighty eighth. So he's applied funding from sources to that, which comes to the two point four nine one, which was in his memo. So stopping there for a moment, these items are blank slates with respect to these projects, so we could, we could fund, fund those items over there. These are the sources that are available, so even in Counsel Woodward's program, he did mention that he left some money on the table. So here, here is what's left, one million sixteen thousand. In the Blair Whitmarsh's program, Counsel Whitmarsh, it's, he hasn't applied any, yeah, we haven't applied any yet, so we have the three point three that's available. And this is how it's available, so there's the, the eight hundred and thirty six thousand from prior year surplus, the one point four million coming from the capital, contributions to capital, three hundred thousand coming from the, oh, hang on a second. Let me make sure I didn't get these out of sync. Did I? Nope, there's a one point four, there's a three hundred thousand, and okay, it's good, test. So they're coming from above. And then the one fifty is just matching what Counsel Woodward, he had three small reserves that he was drawing some money from to try and fund the, the traffic calming. So I put that just to keep the, the ballpark the same, and then the Yorkson Creek Bridge is not going to be going ahead in twenty twenty, it'll be going in twenty twenty one. So these are the funding sources that are available to apply to these capital projects. If it comes in at the end of the day that we don't need to use three point five million up here, my feelings won't be hurt, so.
Be good to keep, sure, I've got a speaker, I've got, I have a speakers list here, so you're on the list, so I'm gonna- Sure, what's, what's your clarification?
So this sheet here, the green ones are already funded.
That's right.
Correct.
So are they on this list here and if they, they're not on the list?
No, they were, they were part of the capital program, but they were flagged for information mostly.
Okay.
The only thing on this list is items that didn't have funding.
All right, so we should just be working through these red ones then first?
Correct, yeah.
And, but there you've got, like, line one twenty three, we just put two hundred back in for climate action.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll get-
And we put the two hundred back in for-
We'll go through the list, yeah.
Yeah, so, exactly, so we should do that, because we did, you're right.
Okay, it's a good point, okay.
And that won't show up here because that's, that's part of the base, but it just so happens that this actual climate action strategy item was above and below. I think it's the only one that was dealt with in the operating, with a direct relationship in the capital. I think that's the only place we'll see that.
Okay, so we have a speakers list here, and so just moving forward, again, similar to what we did on top, we'll, we'll do some general questions, and then if we were to move the blue and make amendments, or is that Ms. Sinclair kind of a way to find our way to the end of this? Okay, so I've got Counsel Long, Woodward and Richter, Counsel Long?
Yeah, I'd like to make an amendment and move some of these, fill in the, in these blue, blue ones here, right?
Yeah.
So, you know, I don't, can I just do that, I mean, you know, let's move a couple of them over. I want to move, yes, how are we gonna do this, can you make a, one scenario for each of us?
I'm just gonna go through some, some, just some general questions, so everybody's clear on what, what we're doing here, and then we'll, we should maybe-
We almost need to each have a, well, I don't know how you can solve it, but I mean, I'd like to move some stuff over and I'd like to point out that there, as has already been pointed out, that the, the top red items probably already dealt with.
Yeah. Okay.
But just a sec, you know, and I have an issue with the fifty sixth and two fortieth, maybe staff can answer the general question on that. Seems to come up all the time as a concern for many on council, but I mean, there's also some development potential happening at Tall Timbers, it's been talked about for many, many years, and if that were to come forward to council, then they would, they could be funding that intersection. Well, however it's done, so I don't know if that needs to be on our list- Well, however it's done, so I don't know if that needs to be on our list for tonight. But I'd like to go down on the list because there's another one there that's, that doesn't belong, and that's the Willoughby Parking, because there's been confusion as to which developer is going to pay for it. But my understanding is it's, it's imminent, that, that parking will be taken care of. So there's another quarter million we can put towards 28th and 272nd.
Okay.
So I'd like to, I'd like to flag a bunch of things to move over there. Can we do that to play with? Maybe with nods from council?
Let's just get a, get through the, this list, and then we'll, we'll start playing with numbers and move them over, so. Counsel Woodward, any general questions?
Sounds like Counsel Long thinks he's the chair.
No, no, just, no, it's, it's what we've all been doing here all night. People are asking questions. It's okay, we're just trying to be very flexible on this process, so.
So I'm gonna just try to be helpful as well. If you could, if I could go back up and see the orange, I just had some questions about that, yeah. So, rather than, so, because what you did with blue is quite helpful. You gave us a baseline, which was your starting point, which would then we modified. Here we have sort of a blank slate, which I think is gonna, honestly, it sounds like it's gonna cause some, some problems. Is there some way, Mr. Mayor, that we can get to a baseline, which is to debate some of these as a block, rather than individually? Because, you know, and then, and I'd also like to know what Counsel Long's referring to in regards to this 250 being imminent. It's direct contradiction to what I've heard. So, I'd like to understand how we're gonna get to a baseline to try to, to see how we're gonna do this. And I'd like to move them all as a block, if that's possible.
Okay, well, Counsel Richter, just general questions?
Um, yeah, I mean, I don't agree that 28th and 272nd is more important than 56th and 240th. I agree that they're both equally important for different reasons.
Okay, Counsel Richter has the, has the floor, so we're, we're not debating that right now.
So, are we going down these one by one, or how are we doing this? Because I'm still confused.
I'll, I'll be seeking some advice from staff, so. So, cue, so Ms. Sinclair, we again have to move this to the public. And is this, this, the capital, will they go to the public also?
These, these items could go to the public without indicating that they're funded or not, or funded or not.
And that's what I was getting to, is that, right now, this can go to the public, and do we, as a council, need to debate which ones are important and not important under the list, but rather just put it to the public? Is that, is that the intent? So we don't really need to go line by line and decide what we want over. We can get the input, and this is something we can do. Once we've had the input, review all of these, decide what should go in the blue, and you could come back with a scenario. Is that, that's a way of forward. Do we need a motion for that, or is it just? No, I'm, no, so what I'm getting at is, all we're doing today as a council is deciding what we want to take to the public. I don't think it hurts to take this list of, of capital to the public and get feedback on the public. And then, subsequent to having that feedback, council can then decide what should be moved over to the blue. I think tonight, if we start moving, deciding what goes to blue, we're gonna end up in a bit of a quagmire. It's just my feeling, because I think there's some great ideas that council has, but we may be just a little ahead of ourselves. Can you comment on that? What a good process for you as staff to move forward with.
What we could do is we could have on the table, if you can envision a table, we could have all of these items, the project sheets, listed with a sheet for comments below.
Yeah.
And then we can invite people to ask us questions that they have about these projects and comment on, on the importance from them. It wouldn't be like, it would be qualitative, not quantitative, so they would have a comment. We could bring those comments back in the results of the public open house.
And then, and then that gives us the opportunity to, to discuss it in more detail. So I'm, I'm just concerned today, it's gonna be, well, we should have this one, we should have that one, but at the end of the day, really, we want to hear from the public.
Right.
And that's the purpose of this, so. So, so, Mr. Bakken?
Just to put it back in context, just remembering the work we've done, and then the capital funding models are somewhat dependent upon the available funds, which links back to the work we've done, even though it's capital. So I, I think what I'm trying to suggest is that we know that the February 6th memo contained a number of items. This document that's on table has a number of items, and it says two things. Some are green and some are red. The green, we know, are within the envelope. I'm simply suggesting that we take the, the items that were part of the February 6th memo, the items that were red, and the items that were green, to the public for consultation, then council can actually absorb them. Because at that point, we can tell that there's still a bit of a differential between the available funding envelope and what's out there, but then we can prioritize them based on the feedback.
That, that's, that might be helpful, so, so. Yeah, okay, we'll go through, go through a bit of a list here, just to get, because we do have to move forward, and I think we can really get bogged down by a little ahead of ourselves. So, Counsel Woodward?
Yeah, just want to add to that. I think that's probably the direction we're going. But I, I think for me, I want to, rather than say, here's 20 items, they're all maybe funded. And then the public's got, I would like to, if it's possible, to show some as funded that I think are likely to go ahead, such as some of the climate items that we pulled out. And specifically, you know, some of those items that we know, we, we sort of made some prior decisions thinking that those were funded, those could show to the public as funded, to explain that we're, you know, climate is a priority. And some of these, I think, you know, such as Yorcson Street, Yorcson Community Park, for example, which can proceed, because Yorcson Creek Bridge is not necessarily proceeding this year, some of these decisions could be made and be shown to the public as, as funding decisions with the, with the remainder being left. And I think we do have time to make some of those bigger decisions.
So Ms. Sinclair, maybe you can comment on that. I, I think what I'm hearing is that there are, there are some items that are already funded, and to bring those up to the public to make sure that they know that they're already funded. Is that what you're saying?
Some of the stuff like the climate specific items, and the big one like Yorcson Community Park, for example. I don't, I think showing it as maybe funded isn't, isn't as helpful.
Yeah, so can you differentiate that in the public, or do we need some decisions tonight? That's what I'm trying to get at, because...
Some of them are, but none of them are funded right now.
Yeah, it, it would sort of be a, it would be the case of whether everybody, if everybody agrees that Yorcson Community Park development should be funded, then that, that would be the process for that.
Okay, so let's just go through this list, and we'll come up with some way to move forward.
Rather than a basket of projects that are maybe funded.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Counsel Davis?
Um, maybe I shouldn't complicate it, but I, what if we all pick three that we wanted?
I like that.
Okay, over.
Twenty-four. Counsel Richter?
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't think we can take a list like this out to the public. They, I don't even know how much they've been following along the discussions that we've had to date or read the materials that we have. I like Counsel Lewis Davis's idea. Why don't each of us pick three that we want to see done and send that list of nine times three is 27 items, I guess, out? But there could be overlap. The other thing I wanted to ask about too is on the, the red listed items here, the airport infrastructure demolition of 100 grand. We haven't even discussed if that building could be put to alternate revenue generating uses.
Don't think it's possible to leave it there.
Like a daycare, I don't know. Or another restaurant.
That one we can cover fairly quickly. That structure is the cab of the existing control tower, so not the full tower, just the cab of it. The rest had to become, was to be removed. The problem with the, preserving the cab is that because of its environmental issues in terms of what it was built from, it turns out it's actually easier to build a replica of the cab out of other substances, other surfaces, other materials than it is to save it. So the direction we're taking with the demolition of 100,000, while it's not funded, we'd look to have the, that number to be rolled into our leasehold improvements allowances existing, down there from the current developer. So it's, it's, while it's currently unfunded, it can be accommodated. But that particular building, not the restaurant, but that building, would be very difficult to save.
Thanks. Counsel Ferguson?
I see that they're making some changes right now as we speak. Certainly, I am a big believer of the Yorcson Community Park. And certainly, if you want to go line by line, Mr. Mayor, that's fine. If you want to put it to the public, that's fine. I'm in favor of all three of those things, and whatever you want to do is fine with me. But I see they're making the notes right now.
I'm actually not making changes, I'm just trying to make the numbers so that I can add them up easily when we talk about this.
Okay, that's what you're doing?
You know, we can slide everything over and then decide what to take out, might be easier than, you know? Putting everything over and decide what to take out might be quicker than trying to figure what to put in. Yeah, just, and what, what is a must have, what is a nice to have? Yeah, that's, I think, what we're trying to, put, put in here right now, and then...
Now, this one here, this one here requires a choice, because there's three options.
Okay, let's, let's decide then. And sorry.
There was only one moved by council, by the way. The other two were not moved.
So what was moved by council? Which one? The pedestrian, actually, we're just saying? Okay.
Line 108 was, was approved by council.
Yeah, 108, okay. Then that's helpful. Let's see where, see where we're landing with, with this, yeah. Where is it?
No, no, that's just the funding.
It's, it's not in right now. It's, she just, Ms. Sinclair is just putting in some numbers, so I think it could give us an idea where we're at, and it might...
It's funding from the bridge, right?
Yeah, it may speed up our, our decisions tonight.
Did I do that wrong?
Millions of dollars.
Well, that was, that was just an advanced design amount.
See, that's easy. Need that, you need that button from Staples. That was easy. Can you just call that 200?
Darn it, I can't remember what those ones were. I erased my... Thank you. And the Langley Regional Airport, was that one? Denise, don't you know everything?
What's ASCD design, Mr. Bakken, do you?
That reference to our sports entertainment district.
Okay, thanks.
Okay.
So where are we at with this? Take a look at the...
540, 5.4.
So where, was, where do we stand then with, does that fit within 5.4? So what, what do we have?
Um, so in total, we had 2.8.
So we have to find 3.0, or what is that? We have to find a lot of money to take out, is what you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Your worship, well, that's a really good exercise to see where we started from, keeping in mind that the funding model above was built somewhat dependent upon the submissions from the February 6th memo. As we were indicating, it might be better to take the February 6th memo list and then add to it, because it would be very brief then. Now, and that's what I was referencing in this, this list. There's another number of red items that are covered, it's the green item, sorry, the other way around. The number of green items are covered, all the green items are covered. It's the red items that there, and it would be helpful to know which of the red items should not go forward, because I believe the, the answer is, the list as was submitted goes forward, and then we add things to it, and the plus being likely the, some of the red items.
So if we take out, if we're moving the items over from the orange column, and we take out the other ones, that'll bring the number down.
It suggests you could move the memo, and then people can make amendments to it.
Sure.
And say, oh, it's funded.
Yeah.
That would give us a starting point.
Okay. Can you roll down to see the bottom line on the memo, and what's left over on the memo? On the orange memo, just want to see. So, the money, so that's a, that's coming at 2.491. And we have, I'm just a little bit confused, we have 3.5. So we can, so we can move the orange memo and then add or take away. Does that make sense? Okay, why don't you do that? Okay, secondary? Counsel Kunst, okay, so. I'm gonna clear the queue, so we can just start over again. Counsel Long?
There's a couple items in there that have to come out, and we need to get to the bottom of this. Either Willoughby Parking Lot is being done, or it isn't. So there's 250 right there.
So let's discuss, yeah, this is...
Well, no, because we want to take it out.
Okay, Willoughby, where's Willoughby Parking Lot? Sorry, where is the Willoughby?
Number 116.
Thank you, 116, okay. So staff, a question from staff, 250, can you...
Worship, the issue is, it was included originally because the parking lot was not being advanced very quickly. We understand there's some information out there that they're proceeding with the construction forthwith and is, for with the development, not the construction, with the development forthwith, and as such, some money's not needed. I think we were trying to explore that, and Mr. Zwag, I don't know if you have any information on that at this time? No. So we have to get back on that to see what it was, because that information, I think, just came about as of yesterday or so.
So there's a question mark on that one. So, it's a question to council, do we want to wait a year on that? We could take it out now, and if the information comes back that it's funded, great. If not, then we can put this back in a year, so.
It'd be flagged, because if, if the information that came out yesterday is correct, we don't need the 250.
That, that's correct. It does affect the overall total, but it can remain as being an item that can be considered as part of this process. And if it, if it is not needed, then we'll have the additional funding for other projects.
So leave it in it, okay. Okay, so anything else, Counsel Long, that you're interested in?
Well, we're only talking about what's in the, in the, in the memo column.
Memo column, that's right.
Because I see two other items on this, that are in red in here. First one being the climate action strategy. We've talked about that all afternoon, so I don't know if that needs to be on here.
What numbers, what lines that?
It doesn't need to be anymore. While it's, while it's not, if, if we're not going to discuss it, then it's not an issue, I suppose.
So where's that line number?
Um, it's not really here anywhere.
Your worship, so, so, but I think I just heard your worship was, if it's red and it's not being funded, we need to discuss it. Well, we only need to discuss it if there's someone who on council advocates to have it funded.
That's right.
We're really picking on the red list, those that are, that we think should be funded. That gives us some format.
Climate action strategy, storm or the climate action study at $300,000, that's sitting right there. Where is that one? 123, you said?
Well, we already did that.
Okay, it's been, that, that's a red.
And that's not in the, in what we're discussing now, anyway.
So I tried, I'm trying to adjust this to the 2.491 of the memo.
Yeah, well, the other, the other two, the, the other one that we're not discussing yet is what Mr. Bakken just told us about the airport's structure. So let's not try and fund it when we feel that, the staff feel it can be funded by leasehold improvements or triple nets or whatever.
That's correct. If it helps, your worship, the three items that I think council may wish to discuss are intersection improvement, 56th and 240th, intersection improvement, 28th and 272, and traffic calming.
Okay.
So while I have the mic, well, that just needs a, the, the...
Okay, that, so, why don't we put those three in, see what that looks like, and we can deal with it as an amendment if we have to.
Okay, but while I still have the floor, I'd like to know, what is the situation with 240th and 56th in terms of potential event development right across the street? I.e. Tall Timbers, which is not in the ALR, and, and is zoned or ready to go. And it will go sometime, and when it does, that light could be part of it. Yes or no?
Somewhat, it's a bit more complicated. You're correct, it's out of the ALR. It has a zoning. The, as I understand it, the property has to come forward for a rezoning because they're seeking greater density. And that'll be a rezoning application in the, around Tall Timbers, Summer of Repland, so it's a bit contentious, it could be contentious. If that advances, there could be some funding that could be contributed towards the road improvement in the intersection. We know they've been working on it for over a year. We're understanding, though, that they, they are having some challenges meeting all the technical requirements, so we don't have a defined timeline to advance matters.
Yeah, and that's a huge number, 1.2 million, right? So I'm not sure where it is on the list, but that's the one I'd flag, I guess, as being one that we bet. Well, we can't do something with it this year, anyway. At 1.2, it's not even on the table, is it? Really?
Pretty big number.
Were these the two markets?
Again, your worship, it might, it was very good comments, but it might be more simpler to see if someone wishes to add it for consideration. Because if the answer is no, it's a moot point, if there's no one to do so.
Okay, so, well, I don't know how we're gonna get through this today. Yeah, the motion is on the floor, so we're doing amendments to the motion, so it's amendment to, to... Yeah.
Well, I tried to amend the motion, but I guess...
Let's flag these things, okay, and, and we'll move through the list, and then we'll file. Counsel Woodward?
Yeah.
Just flag a few, and then we can maybe...
So I thought I'd move that, moving over the, the orange items in, and then we could either remove those or, or do amendments to that, to that amendment, or some amendments to that motion, and debate each of these items individually as a, as a group. So I'm still looking at some of the numbers, again, if you, okay, I'm trying to... So some of the, like, the Willoughby Hall number is still sitting at 325, for example.
Well, no, 250.
Ms. Sinclair, if you could update, some of these numbers simply don't match what's in the memo still. So then we've got, there's that one, okay, there we go. So can we, can we, do we, yeah, so can you... Because this, yeah, 75 and 325 are one number of 400 funded from two different sources. Doesn't really matter how we show it there. The, the point was, if we could get to the orange items being debated and approved, and then we could make amendments. So for example, the Willoughby Hall item, which has come up now, I would like to see that, that funded. And then if a developer does actually come forward, that we then are reimbursed for those improvements, rather than some mystery scenario where apparently you've got some information that residents don't have to try to get this unfunded now, after you asked me to put it in there.
Hang on, hang on. It's, 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 excuse me. The 250, again, can go to the public, and between now and when it comes back to us, we may have more information. So it doesn't hurt to leave it in.
Worship, it can't. It's already been spent.
So if we could just vote on the orange block, I would appreciate that. Thank you.
So let's focus on, all right. Okay, so, yeah, on the 250?
Yeah, I thought what we were gonna do from the explanation that Ms. Sinclair gave us was that there was gonna be a list of these projects and a total price tag that we have to spend, and people should be voting on the projects. So we don't have to come up with the exact 3.2 or 2.8 So we don't have to come up with the exact, uh, 3.2 or 2.8, or whatever it is. We could just send out ten, or twelve, or thirteen, or fifteen projects, and let them tell us what they want to have done.
That was one scenario, but...
But I, I have to agree, Milner Park parking lot at 141 has already been funded, according to this. I don't understand why it's even there. It's been funded.
Recommended fund from portion of Yorkson Creek.
It's, it's partially funded.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so...
Traffic calming, I agree with leaving in.
Okay, so Counsel, Counsel Woodward actually, um, still had the floor, or you...
That, so, so what, just to clarify where we're at, I thought we had moved the, the orange numbers to be added, that was seconded by Counsel Kuntz. If we could either make amendments to that, or vote on that, and, and try to do the same process we did above. I'd appreciate that. Thanks.
Okay, so right now, we're just flagging a few things, and we can take, just to get some discussion going. Counsel Richter?
Okay, I don't understand why we have to put more than $350,000 into Yorkson Creek this year, when the 650,000, we've been told the bridge is, can't be done this year, anyway. So why wouldn't we just push the 650 forward to next year's budget?
So the amount that you're looking for there is the 350 and the 650 together is the Yorkson Community Park development, uh, for me?
One million, yeah, you left us one million.
Well, I know it adds up to one million, but we can't spend 650 of it this year, because the projects can't get started this year.
That's a different project, though. That's the Yorkson Creek Bridge?
And that's not what the 650 is for?
Um, what we're doing is, we're saying we're not going to be able to get the Yorkson Creek Bridge done, so we're gonna apply that 650 to the Yorkson Community Park.
Parks, and that's park development, Yorkson Community Park development, one million dollars. So the 650s come out, and, uh, the 650s come out of line 115, and it's been added to line 114 to, um, to do the park development. So, so it's become one million with no bridge.
Right.
Does that make sense?
Okay, and then to have, uh, the Willoughby Community Hall parking lot, I guess you've got two sources there, but the total line that should be over there is three, you were right, 325 to start with. Okay, so where's the 75 coming from then?
Can we just make that a moot item? Because either it is, or it isn't. If it isn't, it's gonna stay in, if it is, it's, it'll disappear.
So we just leave, leave it in there, basically? Yeah. Okay, so, uh, Counsel Richter?
Yeah, and, and why, why have we got road reconstruction at 264th? Why is that such a priority?
Fourth, 80th to 88. So that's down... Well, that's, uh, down in Glen Valley, and that's that bumpy, bumpy spot down there. Is that correct, Mr.? Mr. Zweig? It's that, it's that rough spot down at... So you, you flagged that for some reconstruction, is that correct?
That's correct. It was ranked on the capital project sheets accordingly.
Yeah.
It was currently outside of the funding, and the proposal by Counsel Woodward included it in the funding source.
Okay. Thank you.
But why that one, over all the other things that were outside the funding source?
Yeah, um, Counsel Woodward, just give a quick answer to that one? Sure, yeah.
Answer to the clarification. So, the justification for that project was that, uh, it, it's, it's been unfunded for many years, it's a needed reconstruction, and it's on an important truck route to, to the Glen Valley area, and, um, I'm reviewing all of the unfunded projects, and, and trying to compare them against the others, that, that was just a proposed item to fund, which, of course, we can amend to remove and, and not fund. Thanks.
We can just, um, take it off to the side then, so that it's, and then...
Is anyone here taking it away?
Yep.
No, he wants it left there.
It is part of the motion, so we can put it aside, so when we do one amendment, maybe we've come to something then, so...
Nope.
No, it's supposed to stay in.
Sorry, sorry.
All of them were moved as a block, right?
Yeah, this is the block that totals the 2491.
I'm just trying to...
Oh, I don't think so.
Expedite it by looking at... So the 350 is a consideration, we might take it out, so that could be part of one amendment. So if we take the three, we just want to see what the bottom line is here.
Well...
Or we just, didn't we just, is that what I just heard, that 350 can come up, okay?
What I'll do is this... So 3591.
Just, just to see, getting close to the bottom, that's all. A lot of spreadsheets.
Okay.
Okay, so it's just for consideration right now. Okay, so that's, we haven't, yeah, I've got Counsel Kuntz next, okay. Counsel Kuntz, so we're not, we're just sort of flagging these things.
Yeah, so on, on line 111, it says traffic calming in brackets at 100,000, and it's in 150 over at that end line. Is there, did I miss?
I, I think this is wrong, I believe.
Okay.
You know what, I'm not sure. I think, I think it was 100,000 in the budget, and I think Counsel Woodward put it in for 150.
Okay, so... Yep.
Yeah, so last year, I think, if I recall, we did 200,000, and we pulled that from prior year surplus, and this year, I just changed the number down a little bit to 150, whereas the capital sheet had a, a generic placeholder amount of 100,000.
Okay, that was a good catch. Thank you. Anything else, Counsel Kuntz, you're good? Counsel Whitmarsh?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, uh, a little bit lost. Are we, are we trying to create a list?
Yeah, we're trying to create a list that we can actually...
That matches the amount of money that we have available?
We're getting, trying to get close to that, I think that's...
So we're trying to do this without the public input? We're just gonna knock items off, and then...
As a council, if we feel that really we don't, we're, we're agree that, that shouldn't go forward, so, we're just trying to pick up, pick up some things.
I'd like to see them all go forward myself, but...
Yeah, but, okay, fair enough. Anything else, so Counsel Long?
All right, so I'm, I think it's, it's time we voted, because what I'm saying, seeing is that the, we have agreed that these items here have been funded, and what is not showing there is for the public to comment on. And my Willoughby Hall thing is gonna be either it is or it isn't. And that's what we're gonna be voting on any minute, right?
Yeah, yeah, we do have that motion.
Because we did promise staff, when we, when we did a whole bunch of mucking around with capital, that, well, if we could get some of these on-the-ground things done, the GPC upgrade, and the electrical and all that, they would be happy with it, so we need to do those things, and they're in there. So, so we're showing the public that these have been funded currently, but everything is subject to change.
Right.
And then I guess we're asking their opinion on the, on the importance of, uh, 240th and 56, and so forth, right?
Yeah.
Really, that's the only two that we're putting out there.
Yeah.
So I'm happy to vote on it.
Yeah, we're just, I'm just gonna hear from Counsel, Counsel Richter, if she has any...
Okay, we still...
Oops, sorry.
Sorry, Robertson Crescent and 248th. And that was a memo that Counselor Davis sent around, asking us to put either big flashing signs there, or something to prove that exception.
Yeah, we discussed the Robertson Crescent, and I remember that discussion, that, um, staff are putting big stop signs in, and we were looking at maybe rumble strips or something, I don't know.
Yeah.
Just some discussion, but that doesn't need to come into this budget. Mr. Zweig, can you comment on, first of all, Ralston and 248th, and what's planned, and what's, what can and cannot be done?
Uh, to your worship, looking for clarification, Robertson Crescent and 248?
Yeah, Ro, Robertson and 248, yeah.
Uh, as mentioned, staff utilize a number of tools to determine whether or not a intersection requires a signalization, or other improvements, crash data, speed, truck turning movements, truck movements. So based on our preliminary findings, because there was some recent requests coming in from the public, the preliminary findings dictate, or indicate, that it does not yet warrant a full signal. So what's in place right now is the overhead flashing lights, which is red along, uh, Robertson Crescent, orange flashing on 248, with oversized stop signs, and even intersection approaching signs along, uh, Robertson Crescent. We could, uh, look at implementing rumble strips, however, from our experience, if you place them in residential neighborhoods, they could be perceived as a nuisance in residential areas, but, uh, it could be considered.
Well, that's not really residential areas, as much as it's a rural area.
Yeah, we can, yeah, we'll let Counsel Richter finish, then.
Okay, so, now, these changes that are recommended by staff, why are they there? We're, I thought we were just dealing with the list up above. Because this Langley Regional Airport park, for what?
It's not listed, is it?
Yeah. Now, ASED design, I could see that being very popular out there. Maybe we want to put that in. Well, are we putting all of these into the public?
Well, we basically have the, um, the orange has been moved, so we're just flagging a few things in the blue, and then we can, you know, from this discussion, then we'll have a vote on it.
This one can come out, because we didn't do this, correct?
Yeah, it's already been done. We put 200 in. Yeah, it can come out. No, all the green party will show up.
Yeah. That's right, okay.
So would you let me...
Yeah, Counsel Long?
Yeah, on this Robertson Crescent, can we please, could staff just say, like, we did it once before, they'll put the, those lights around the stop sign, because that's what's missing. That's the only thing left to do. Uh, rumble strips is gonna require public consultation and so forth. It was just there, and one of the issues is the road curves, and there's trees in the ways, but, um...
Do we need that in the...
I don't think we need that in here, but it's not, it's not in here, anyway, but I know it's a concern on council, so, uh, those things that are powered by solar power, and we put them in other intersections, and, uh, we should put them there.
Yeah. Well, we're, we're...
So how much is that, 50 bucks?
Fifty bucks.
How much are those lights?
Get some Christmas lights and a solar panel.
Worship, I think we're, we're just coming a little bit off, off topic, so Karen, let's just review the fundamentals. We're only considering the items under the column called Model, I think.
Yeah.
What we've copied over to that is all the items that were in the orange column, and we're now dealing with which ones we wish to delete, and which ones we wish to add, correct?
Right, so we're not, we shouldn't put that 200 there, so...
Okay. Well, there's no staff ones, so your worship, we could, but, there is no staff ones, that's what we're saying, so unless you want to add the staff ones, they don't need to be referenced.
So with what we flagged, we can just deal with this one amendment. And, so where are we now at the bottom line? Let's take a look at the bottom line again. So at 4 million. That 1.2, um, for Roberts, for, um, if we go back up to... Yeah, that intersection proven 56 and 240th, 1.2, that really changes things a lot. Taking that out, um, is that something that's, needs to be done this year? Just one question. Or is that something that we have a motion on it? How...
Zweig, do you have any comments on 56 and 240th? Have we done any studies, or any warrant analysis at this point? It's a very busy intersection, if you're on 240th, trying to turn left, certainly, uh, going north to, uh, west, but do we have any information?
Thank you, uh, Mr. Bakken, yeah. Again, this project was also ranked high by staff, uh, but unfortunately fell out of the funding envelope, but it is a high priority, as determined by staff.
Yeah, but, okay, thank you. All right.
Karen's added at line 124, uh, something that is, what, what was the purpose of the annual climate? Why was that added in? Is a, is a, it's been added in as a possible use of funds from this total? Is it already...
I think that was the...
No, we, they already have 200. It was 400, and it got reduced by two, so right now, they have 200.
Oh, so this isn't even an issue?
Okay, so...
I misunderstood.
Black and just... Okay. Okay, so we're now at a 3.9, still, so we still, um... So it's 3.9, and we have how much to spend? 2.2.8? 2.8 we have to spend, so we're still a million one out, so that's why I was looking at that, um, street there. If we take that out, we're, we're bang on, if, if we can defer that a year, but that's... I'm just saying, yeah. Okay.
We're gonna put that to the public?
Yeah, it can go to the public, I'm not saying we have to take it out, we can go to the public, so, um, we need to move along pretty quick. Counsel Davis?
Oh, heavens.
Don't, don't break...
Chair.
Um... Davis?
Yeah, okay. I'm, I'm losing head, I'm losing head of steam here, because we've got to make some decisions. And if we did, like you say, uh, Mayor Fros, if you take 1.2 out, it'll kind of jive things, but, boy, that can be a real safety issue. And, um, scared to, to recommend it coming out. If it goes to staff, or, not staff, nothing goes to staff anymore.
Goes to public.
Oh, sorry. If it goes to, uh, public, and there's a large percent to do that, it is a safety, like, it's, it's like, it's not a parking lot, uh, it's a safety issue. It's, um, yeah, I just want to throw that in, it's, it's a safety issue, guys.
Thanks. Counsel Ferguson?
Oh, I, I wanted to know on the, uh, 56th Avenue and 240th, the suggestion was that there was, I'm not sure how far there along, an idea of a, some development in the area, and if we let it wait, maybe one year or something, we can make, maybe put it on a 2021 budget, that's a suggestion I would have.
Okay, and that can come back after the, um... Hey, Counsel Woodward?
Yeah, I'm just trying to quickly try to find the capital sheets for the DCC program. I thought this intersection was in the DCC program.
Zweig?
To a tune of a 1, 1.2 million, or 1 million dollar project within the DCC program.
The rural area, then?
The 1.2 million?
Yeah.
That 56th and 240th is inside the DCC program, I believe estimated at 1 million.
If it is, we've solved the problem.
So then, then it's just, we can, what we could do, then, is consider a motion to prioritize it within the DCC program. Then it's funded. I'm, I'm trying to find the sheets.
I'm trying to find the sheets.
Yeah, it's not showing on the project sheet, it's just showing the entire one point two as unfunded. Normally, if there's a DCC component, it will show that, that component.
I'm trying to find, I'm almost, I mean, I don't want to speak until I know a hundred percent, but I actually did email Mr. Seffy about this being a DCC project.
We could leave it in for now, at that point. So what we have now is this list with these two added in. The three fifty, row number one twenty-one, it looks like we're taking that out. That would be an amendment to take that out, so that's going to change the number. And we're taking out, well, we combined this, we're taking out the six fifty for the bridge, but we've added it to the park, so that's, that's the change, that's an amendment.
But I thought that was all contained within the, within the motion to move the orange.
It is, yeah, but basically, we're, we've moved the orange column, so in the orange column, six fifty shows is the, the bridge. And in the possible amendment is that that six fifty has been moved up, so I'm saying that's still an amendment that needs to be made. So I see the two yellows, that one, the three fifty coming out on row number one twenty-one, and so that would be...
But why do we have to take any out? Why don't we just send all of these to the public?
Well, this is, yeah, I know, but I'm trying to, there was a, there is a motion on the floor. So there was a recommendation or a discussion that we would move it, put it on, decide to take it out. So we can go line by line on the amendments, or we can just do this one amendment.
Vote on the orange ones, okay? Let's just vote in this block.
Right now they are, yep, right now they are, so I'm looking for amendments. So, let's, yep. Keep the three fifty in, one twenty-one? Well, they all are, and we just added two.
You have a motion.
There's a motion with those in.
Supporting them all in, so we need to vote on that one.
Okay, well, actually, there is a change. The amendment, at least one amendment has to be that the six fifty is moved from the bridge to the park to make it one million. That's one amendment that has to happen. Looks like we want to add in the one oh eight, the two fifty, and the one point two. So that's, we could do one amendment to add one point two, two fifty, and move the six fifty to, to the, add it to the three fifty. There's one amendment. If we have a motion to do that, we can then discuss the three fifty separately. Okay, is there a second? Or Council Kuntz? So on that amendment, which is leaving one point two in, the two fifty in in the yellow, moving the, the, okay, now you're changing, the six fifty is out, you've got six fifty back in there, the Yorkson Creek.
It's part of the one million here?
That's right, that's right. So we basically are taking six, we're not doing the Yorkson Creek Bridge, so we're taking it out. And it goes, it gets added to the park. So that should stay as a million, the three fifty. And the six fifty should come out, because that is really what we're taking to the public. Does that make sense?
But what we want to vote on is whether we want the six fifty in with the three fifty. That should be a separate motion.
Okay, so we can divide that, that's fine, I have no problem with that. I thought it was, I thought it was clear. So we'll divide, well, there's amendment on the floor, so we'll divide out, we'll take the one point two, and the two fifty is one. We'll vote on that first, and then we'll vote on the, on that one. If that's okay with council, okay, we'll just divide. So any discussion on one point two and the two fifty? Seeing none? No, Council Long?
Yes, so we want to defer the one point two to next year, like this is...
But we're leaving it in for discussion.
I just found out that is in the DCC.
Yeah, okay, so we'll leave it, we'll leave it in then for...
So we could look, we could look at prioritize, prioritize adding it to the issues project and prioritize.
Yeah.
So then it can come off of here. So that should come off of here.
Okay, so is it funded, DCC?
Worship, it's still relevant to get feedback. If it's a DCC program, it still would have to go up.
Okay, so just leave it in. So I'm going to call the question on, on the yellow, the two yellow ones, B one, for okay with leaving those in. Council Davis? Carrie's, Council Woodward opposed. So now we're back down to, the second part of this amendment is down to the Yorkson Community Park, and that's to take the six fifty out of the bridge, add it to the park design. And so that one's on the table, any discussion on that? Did Council Richter, did you wish to speak to that?
Yeah, I do, because I think there's way too much going into Willoughby in this budget and not enough into the other areas of the township. And, you know, if you're going to phase the lights, you might as well phase this park development as well. So I'm not supporting it.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to call the question then on that one. Carrie's, Council Richter opposed. So now we move down to the other one, and that's to remove the road reconstruction, two sixty-fourth, eighty to eighty-eight. Could I have a motion to amend that? Somebody wish to move? Okay, so is there a motion to amend to remove it? Seeing none, okay. So at this point, we have this one, are there any further amendments or discussion on this? I'll call the question on the capital then, B one. Carrie's unanimously. Now, do we need any other motions, or are we done?
Good.
We need one more motion, don't we?
Two. Two more. Now, you want this to go to the open house now? You've got, you've got the things, but you don't have your slideset. You wanted to refer it for the...
So do we need to, a motion?
Call the consultation.
Do you prefer this to open house at the date of...
Okay, hold on, hold on. Council Richter, what would you like?
Okay, because we've got a list of projects there that's more money than we have to spend. I also think we should be adding in line number one twenty-two B, I guess, that says other, and let them write in what they want. And then that's what we send out to the public.
I think you could do that by direction, is that...
They always, that's always there.
It's always there. It's always open for people to add in what they would like, like truck routes and horse paths and more firefighters and anything else. So I think that's already a part of the consultation. I don't think we need a motion on that.
So all these items, and one twenty-three down to one thirty-one, they're not in there.
They're not in there.
It's just the ones we've got, one oh seven to one twenty-one, okay.
Okay, okay, Council Woodward, did you have a question?
Yeah, it's just, before we move on to, moving forward to public consultation, I had a couple of other small items to maybe adjust the budget before it goes to the public, and really housekeeping stuff. So one example would be in the memo, the two oh eight street widening corridor project that's currently in the budget has about a million dollars in design for sections of two oh eighth we're not even close to considering widening. So for me, we would remove that and allow that money to be used for other DCC projects. So I didn't want to give the public the impression that we're spending a million dollars on design of the way it's referenced in that capital sheet. So that one here says one million dollars for detailed design and construction estimates for east side of two oh eight from sixty-eighth to seventy-sixth. I don't know why we would spend a million dollars on design for that section with no, currently no, no path to even doing that.
Bakken, do you have any comments on that?
Nothing directly, Worship, I'm just going by some comments that you Seffy made. It was actually to be in a position to act quickly to construct without the commitment to construct. So it was the detailed design so those sections could be built, and I think there was some reference to the fact that those were the areas where it may be some time before the development would provide them to be acquired. So it's fine to remove them, it just means that there won't be any detailed design for construction purposes for some time.
Okay, so the other reason that that project was pulled out last year is because in year 2021, it's showing ten million, and in year 2024, it's showing another twenty-three. So if we could, if we could have a capital sheet that showed design, and we could debate that separately versus a multi-year project that's being listed at forty million, rather than...
I guess that the concern is that intimates we're proceeding with the forty million, that could be severed or divided off. This is really, I think he was contemplating that we would have the design done, so at some point, if we decided to proceed, it would be more expeditious, it could take a year to design. So if we did, two years from now or three years from now want to proceed, we'd have that ready to go.
And I'm also choking on a million dollars for some drawings on a, you know, four avenues of road.
The total cost is just what, is what we experience engineers to be charging for the detailed design. I mean, it's the, the blueprints, the as-built, all those things combined in terms of the connection, so...
I just want to highlight for council's consideration, and in the budget right now as a funded item is a million dollars in design in lieu of other tangible deliverables such as intersections. And for me, that would be something that we should at least debate. So we can defer it for later, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to send this impression of a forty million dollar project to the public.
Well, does it, is it, does it show up in the, will it show up in the open house?
It'll show up in that format, yeah.
So if you are moved to, if you are motioned to remove it, we can... Well, okay, so you're moving, Council, I just want to get clear, you're moving to have that taken out?
Well, what I want to do is, I would, I would move that we, we proceed with the two point one as a project for eighty-third and eighty-fourth and defer the remainder.
Okay.
If that would be helpful, Mr. Bakken, at least until council debates it further.
So second by Council Richter. Any discussion on that? Council Long?
I think we should refer that to, Mr. Seffy's not even here, so can we refer that to staff to come back with us? So we can debate it rather than everybody micromanaging this budget that they're doing?
So if you want to get more information before we take it out?
Yeah, I think we need more information.
Okay, so referred to staff to get more information, just to get a little memo on it. And second by Council Ferguson. No, it's a fair question, and so, just to get some, just, yes, Council Woodward?
Yeah, thanks. So I'm not trying to be cheeky there, but I'm thinking that, you know, we're, I'm simply not, I'm not trying to, trying to defer, I'm trying to defer it to the point where we're not communicating to the public that we're going to be spending money on design for unfunded avenues over in lieu of other capital projects. And I don't view that as micromanaging the budget, I view that as actually reading the capital sheets. So, and yet another memo from staff when we were working through a workshop of not overburdening them and filling that bucket with lots of memo requests like it's nothing at all. So for me, we can wait till Mr. Seffy comes back, we could vote this down, have it go to the public, with the understanding that we're going to revisit this prior to the budget adoption.
Just to be clear, it's not to Mr. Seffy, it's to staff. So we don't, we don't name, well, I'm sorry, it's to staff. There are other members of staff who can deal with this sort of thing. Council Davis?
I would support a deferral, because this is something that, this is like putting gunpowder in the gun, right? You want it, because if we, if we, if we, it'll come off. And we don't want it to come off, because we have a big push for two oh eighth. And I'm just, I'm concerned, maybe a question, if we defer it, that doesn't mean that it's, do we have, does somebody have to remember to put it on next year?
No, we're just, we're just referring to get some information. We haven't taken, no, that's all. We're referring, referral, that's all it is.
Okay, so...
Worship, more specifically, sir, on the same page, there was a motion to remove that from the budget. So what's happening then is that motion to remove is being referred for analysis. That will come back, but that means it remains in the budget until the council removes it.
Okay, so it's, so it's still there, so we, okay, yeah, that's good, thank you.
Thanks, Council Woodward?
Yeah, so if that's, I mean, that's fine, I'm not going to belabor this too much. I'm trying to, I'm trying to become more zen with every Council Long's comments. I think what I'd like to do then is move an amendment to the referral to also include two other projects to get reports and information from them, and that's the two widenings, which I've been trying to get some more information on regarding some of those two hundred street widenings, and confirming the degree of land cost that's involved in that. I'm still waiting on that item. And I'm a bit concerned we sent to the public that we're widening on two oh eight street, but potentially using money to acquire land. So those are two projects that are listed in there, and I can pull them out here.
So that's amendment to the amendment.
So I'd like to get, add those two to the same summary.
Fair enough.
But I want to make sure everybody knows which ones I'm referring to.
Okay, so, so movement second, I can do this by unanimous consent if everyone agrees to put this in. No opposition to that.
Two widening projects on two hundred street.
Council Long wishes.
Well, I'd like to add another one, too, and that's to get to the bottom of this Willoughby Hall thing. We're getting memos, let's get a memo on that, too.
Okay, well, that's already inferred in what we've discussed. So the, so yours, amendment to the amendment's there. It's never on the amendment.
So just to clarify for staff, those are the two projects, sixty-sixth to sixty-eighth, and LEC from seventy-sixth to eightieth, or I think seventy-sixth to seventy-eight, somewhere in there. And to what degree there's land costs associated with those, those projects?
Thanks. All right, so on the amendment, the amendment as amended, B one, call the question. Carrie's unanimously. So now we're back to this one. The motion as amended. No, it's already moved, so I just want to be clear. Council Davis, do you have anything, you're on the list?
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, I'm going to call the question on the, on the motion as amended. Carrie's unanimously. Did I, am I, no, no, that was, I'm a little bit lost here. It was a referral. I got a little bit ahead of myself there. I was going to wait for Ms. Bauer to clarify. The main motion was...
It's the main motion of the capital going forward to the open house.
Yeah. So where are we right now, Ms. Bauer?
Time to call the question as to whether the, on the main motion.
On the main motion, okay.
Which is not that, which is about the capital items that are on the list, has been amended going forward to the open house with...
Yeah, I thought we did that, okay. I will, I will call the question on that. The capital is to move forward, so I'm just calling it, direction from staff there. It's been a long afternoon, we're all getting a little bit tired. Carrie's unanimously.
Thank you.
Ms. Sinclair?
Now, the motion that on the last page.
This last page, the motion that, that council received and referred the 2020 Universal Services Operating Budget to public. Consultation as received amended, thank you. Moved by Council Ferguson, second. That was second, Council Kuntz, discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. Do I call out the B two? Still B one, oh my goodness. All right. Carrie's, Council Long opposed. Anything else?
We can now terminate.
Yeah, motion terminate. Council Davis moves termination, second by Council Whitmarsh. Show of hands, all those in favor. Posed Carrie, thank you very much. And thank you, Ms. Sinclair.
Thank you all. Thank you for the heavy lifting.
A lot of heavy lifting, but we got to the end result that we were looking for, and that was to...
Lots of input.
To get to the public.